Ready, good, okay. We'll come back to order here at 6:29. Very good. So first order of business for the regular meeting of the City Council is call to order. And roll call.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember San Antonio.
President.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yep.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lyons is absent, and Mayor Ayers.
Here.
Record will show that all members of the City Council are present with the exception of Deputy Mayor Lyons.
For item three, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number four is special presentations and proclamations. We have two tonight. First one, 4A, is Environmental Commission Awards, followed by a proclamation in recognition of Fair Housing Month. So we'll start with item 4A if Mark and whoever else we need will join me. Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me in the back? Okay, good, good. So tonight, this is the 2024 Environmental Award Program winners, and I'll let Marco O'Connor, one of our environmental commissioners, and Carol Parker take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor. So what happens is a notice goes out, and we give it about a month for people to nominate, people from our community who they think are outstanding environmental stewards in four categories, and that is a for-profit business, a nonprofit business, an adult hero, and a youth hero. So once that's all comes back, we have judges that, independent from the council and the commission, that decide, and our winners tonight are, for the for-profit business is Nectarine Grove, and I'd like to have Rihanna Glor, who's the owner, to come up. And so, not to read the whole press release, but to give you just a little bit, from, whoever nominated them said they serve really good food, to start. And then, of course, they, a lot of organic products, they use proper disposal of organic waste, they use sustainable ingredients. Food that's not consumed on property will support the CRC with their food program and Feeding San Diego, so on all ends of feeding us and taking care of the community, they are well-deserved for this award.
Can we have you pose just for one second?
I'm shy, too.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the next award is for a nonprofit organization, and living in our community is Matthew Klow. And Matthew is the founder of Plastic Beach, and I don't know if you know, but plastic film, plastic bags, the things that are, our clothing wrapped in plastic, is one of the hardest products to get rid of. Having worked with Edco and being out to their recycling facility, they do not want any plastic like this, of plastic film. It jams up the machinery, and that kind of product needs to go into the waste can at this point until Matthew comes along. So what he does is he collects it, he's got businesses in our community and throughout North County, and I think in San Diego County, South County, along with some residential programs, trying to get you to put your plastic film that he'll pick up. So what's neat about it is, once he gets it, he's got a baling facility where it's huge bales of this plastic, and he's got Trex Decking will take that off his hands to give it a second life as Trex Decking for your patios or different things. So it's taking plastic that goes in the landfill, giving it a second life for at least 30 years, hopefully, until we figure out what to do with used Trex decking. So, but anyway, it's a huge step in the right direction, and Matthew and his team are so deserving of this award.
I'd just like to say that we can all be involved in this. I want to challenge you and all your friends, family, the whole community, get businesses involved, and then we can get our plastic out of landfill.
The next category is adult hero. And this year, it's Jim Brown. Jim? I see Jim all the time doing this. He's a 77-year-old resident since, what was it, 1946, I believe, you might have, for, yeah, long time in Encinitas resident. Well, anyway, on his walks, enjoying this beautiful community, he finally got tired of stepping over debris that we sometimes see that's left behind by others. And so, we've estimated in the 10 years or so that he's been doing this, about 150 times a year, it's over 1,000 walks around his area where he lives, picking up debris. We couldn't estimate the poundage, but I'm sure it's tons of debris that you've picked up.
I think, yeah, pretty close. That's pretty close.
So, so as our adult hero, we'd like to thank you for being well-deserved for this award. Setting an example for others to follow. And I'll add, there's a group that just started in Encinitas called Street Stewards, streetstewards.com, and Jim was the first one to join it, and it's finding like-minded people like him doing the same thing together, we can keep this community clean and green. So, Jim, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I'm very thankful to the whole city of Encinitas for having such a beautiful town, and that's how I got into picking up the trash. I'd walk through town, looking at the beach, looking at this, and I'd keep stepping over trash. And that's what started, and I've been doing this for several years now. And it looks better.
And our last award goes to our youth hero, and that's Jay Burke. Jay, come on up. Jay is a 17-year-old, 17-year-old senior at San Diego Academy, about ready to head off to Colorado to continue his education, but while he's here, one of the things, and probably into the future, I'm guessing, is pollinators. So butterflies and bees and things like that. So he's very involved in their native habitat, into keeping them healthy and alive, because, look at me, 60% of our food, I believe, has been touched by a pollinator, and so you can tell I like to eat, so we need to keep our pollinators healthy, or we're all not going to be healthy. So besides, also volunteers at the San Jose Lagoon and the San Diego River Valley Conservancy, and I know some of that is pulling invasive weeds, planting native plants, and again, trying to make sure that our pollinators are healthy for our community. So, very deserving, Jay. Congratulations for being our youth hero.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the proclamation for fair housing, and I believe we have some representatives from the, geez, LASSD, it's, the acronym's in there, Legal Aid Society of San Diego, And so we have Amelia Romero, Amalia, I'm sorry, and Gilberto Vera? Ah, very good, thank you. So we have a proclamation from the city for fair housing, for Fair Housing Month, and so I'll read it, and, "Whereas, April 11th, 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which made it illegal to discriminate on the basis of race, color, sex, national origin, or religion in the sale or rental of housing. And whereas, the City of Encinitas is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities. And whereas, when access housing is unfairly limited, it in turn limits access to good-paying jobs, quality schools, and economic opportunity. The City of Encinitas affirmatively furthers fair housing by providing fair housing services, testing, and information to residents as part of the fair housing, fair housing program adopted by the City Council. And whereas, the City of Encinitas is a member of the San Diego Regional Alliance for Fair Housing, whose mission is to promote fair housing throughout the region. And whereas, the federal government has designated the month of April as Fair Housing Month, during which interested parties from the public and private sector will participate in a nationwide effort to provide education about fair housing laws and to promote fair housing practices. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Bruce Ayers, the mayor of Encinitas, along with all the City Council members, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month, and encourage citizens of Encinitas to become more aware of their rights and responsibilities within our community." So, thank you. And I know, we hire, we actually pay for LASSD to represent people within our community, especially disadvantaged, when it comes to fair housing rights. So I thought it was appropriate to recognize your organization, I'll give you a chance to speak about it, and maybe give us a little synopsis better than I can. I can barely spell the acronym, let alone remember what the, what it means, but I know what you do. And, and then one, one personal plug is former Councilmember Dennis Holtz, and mayor, was, he's longtime attorney for LASSD, and I've, I worked for Dennis during his campaigning. But, so with that, I'll present this and say thank you, and then give you the microphone.
Okay, hi, I'm Amalia Romero. I am the managing attorney for the fair housing team at Legal Aid Society. Gil is deputy director for our organization, and we're just very, very proud to partner with the city to provide free legal services to the community with the city's support. And that can look like a lot of different things. It can look like being out in the community, giving education, outreach to, you know, people who may not know that they could be entitled to a free lawyer, giving free legal advice, actually representing people in negotiations, in eviction defense, in affirmative fair housing claims for violations that they experienced. And providing those services is so important, and, you know, safe and affordable, and discrimination-free housing is a bedrock to every other part in a person's life. So, thank you so much for recognizing this important time.
Thank you.
We get the whole council.
Yep.
Mayor, after this, you guys, two more minutes. Oh, no, you already did. It's a proclamation. Matt Rubel from Senator Blake's office. Oh.
Yeah, for the winners.
Oh, you're right. Where is Matt? I saw you earlier.
Okay. One, two, three. Thank you.
Come on. What do we bring all the four winners up?
So, so we omitted that Senator Blake Speer's office has recognition for the, the environmental awards, too. Sorry about that. So, I think, you guys can go back, you can stay, too, if you want to. Oh, I'm sorry. By all means, don't listen to me. I don't know what.
Mayor Ayers and council members, good evening. My name is Matt Rubel. I bring congratulations from the Office of State Senator Catherine Blakespear. And the Senator asked staff to come out tonight and amplify the recognition of these environmental champions. So congratulations to all of you. We brought framed certificates of recognition on behalf of State Senator Catherine Blakespear, and thank you very much for all of the work that you do protecting our environment.
Thank you. You mentioned you. Hard work. Well, you guys have lots to hold now. Matt, can you fit in, or you can fit in here?
Can I have someone stand next to Councilmember Schaefer to kind of make the photo more even?
Why don't we put the really big, tall guy back in?
Aw, thank you. Step back. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you, congratulations.
Okay. So our next item is item five, oral communications. How many do we have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Oh, man. Well, we can, we can do, yeah, really, two and a half, that, can, you can't do half men, can you do half men?
I don't know, let me see.
I've never tried that before, that's.
I don't.
What's that now?
Oh, it looks like I can.
Yeah, yeah, if you can do two and a half, we'll do two and a half. And it's, the whole idea is that we have 13, if I give a full three minutes, we go...
Now I have 12.
Now I have 12, yeah. Well, that's cool. So, so 2.67, no, I'm, we're not going there. Two and a half minutes for each, and we'll try and get this done in a half hour, because we have other business that people are here to do that also came and spent time. So with that, let's get to it. Call the first three.
Let me just see, I figured out how to do that. Well, now it goes.
If you can do the two and a half.
It's gonna take me a minute, sorry.
Uh-oh.
Thought it was super easy, but apparently not.
Yeah, hey, you learn something new every day.
You want to do that? Well, while we're doing that, I'm just gonna call the first three speakers, Diana Serhan, Donna Goldschlag, Maria Serhan. And just a reminder, each person has three minutes, and this is to...
Two and a half.
I mean, two and a half, excuse me, to address the City Council on items that are not listed on the agenda.
Yep.
And then I wonder if we do it, can we repeat? There we go.
Thank you, Council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Donna Goldschlag. I live in Encinitas. I am here about a serious public safety issue. Authorities know well the name of a 47-year-old unemployed male who lives alone in the house his mother owns, which is across the street from our home. He relentlessly harasses and at times terrorizes my family and multiple families in two neighborhoods. I have court documents and video, should you require that. He is hostile and violent, a quote from his sister's recent request for restraining order. He came to my home in Carlsbad, jumped my fence, and repeatedly punched me. He damaged our home, he throws eggs, large rocks, and golf balls. He stalks female neighbors, he chases and charges at us. His screaming vulgar, racist, threatening language awakens us and other neighbors regularly. He screams disgusting and vulgar phrases into the neighborhood to include violent sex acts, and lately, in the same sentence as the words "little girls." We live in a neighborhood with young children. He screams vile, anti-Semitic phrases at my family. He has multiple restraining orders against him and a history of violating restraining orders. Arrests and convictions are no deterrent. We are frightened and have inquired about firearms. We have been told he has no registered firearms. We've made great effort to get help. We have engaged Captain Christopher Lawrence, Bruce Ayers, when he represented our district, Natalie Villaflor of the Prosecutor's Office and Victim Services, the ADL, Jewish Federation, Code Enforcement, PERT Supervisors, Health and Human Services, our HOA Board, many deputies and PERT members. Everyone is empathetic and does what little they can and still stay in their lane. And then, we are passed from one person, or department, or entity to another. Our situation keeps getting worse. We need your help. It's only a matter of time before something terrible happens to one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Rihanna?
I have been harassed, threatened, and in my heart, I know, stalked by a neighbor for more than four years. His name and address have been provided to individual members of this council. His property is located above our home, behind, behind a shared fence, with a clear view into our house. He has thrown eggs, vegetables, golf balls, glass marbles, asphalt, rocks, pottery shards, kitchenware, ice, a battery, and a lug nut at my home and family. He does not care what or who he hits, and has thrown objects when he knew we were in the backyard. He has damaged window screens and awning, a patio umbrella, our stucco, our sunroom, smashed a light fixture, broke a planter, and on the Fourth of July, we are convinced he smashed the windshield of my father's car, as he was later heard randomly screaming, "I didn't break the Serhan's windshield with a hammer." Only by the grace of God have we not been injured. Most of the damage to our home is surrounding my bedroom window. Eggs were thrown through my window screen, leaving a mess both inside and out, and he maintains a remote-controlled camera with night vision capability that is routinely aimed at my window. A neighbor once observed him surveilling our backyard via a video display he set up within a broken-down van that has been parked on his driveway for years. He tracks my activities, as evidenced by repeated outbursts concurrent with me returning home from work or a simple walk with my dog. I have been forced to modify my dog walks to avoid his street and to make sure I'm not being followed. Last night, I had to take my sick dog into the backyard at 3:05 a.m. We didn't make a sound. At 3:24, after returning to my bed, the entire neighborhood could hear him scream, "Shut the blank up, blank, turn it off," except he used the expletives. He has a documented history of arrests and felony convictions in Minnesota for stalking and domestic abuse, and a recent reported assault on his sister, who lives in Carlsbad, caused her to obtain a protective order from the court. We have a recording as evidence that he believes his sister and I are in collusion to steal his mother's house from him. We were forced to obtain a restraining order to try and protect ourselves. From his backyard, he screams at all hours of the day and night, the most vile, obscene, racist, and nonsensical language you can imagine. Only after we obtained the restraining order did he stop using our proper names within his rants. Now he uses substitute names to continue harassing us.
If you could continue, just finish up quickly.
Thank you. He was arrested in October for violating our restraining order, but there has been one postponement after another from the court. I implore you to enforce city noise and nuisance ordinances that might encourage his removal from the property, or at minimum, cause him to stop the harassment and threatening behavior. It is only a matter of time before he seriously injures me, one of my family, or a neighbor. If you see something, say something, we are told. Our entire neighborhood sees something very wrong with this situation. We are pleading for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Maria Serhan, followed by George Serhan, Brad Lefkowitz, and then Ronnie Gardenier.
I was Maria.
You were Maria, okay. So then is Diane?
Diane is relinquishing her time.
Oh, okay.
I'm George Serhan.
Perfect, thank you, George.
Mr. Mayor, my neighborhood would also like to have a quiet zone. I heard you talk about that earlier. The system, the legal system, is sheltering a violent predator who lives in my neighborhood and is threatening my family, both physically and emotionally. This predator is well-known to the Sheriff's Department, the District's Attorney Office, and the courts, both in and out of California. Yet, my repeated calls for help go nowhere because, in my opinion, and now my experience, the system demands blood before it acts. Despite a series of legal actions that began almost five years ago, the problem is still slowly progressing through the courts, but the threats keep rapidly increasing in severity and frequency. Indeed, the legal system effectively requires that a family must be grieving before the threat is removed. I have come here tonight to again ask for your help, acknowledging that two of the council members, including the mayor, are already trying to give us help, and we appreciate that, as has the Sheriff's Department. Here's the problem. The system tells us that if we see something, say something. We have, yet nothing happens. Why? Because the system does not support victims. According to the National Institute of Justice, we know that the following are warning signs of a potentially disastrous outcome, expressing violent thoughts, direct threats, increased aggression, bullying towards differences in race, religion, gender, war orientation, social isolation, and the list of items goes on. Our predator in the neighborhood is a poster boy for all of these warning signs. Last week, I heard a Florida law enforcement officer talk about the swift and massive response given to the Florida State University shooting. In my specific case, I prefer to have a timely and a preventative response. Sooner rather than later, the predator's mental health issues are going to result in a catastrophe for my family and/or my neighbors, unless the system is changed, whereby saying something has actual meaning. That change has to start at a local level. I implore you to work towards changing the system where more weight is given to victims. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Lefkowitz, followed by Ronnie Gardenier, Christine Schindler, and then Trina Priest.
Mayor, Council, Brad Lefkowitz, I'm gonna keep it brief.
I have come here tonight to again ask for your help, acknowledging that two of the council members, including the mayor, are already trying to give us help, and we appreciate that, as has the Sheriff's Department. Here's the problem. The system tells us that if we see something, say something. We have, yet nothing happens. Why? Because the system does not support victims. According to the National Institute of Justice, we know that the following are warning signs of a potentially disastrous outcome: expressing violent thoughts, direct threats, increased aggression, bullying towards differences in race, religion, gender, war orientation, social isolation, and the list of items goes on. Our predator in the neighborhood is a poster boy for all of these warning signs. Last week, I heard a Florida law enforcement officer talk about the swift and massive response given to the Florida State University shooting. In my specific case, I'd prefer to have a timely and a preventative response. Sooner rather than later, the predator's mental health issues are going to result in a catastrophe for my family and/or my neighbors, unless the system is changed whereby saying something has actual meaning. That change has to start at a local level. I implore you to work towards changing the system where more weight is given to victims. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Lefkowitz, followed by Ronnie Gardenier, Christine Schindler, and then Trina Priest.
Mayor, Council, Brad Lefkowitz. I'm gonna keep it brief. I planned a lighthearted appreciation of public comment, but after the very serious concerns shared by those citizens, it would be a disservice to them to do that at this moment. So, I will yield my time, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ronnie Gardenier, and I live in Cardiff, and I've been there since 1988. And actually, I was going to present something entirely different, but I can't now. I can't. These people should not have to have this happen to them. I honestly don't have any idea what City Council can do about it other than this noise situation. But this person obviously needs to be put under guidance or, oh my gosh, I used to work for estate planning for incompetent individuals. He needs to be declared an incompetent individual. I don't know how that would happen or what, but this is pathetic. And my little issue of taking down the poles and the wires in Birmingham, on Birmingham, certainly have nothing to do with this, but I feel danger because of those poles and those wires. And I just want to make sure that I'm here again to report that and to please, let's put that in our budget. Nine years, guys, it's been nine years since that was presented to us. Please, let's figure out a budget to be able to get those dangerous, dangerous poles and wires away from our streets. Thank you very much. And I'm so sorry.
Who's after Christine?
Trina Priest. David Dean, and then Jennifer Hewitson.
All right, good evening. Christine Schindler, East Encinitas. Before I forget it, I gave you some materials for their education about biking, walking, and safety. I have a booklet that I got from AAA. They're awesome, they give you a lot of good materials. Everything, but most everything you can get in English and Spanish. I just want to encourage us, as we do educational materials for the city, that we always think about doing both English and Spanish. I'm not gonna get through everything, because I never do anyway. But I appreciate that Jory was here for the Budget Workshop. That was very hard for her to do. And I'll appreciate when she's able to come back full-time. Happy Earth Day, month, year, century. I hope you did something fun, and I hope you continue to do better things, daily habits, to protect our earth. If you could go to the next slide, please. So, respect, collaboration, and appreciation. I've been reflecting on something for a while, and I'm gonna bypass saying most of what I want to say and just jump to the kudos. I figure, once a month, I'm gonna come here and call out specific people of City of Encinitas staff that I work with that are wonderful. So this month, Nick Buck, Batter, Nicole White, Jill Bankston, Jen, who does an enormous amount that no one even knows about. And the fact that you're doing the Encinitas Academy. I'm part of the academy. Earlier during the Budget Workshop, there were four of us that were here from the academy. Mayor Bruce welcomed us for our first session. I think there's one more person here right now. It's very valuable, so I appreciate it. Next slide, if you would. Oh, I actually have the control. Ooh. All right, so May is Bike Month. Every year, it's a time to consider other ways of moving around your town, getting to school, getting to work. So I want to call out the continued big leaning that we're doing at the City of Encinitas as far as education, more than any other place across San Diego County. Twice a month, there's city cycling classes. I again encourage you, when you can, to come to one of those, even if it's just for the first hour. It's gonna be... Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Ayers and Encinitas City Council. I'm Trina Priest, I'm a middle school teacher, and I'm a mother of three teens. I came here this evening to express my concerns about the visibility and promotion of the city's marijuana businesses. I wonder if we all really comprehend what the consequences are of having marijuana storefronts in town with its pervasive signage and advertising, and now, special events that are held on the weekends. The Siesta Pot Shop event this last weekend was especially egregious, and I wonder, did it have a permit? The repercussions of marijuana special events in Encinitas is that it normalizes marijuana use to our teens and our young adults as some sort of default solution for stress, anxiety, and depression. This can sabotage and divert the lives of our young people. The negative result is staggering for young adults and the families that care for them, and dramatically contributes to our city's cost to provide for public safety. Our city adopted smoke-free public places because we knew that smoking and vaping behaviors affect everyone who is exposed. And poor health costs money in public health and our medical resources. The recognition that secondhand smoke, whether it be tobacco or marijuana, prompted our city to ban it in public places. So, why now are we allowing these marijuana special events that are promoting just the opposite? After all, these are for-profit businesses whose business plans are obviously encouraging our addictions. Thank you.
Next speaker is...
The only thing I can, we can't respond to things up here in oral comments, but we can refer them to staff. So I just wanted to take a moment. The, whether or not the Siesta Pot Shop event requires a permit, I'd like to know. And as far as the, I don't know how to call it other than the Serhans and the Goldschlags issue, I would like staff to take a look at what we could possibly do there.
Just to let you know on that, I have spoken to Councilmember San Antonio, and I've also spoken to Captain Watson, looking at setting up a meeting.
Yeah, and I've had extensive discussions with Captain Lawrence before Captain Watson, I've even briefed Captain Watts on it. But I want to make sure that I refer it. We can't discuss it here, per se, though. So, but we empathize and, yeah, we know how trying it is. Sorry, Dave, I interrupted you.
Just following Dave Dean will be Jennifer Hewitson, Allison Wilachowski, and then Rachel Graves.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Two quick topics this evening I'd like to speak on. One, thank you, community, for your overwhelming response to the community library, the small library at the garden. It is absolutely amazingly endorsed by the community. We receive at least 50 people a day visiting the library itself, and thank goodness for that and promoting literacy in our community. Next subject I'd like to speak on is the CRC, and we spoke about it extensively last week. The one suggestion that I had, which I heard the mayor speak in the last meeting about, is the volunteer sheriff's department lending their support. This past week, I spoke with eight different patrol units, two members in each unit, 16 members of the volunteer sheriff's department about maintaining a presence in front of the CRC and around the local community and residents. All 16 members of the volunteer sheriff's department endorsed and welcomed the opportunity to have boots on the ground, so to speak, and a commanding presence in front of the CRC and the surrounding businesses. They were gonna take it back to their commanding officers and recommend and support that. So I'd like the council to pursue that endeavor and save additional money that the city needs to promote other activities. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I first want to thank you all for your willingness to meet with your citizens and for keeping an open mind and being receptive to our ideas. I really appreciate you. I'm actually just here to mention International Dark Sky Week, which is going on right now. It's from the 21st to the 28th of April. Dark Sky International would love for us to turn our lights out during peak bird migrating, migration on the Pacific Flyway, right where we are. Why wouldn't we want to help protect the health and safety of our diverse migratory bird population? We have some of the highest biodiversity in the state. I believe the request is 11 p.m. to turn off our lights, and outdoor lights in particular. International Dark Sky Week is an annual celebration of our night sky. San Diego County residents can enjoy a variety of activities to learn about the dark sky movement, experience the tranquility of nighttime, spark curiosity about nocturnal creatures, and maybe glimpse Lyra's meteor or Milky Way galaxy. There are lots of local dark sky events and places to visit in San Diego County, and additional ways to discover and celebrate the night. What we can do year-round, you can help by lighting only when and where it's needed. Use warm color light, install shielded fixtures, and aim light downward. Good lighting is neighbor-friendly and wildlife-friendly, and it can save money and energy, which helps protect our planet. Learn more about effects of light pollution and how to implement responsible lighting. Advocate for lighting ordinance in our community, and that's what I'm doing. I know I've talked a little bit about this with you. We'd love for a proclamation to be put out and to have a goal of Encinitas participating in Dark Sky Week next year, in 2026, as well as perhaps looking towards joining our community of Leavenheen, the only part of Encinitas that has a dark sky ordinance. Encinitas could become a dark sky city. And I learned recently that Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, has done this, so why not? And I thank my wonderful neighbor Bernard Minster for bringing all this to my attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Allison? And Allison be followed by Rachel Graves.
Hi, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Allison Wilachowski, and I'm here representing the Cardiff 101 Main Street Association. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for supporting the ADA-compliant parking on Santa La Jo Avenue and the two-hour parking that helps our businesses who have different patients that come into their spaces that need that parking right there. And I'm very excited to share that it is one of the only ones in Cardiff, downtown Cardiff, that is ADA-compliant, that's not in a park. So thank you very much for that. I also wanted to say shout-out to Nectarine Grove, which is one of my favorite restaurants. I love them so much, and I'm so proud that they were able to receive that award. And I wanted to share with you that Taste of Cardiff is next week, and we actually have used Plastic Beach for several years to help us take all of the reusable cups and our reusable sporks, and they take all that plastic from us, and they take it to wherever... That's why we get them. They take it to wherever they need to get it. And I wanted to also say, go Warriors, thanks.
Hi, my name's Rachel. Thank you, Jennifer Campbell, for arranging that meeting for our neighbors. And also, thank you, City Council, for selecting Trail 82 and La Costa Ped Path for our Sandag grant applications this year. I did a PRA to figure out how that vote went, came back to you, and how the former mayor and planning commissioners were able to bring that back to vote. From my PRA, I got an email from Tony Krantz the next morning telling you all that the two applications that you selected, quote, "They don't have a snowball's chance in hell of getting any awards." So you passed up the opportunity, and you spent $4,000 for nothing. There are only three groups standing between your decision and the project moving, projects moving forward: the grant writer, which Krantz participated in contracting with, our staff, maybe he also has staff he works with, like the previous speaker, and Sandag. I would like you to ask yourselves, which of these three have either worked to ensure or promised to former mayor Tony Krantz that our grant applications are a waste of money because these projects have a snowball's chance in hell? You made a good decision that night. He was offering, he and his group were offering to fill out this application. In eight hours, you were going to have to submit it to Sandag. Our staff was going to have to fill in all the gaps. I would like you all to know that he completed 16 of the 30 pages of the application, leaving 14 of the pages for staff to complete in eight hours. Of the 16, they were very incomplete. He admitted they were "cobbled together," unquote. The pages that he omitted, or he didn't finish, were budgets, schedules, performance measures like safety metrics of bicycle accidents, the data sources for those, the pedestrian collisions and data sources for those, project feasibility studies, board policy number 33, not sure what that is. And coincidentally, a noncollusion affidavit that states the applicant has no direct, has not directly or indirectly colluded, conspired, connived, or agreed with anyone to put in a sham application or to refrain from applying. The applicant has not in any manner, directly or indirectly, sought by agreement, communication, or conference with anyone to fix the request. In light of this email, I'm not sure the city could have signed that with integrity.
Thank you.
That concludes oral communications.
Okay, great. So we can move on to item six, report from closed session, which we had none. Moving on, any changes to the agenda, item seven?
There are no changes to the posted agenda. And then moving to the consent calendar, no items have been removed by the public.
Okay. Let's see, I would like to poll 8D, but I don't need a staff report. And so, any other items that the council would like to poll? I don't think so. Entertain a motion on everything but 8D for the consent calendar.
Motion to approve everything but 8D for the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, and let's call the question on that.
Councilmember San Antonio?
Oh, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Okay, great. And then, we can dispense with the staff report. The only question I had, and we talked a little bit about this during briefing, is, in our general plan, do we have the arts as part of our goals and policies? And is that, is that something missing in the recreation element that we're talking about funding, updating?
Good evening.
Sorry.
Making sure it was on.
Yeah, I was just, okay.
Yeah, you know, from our discussion in, not the deepest review of the elements, the recreation element, I've been through twice now. No, arts is not a, not a strong call-out in that, in that segment. As we talked about, this is being a chance to maybe reach into that.
Yeah, and so I think what I would like, I'd like to propose, just to cut to the chase, is that we add one more item, since we're already talking about updating, mandatorily, I might add, updating the...
It's actually the resource element is what we're...
Oh, I have the wrong one, okay.
We are, but we will likely be updating the recreation.
Yeah, and it's probably been a long time since we've done it. So what I'd like to do is propose that the Arts Commission, because we have a 2002 Arts Master Plan. So we did the underlying plan. We just don't have the goals and policies up at the high level, and I'd like to get that into the recreation element. Did I say that right? Yeah. Recreation, yeah. Okay, yeah, there's the resource element and the recreation element. I think of them as RE, both of them, so. So my proposal would be to add that to the, the work plan for the Arts Commission, have them look at what they would recommend as goals and policies that are consistent with all the other elements, but have something called out in the recreation element that talks about arts. We've always been arts-focused. I think this is just a gap that we've moved along without having the, the overarching goals and policies in place from a general plan standpoint. And one of my goals is to get us working to the general plan again.
If I may, the commission would be excited, I would be excited to work on that.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the Arts Master Plan... Oh, sorry, Councilmember O'Hara, I was on the wrong...
No, it's okay. Yeah, I would like the Arts Commission, I'd like to add somewhere here, and it kind of alludes to it, but it doesn't really dive into it. I really like to see the Arts Commission look for a way to create funding opportunities through Pacific View and other art projects in the city to fund all their programs, to fund, to help fund their programs, offset costs, you know, work with, with the money that we have funded. the money that we have funded them as well as their grant funding. So I'd really like to see a direction of how to make their resources, like Pacific View, more solvent.
And do you have an item in the master plan or in the?
That's why I wasn't going to bring it up. For me, it's either five or six, but I don't know on their, on their, on their work plan, but I don't really know if it falls under one directly or if it would be its own piece. So I wasn't going to bring it up, but since we're here.
What I would, I will entertain a friendly amendment to my motion that I was in the middle of making, but we'll get there. But basically, I would, I would move adoption of this with the addition of a work plan item for updating the general plan in regard to arts in particular, and this would be for the Arts Commission, and then add to that in either five and/or six, updating it to seek out grant funding? Is that?
No, not just grant funding, just ways for the facility to create its own revenue stream. In this case, Pacific View, it might be other, other facilities they have access to.
That might be a whole new item. Maybe we add 6.5 or something or somewhere in there. Are you talking about explicitly for arts education? Because that's.
I think it's either arts education or public art, but I think, because that's where we seem to be focusing on Pacific View.
Okay. So maybe we insert one within the arts education section and ask them to look at adding a second additional goal of how to develop, I want to say profitable, but.
Revenue stream that offsets.
A revenue stream to help offset the cost. Yeah, financial plan, so to speak, and, and financial and art education plan that would help offset the cost of Pacific View.
Yeah, or just, yeah.
Help contribute, help contribute to the cost of Pacific View and.
Yeah, or not, whether, or just projects apps, I wouldn't want to say the cost of Pacific View, to me, that sounds like we're paying the mortgage off there with that or the, in this case, the bond to it, but just a revenue stream that offsets a, the, the challenge of funding at that, at that city resource. You know, clearly, it is anchored by funding for the number of programs they want to offer, time they can be open and things like that. And if we can figure out a way to support them in providing a revenue stream, I think that would certainly be beneficial if they can come up with that, with what that idea is. I think it's something we can all figure out how to get behind.
Are you looking for ideas, that they develop ideas, or are you actually looking for them to develop a plan?
I would start with ideas and go with a plan from there.
Okay. In this, this year, for this work plan, do you want the ideas and the plan, or ideas or the plan, or ideas first?
Every plan starts with an idea. So the ideas first, and then if, if it's, if we can get, get to a plan, great, but at least start with an idea so that we have some ideas of threads to follow in the following years, that's fine. If we get it all done this year, great, but at least some ideas and concepts of where we can.
Okay. So, so the work plan item would be to generate ideas that could help generate revenue funding to, to contribute to the art center with a goal for this year to be having ideas, the list of ideas generated, but if you could take it all the way through to program, that would be a stretch goal. Is that, did I capture what you were saying?
Yeah, I think that's great. And we may approach them like, oh, I have these ideas no one's ever asked, and all of a sudden, we don't even need to wait to have the ideas, we just, we start planning. Or it could be, no one's ever asked, we haven't thought about it, let us think about it, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, okay. Dave, you look like you have a question or no?
No, I'm good. I, I understand, and a commission meeting is a great place for people we haven't thought of to come and share their ideas on how we can reach that goal.
Okay. So I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And then any other comments? Looks like no, call the question.
Just one moment. Sorry, the system's frozen. Give me a minute here.
Once again, we're waiting for the computer. There we go.
That motion does carry unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
And that takes us on to item nine, items removed from the consent calendar. So we, well, I guess we took care of that. Item 10 are action items, and we will start with item 10A. And this is approval of the proposed bike route design plans for, along Santa Lejo Avenue from Chesterfield Drive to Dublin Drive, along Dublin Drive from Santa Lejo Avenue to Manchester, and along Manchester Avenue from Dublin Drive to Santa Lejo Nature Center and Santa Lejo Water Reclamation Plant. And the contact person is City Traffic Engineer Bandigan. And with that, we'll start with a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of public, Abe Bandigan, City Traffic Engineer. Item here tonight, it's a very small item, but I'll explain further why we have it as an action item here. Bike lane and bike route design in Cardiff area. We received a request about a year and a half ago from Bike Walk Encinitas for addition of sharrows on Santa Leo. This is the southern end of Santa Leo where it connects to Manchester in the southern end of Cardiff area, where we have the fork where Manchester Avenue and connects to the other Manchester Avenue goes into Cardiff. And then the other side of the fork is the Santa Lejo. We had onsite meetings with Bike Walk Encinitas, staff met with them, we did collect data, analyze the data, speed data, volume data, side distance analyses. We did have an alternative recommendation at that point, not adding share marking on Santa Leo. We did take it to Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission. This is the aerial view. The bottom intersection is a signal at Sechba. This is the Manchester on the bottom. I don't know if my mouse is, I think it is visible. And then this is the fork where Manchester goes up into Cardiff and then Santa Leo starts. So the idea was to put sharrows here. We didn't recommend this for various purposes, narrowness of the road, curvature of the road, the geometric design, basically, we did have a bad grade there, very limited side distance along the curves, and the lanes being narrow, basically, in a lot of areas, it's not wide enough for a bicyclist to be on the edge, and they would have to basically take the lane, be, stay in the middle of the lane. Our alternate solution was to add sharrows, take the bicyclists off the main road at Manchester and Dublin, and then bring them back to Santa Leo where it kind of straightens out and there is enough width for a bike lane. However, at the commission meeting, our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, hearing from some residents at that point, decided to recommend both adding the sharrows along Santa Lejo, and that's the reason that we have it as an action item tonight, because the staff recommendation differs from the commission recommendation. We still recommend keeping it at Manchester as an alternate route. The signage will be added, share markings will be added at Manchester and Santa Leo, and then the rest of it will be in Dublin with proper signage and striping. Sample of the share markings north of the Sechba signal and then the bike route. We can also add an alternate custom-made sign that says to get to Chesterfield, use this alternate route. Using Santa Leo, the curve will never be illegal for the bicyclists, they can still use it, it's just we don't want to create that false sense of security and recommend and encourage usage of that curvy area. And then this is the Dublin area, again, a double yellow and some share markings. And with that, I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Do we have two, two public speakers? Do we have any preliminary questions? Let's go to public speakers.
Okay, first speaker is Ellen Burr, followed by Christine Schindler.
Good evening, Council. This is my neighborhood. I personally would like to know how many neighbors were consulted about this alternative plan to go up Dublin and hang a right onto Manchester to go down the road. Right now, there are, there's a center line at only the intersection of the two main points we're talking about. These streets are crappy. They are crumbling at the edges, there are no curbs, there's no sidewalks, it is washed out on the sides. If you put in a center line, there's not enough room. I haven't gotten Scott out there with his measuring tape yet, but I don't think you could, would legally have a center line across Dublin if you cut out all the gouges. Okay? First of all, down the hill, I should be having a map up here, we shouldn't have a bike lane going from the edge of Clinton Park to the 711 because there are always potholes and there's always a continuous stream of water, often with algae in it, so people will be avoiding that and going into the traffic, know whatever, whatever else, and most of those people are going to be moving over anyway so they can hang a left at the railroad intersection at Chesterfield. Going back up to Dublin, it is much more dangerous to have people trying to go down Manchester than anywhere else. Right now, it is basically a one-lane road with two directions. You play chicken, okay? You, I have a crappy car, I usually win. The guys with the big SUVs and trucks, they win, you know? The Porsches and the Teslas, I don't know, it's tough considering who wins that one. But this is not a good road to put any sort of biker on because there's no sidewalks. So already, people with their dogs and their children in strollers, oh my goodness, I'm going to run out of time, can't get through there. Furthermore, yes, put the sharrows on Santa Lejo. The people who bike, who cycle all the time will continue to do that, and maybe the people who are visiting to do that will understand, but it's mostly for the people that drive, so they know, watch out for cyclists, they're allowed to. But I don't know why we're doing this, who we're doing it for, what, what, what group are we trying to move from where to where, when we just spent, as taxpayers, not Encinitas, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars putting in the multimodal path by virtue of Sandag at the lagoon that runs across the five? And then there's another section that's behind the Selpa that intersects with that. So why do we need another bike path?
Thank you.
So East Encinitas, Christine Schindler. So Ellen, one of the things that she said, sharrows are not just for bicyclists, they're, they're really there to alert cars that a bike could be taking the lane. So I want to thank Abe for meeting with us. It was Michael Van Neumann and myself. This is a corridor that's used a lot, it's basically an east-west connector. We had a good discussion, Nick Buck was involved as well, and Michael and I made it very clear that bike riders use this corridor, they'll continue to use it. It's very curvy, no sightlines, cars drive very fast, there's no shoulder at all, there's no space for a bike lane. Our original ask was just getting sharrows on the stretch on either end, but also through the S curve. So we were very determined to get sharrows on the S curve, and it's more an alert to cars. Bike riders sometimes ride where they're, where it's best practice. A lot of bike riders hug the side of the road, it's very dangerous in this area. So the bike route option, I don't believe that it, Michael and I did not bring that up. That came up as probably, Abe can, can confirm this, but following, probably following a discussion with risk management. Bike routes happen a lot, they're basically kind of a wayfinding to give you an alternative. Generally speaking, bike riders love bike lanes, we prefer that. Some bike riders want something completely separated, some just want an alternative way to go where there's going to be less cars. So then I think Abe went down with his staff to design the bookend sharrows with the bike route as an alternative, and I just really want to encourage this design to have sharrows in the S curve because that's the missing link. And like Ellen said, and like we've said to, to Abe and others many times, the sharrows are there really more for alerting car drivers. It does not give bike riders a sense of security when you're riding a bike, you're vulnerable, and what you do here and where you put yourself in the road gives you a sense of safety, but never security.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll hop in if nobody else will. First, I have maybe questions that might be helpful. Was there a CPP for this project?
No, Mayor, this area was included in our ATP as a alternate route. This was already adopted, and there were multiple committee meetings when ATP was being adopted.
And the ATP was looked at, when, when was that adopted?
I think around seven.
Twenty, during COVID?
Eighteen, 2018.
2018, so before COVID, actually.
Correct.
Okay. And the sharrows, Santa Lejo Avenue, north of Chesterfield, I believe it's sharrowed up there, right? In other words, if you go past, yeah, VG's, good, that's where our waypoints are, VG's and, yeah, Cardiff Town, you know, yeah, so, but is that, that is got sharrows on it right now, today?
Correct, yeah, we don't have a bike lane there, just, just sharrows.
Just sharrows. So, so in some ways, this is a way to get from the Chesterfield, Santa Lejo intersection over to, and I'll actually probably differ with Ellen, precisely because we put in that bridge with the bikeway there and created a lot more bike traffic than we used to have, we, there, it calls for having a place to send people. This is one option. I would ask, what about the, the North Coast Bikeway that is across the street, goes up behind the Santa Lejo JPA facility up to Birmingham? Would that be another alternate for, because I'm thinking what we're really trying to do, and this is implementing something I think Councilmember Schaefer has discussed, we need to start thinking about alternate bike lanes to get people out of the danger zone. So on the surface, I looked at this and I went, yeah, that, you're doing exactly what, what Luke's been discussing, and, and I think we're supportive of. But I'm, I'm now stepping one, one, one step back further, and I'm going, somebody coming from Slana Beach, riding, trying to find the safest route through, through Encinitas, probably would come across the bridge, then go up the bike trail behind, because that's a dedicated bike trail, safe as safe can be, little hill climbing up, but then they get up to Birmingham. Where do they go from there? Because we, we just had that discussion, can they cut off earlier and get down Liverpool or one or the other? In other words, the, I may want to send this back as my first thought, and, and A, have a CPP, and look slightly bigger picture and see if there's a way to work in the North Coast Bike Trail and another route to get to Santa Lejo that avoids both of these routes. Because the one thing I do agree with completely with Ellen is it's, it's, you, you drive on Manchester, which is one of the main thoroughfares coming off of Santa Lejo, it's chicken. You know, you have to decide where you're, you know, can I get three more cars up before I pull over to let the truck by the other way, or, yeah, I drive an old car too, so I'm, I'm usually at an advantage there. So that's my thoughts. I'll recognize Councilmember San Antonio.
Didn't a week, a couple weeks ago, didn't we just discuss about the route from Birmingham cutting across to Sechba?
I think we did.
And doesn't it go through the neighborhood?
Yeah, the, the connection at Birmingham and I-5 right now doesn't go through Cardiff as far as I know, there is no straight connection to Chesterfield Signal. So in order to bring people from, from their bike path by the freeway toward Chesterfield, we need to bring them through Cardiff, which right now doesn't exist as far as.
We talked about, right? Is that?
This can work as an, as an alternate to the Birmingham bikeway. Instead of them coming all the way up to the Birmingham and I-5 and then coming down toward the, the rail, this Sechba connection can work as a. toward the rail, this Sechba connection can work as that alternative.
Because I do know that it ends, that bike path does end at the top of Birmingham. So I think we just talked about Birmingham, the restriping and all that. And I think that we discussed that we weren't going to restripe it, add a bike lane or any of that. So they'd essentially just be stuck up there, right? Unless they come down the hill.
The way, yeah.
Okay. You know, a lifetime ago, I was a triathlete and as was Jim, and I've spent many hours on the road and I've ridden at a lot of different places, spent hours and hours. And I, I mean, I get it. You want to ride, you want to go up Santa Lejo and it's the beautiful ride. You get up there and you're like, ah, you get to see beautiful Cardiff. And I'm a, I drive all the time and I want to look over the edge too. I want to look at the beach, I want to look at the waves. I can only imagine what that would look like. I get it, the charros are for the drivers or predominantly for the drivers to warn them, but I definitely feel like that distracted driver, all you need is you pull up onto one or two, whether they're recreational riders or cyclists, you're going to pull up on those guys pretty darn fast. I get it, the roads through Dublin and all there, those roads definitely are not, Talon's at a point, they're not great roads, but, and they are narrow roads, lots of cars parked on the side of the street. Maybe that is something we got to look at too, but I definitely feel like, I mean, to get them off of Santa Lejo, I think is, and it's just a, isn't it just a, you can still ride on Santa Lejo. It's just a suggestion or a, hey, I would use this route to be safe, considering there's a lot of e-bikers and whatnot. And, you know, we do have, we encourage tourism as well. So I feel like if you encourage the tourism and people are riding bikes and I think just going that way seems to be the smart way to do it.
That's true.
But I'll yield.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. I would agree with Councilmember San Antonio where if we're going to come from east to west, the cyclists are going to take their chances and do what they do. The professional riders, they're going to go up that road and how they go. Coming down, coming from west to east, it's not going to be as much of an issue because you keep your speed up and you're holding the speed of the moving traffic. It's that uphill from east to west model, the not so experienced or somebody comes over to Santa Lejo to do the walk, ride, they pull out their bikes, they start right there because that's the only parking or whatever the situation is. I'd prefer them to be on Manchester myself. Yes, there's a chicken happening, but if people are walking their dogs and they're walking on that street with cars there, I don't think it's going to be more dangerous with bikes. Right? If a bike's coming out of person walking, it's not going to be more dangerous. It's going to be probably less dangerous because it's a bike versus a pedestrian. So it's really to get encouraged again, our e-bikers, the people that aren't in cars, the people that aren't traditionally, they don't know what's happening behind the wheel of a car. And like we said, that's a distracted moment. That's a heavy S-turn. We did have video. We did not present it, but there's video showing what it would look like at 25 miles an hour with a bike going up that, you know, manpower assist. Do you have the video?
I do have the video.
Oh, show the video.
Abe, if you could explain when you were even slowing down, that would be great.
Yes. So I have four videos, two going westbound or northbound toward Chesterfield and two coming down. They're very quick videos. I can, I can, I guess, show all of them. So this is the first one going northbound toward Chesterfield, going around uphill. This is our mobility manager on his bike. Well, you don't see him now, but I'm driving at 25 and you see, he appears, he's wearing a vest, but it's about one second. And I already knew where he was, so I, not to hit a colleague, I kind of unintentionally slowed down because I knew he was about there. Yeah, I can replay and you'll notice that I did slow down a little. I guess on the other side, he was stationary, but his speed couldn't be more than five mile an hour. I kind of slowed down right here around this curve because I knew he was. And similarly, let's do another south, do a south. This one is going from the Vista Point up there, going down. And again, at no point I was above 25. I clocked the vehicle at 25. This one is a little bit better downhill, but still, as you can see, the distance is very, very short. It's probably less than one second.
And so, yeah, so the idea is, and having lived here my whole life, the idea is that hedge times can grow over significantly so that it's just not, it's not a good idea to be on that, on a bike unless you know exactly what you're doing or you want to take that risk. And that's how people like to live. But we're here to help all citizens and really in this case, the junior citizens that really we want to start to encourage the off the main roads, off the thoroughfares where there are less cars traveling at a much slower speed. I yield.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay, so first off, I don't believe we're really talking about something that is a comparison to the bike route that goes up to by the AMPM, I guess it's not AMPM anymore, whatever it is, by the gas station on the five in Birmingham. So the rider who makes that decision makes it down at the five at Manchester where they first encountered that trail. And more likely, they're going to follow that trail up and then it's designed so they go over the highway and they follow McKinnon. So what we're really talking about is something that we've been talking about a lot. We talked about it when we talked about Santa Fe and we talked about SDA and how do we lessen the impact and the interaction in dangerous locations between vehicles? And in this case, can you put that video back up, just pause it wherever you want? In this case, not just with cyclists, but pedestrians, right? This is a road, there's not room for anybody but these vehicles when they go through. So you can pause right there. There's no place for a pedestrian or a cyclist there really. And I think what we've, what we've really wanted to do across the board is encourage our cyclists to go away from these main arteries, which are very busy, and this is the main artery that goes directly to the highway, onto roads that will accommodate them, their speed and their ability to coexist with other traffics that are traveling at similar speeds. And in this case, I think encouraging bicycles to use a route that goes up Manchester, as tough as that hill is, is a very safe route to go. It brings them back to Mayor Ayler's point, back to Santa Lejo where there are, starting at that point, charros. I believe from my own experience, the experience I hear up here, the experience I hear from other cyclists, guys like Sean Wallace, people out there, they are, and I didn't speak to him on that, but I'm saying people like him, they're going to, if they're going to go up this, they're going to go up it, whether there's charros on it or not. This is the type of rider who's going to do it. To Councilmember San Antonio's point, I think the beauty of this is if we are worried about who want to see the view of Cardiff Reef, well, Dublin still dumps you out with time to see Cardiff Reef. When you get up there, it's still a very lovely ride. So I think this really accomplishes a lot of things we've been trying to accomplish up here. It also speaks to the fact that we don't want people to ride at Birmingham, we feel it's dangerous. We want to get them riding in places that are safer. I would feel much safer riding with my family on Dublin and Manchester than I would on that. Not taking my 10-year-old down that, no way. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this project. I don't think we need charros on Santa Lejo Ave. I think the cyclists will use it anyway. So I, my recommendation is to go with staff's recommendation on this to create the bike route on Santa Lejo to Dublin to Manchester.
Second.
I have a motion.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Anybody else want, I'm going to go, but let me know if anybody else wants to talk. I'm a little, I don't know which way to go here because I see it's a difficult situation, any one of the two. And then I would throw in the third option that I suggested. I am concerned that 2018, we passed a document that was modestly reviewed at the time, and I think the ATP, and then we came back with the MAP afterwards and it got about the same level of review. In fact, when we passed the MAP, the.
Mobility.
Alternative, yeah. Which was kind of an add-on to that. The council at the time, with me on it, agreed to bring it back in a year and we never brought it back. So I wouldn't put too much weight in the amount of review this got. And I would, I would feel better if I did a substitute motion that we send this back for a CPP and get a little more, because I fear when we start striping, not striping, putting charros down Dublin and down Manchester, we're going to have a lot of people in here going, what the heck? And it would give an opportunity for this now seven-plus-year-old document to be vetted and look at the alternative. I would also throw in as part of a substitute motion, looking at what, I understand you're going right and over to McKinnon from the North Coast bikeway, but is there an alternative to get us back left and down the hill, not on Birmingham, just like we talked about? And in the end, we may end up with charros on Dublin and Manchester and charros somewhere on Liverpool in order to get this alternate bike lane up there and just look at it a little more holistically. And then finally, I do think it's worth reconsidering whether or not the Mobility Traffic Safety Commission said, hey, we really should have charo symbols on the missing section of Santa Lejo, the S-curve, I guess is the best way to call it. And I think that's worth discussing in public one more time before we go and spend real money on paint. And in the meantime, it would be no paint. So I would make that substitute motion if I could get a second.
I'd just like to note this did go to the Mobility Traffic Safety Commission already.
Yeah, and they recommended putting the charo on the S-curve in addition to all this. So they're a bit at odds with what the engineer's recommendation is. And I also believe that almost nobody in the neighborhood, especially in Dublin and Manchester, know this is coming. I bet you, if you and I walked down door-to-door, knocked on doors, they would all, we'd get a myriad of opinions. And I'd like to just get that public input now before we actually go out and start painting.
So if we do that, if we're going to send it back to Mobility Commission, can we do a public notice on that then for that meeting so that we can?
Sure. Putting charros on bike lanes, we almost never had committee meetings for charros on bike lanes. This can be, I guess, a new practice. But what's the direction with regards to the invitation? Should it be just Manchester and Dublin frontage or no, like the entire Cardiff area? Because the way I'm hearing, it might end up in a different street. So should we?
Yeah, I guess I'm looking for three options. One is Manchester, Dublin is a bike route, like shown in the staff report and is approved by you. Option two, additive to that, would be to put charros on the S-curve portion in order to determine whether or not people believe that would help remind them that bicycles may be there. And then a third optional, and I, you know, people really didn't want to look any further is how can we get more traffic completely off the roads and using the dedicated bike lane? But in order to do that, I'm looking for ideas of how you go west from the terminus of the North Coast Bike Trail and Birmingham and get down to Santa Lejo, essentially.
You'd have to come up through like Cardiff Apartments of something of that nature. There's an access road back there to go up and over, but it's a.
And that's a question whether we can do that. And I'm willing to leave that off the table and just leave it down to the two, but I really think a neighborhood, a CPP for 500 feet around this, this alternate bike route or this bike route, it's not even an alternate bike route, would be prudent on our part given, A, the mix of opinion between the Mobility Traffic Safety Commission and the traffic engineer.
No harm in that. I definitely would like to keep it within this topic though and not add on.
So I'll leave the third one off in my substitute motion. And I think we'll talk about it more as we talk about the goal that Councilmember Schaefer put on there about looking at alternate routes. This is a prime opportunity. Yeah, okay. So with that, I'll offer a substitute motion if I can get a second.
I'll second, I just, as you said, I just want to make sure that at no point do I think that it's appropriate to put charros on Santa Lejo on the S-curve at zero point. So that's just.
You say that one more time.
Zero, I don't think any charros belong on the S-curve.
Okay.
At all. Like, so that's what, I don't want that part to be discussed. Maybe alternate routes to get back up and around. Fact of the matter is, people want to be on Cardiff, they want to be on that bluff and they want to see, like you said. So it's the most convenient. I appreciate, you know, Abe doing this and making it that convenient. I think the people going east around, I think that'd be something to highlight because it's so new. There's so many people that don't know about it. That would be beneficial at the same time, but I don't think it's necessary in all reality is we're trying to, we're trying to curve, you know, we just talked about tourism and some other stuff happening, you know, trying to get that going. We're trying to get people that really aren't from here or don't use it regularly just to, hey, this is the better way to go for you, not the guy that's every weekend out there.
And there's another reason that I should explain why a CPP is so good. My experience on Planning Commission taught me that the best planners are the neighbors. And when you do a CPP for this kind of issue, the traffic on Manchester, the chicken, that'll come out, that'll come out in spades and people will tell you what they like and don't like and they'll look at this and the people who get there will be from Dublin hopefully and from Manchester and well, we may hear something that we, like the first time I heard about the water streaming across, you know, with potential green slime in it, that's an issue that we should address regardless. So that's why I, more than anything, want the CPP and then bring it back to Mobility Traffic Safety Commission and see if we can get consensus between engineer and mobility traffic. I understand we might not, we might be in the exact same situation coming back here, but at least now we'll have a lot of input, I hope a lot of input from neighbors and I'm sure Ellen will bring all her friends.
Well, just the understanding, right? So we have basically two options for the most part because there was a dedicated bike path, but we're talking about chicken on Manchester or chicken on Santa Lejo. There's only, that's really what we're bringing it down to. So if we're going to play chicken, let's figure it out right now. I don't think it really needs a, it could, I mean, but we're not going around about that to get back to a place where we're going to play chicken on Santa Lejo. It just doesn't work.
And then let's figure out what the other potential issues are on Dublin and Manchester. I don't, maybe there are none, but I have a sneaking suspicion the people that live there will know quite a few issues.
You could red stripe one side of the street and that would change the chicken that's happening.
They won't be happy with that either.
Of course they won't. That's what I'm trying to say. So we can go around until we limit everything policy-wise.
Just for the record, I'm not going there.
Yeah.
All right. Call Luke if you, and I think you're just being, as a point, not, you're not.
Correct. Correct. The fact of the matter is, is right now, we're talking about bike safety right now. Obviously, that's what we're, again, you can sit here and say it's for the cars, but I mean, I can look through the crowd, there's people on their phones right now. People are driving distracted more and more. It's not a, there's no, there's no two ways around it. But the fact of the matter is, is we're coming back down to two decisions. There's no other road there, there's no extra access, there's nothing we're going to create. Unless we create a bridge from the Santa Lejo JPA over there across, across the lagoon and they just get circumnavigate it all together, there's really no other option. So we could do it, but summer coming, paint on the road sooner is probably where I think we, I'd prefer that before we get into the busy months of the summer and people all trucking down to the beach for that exact purpose. So we're coming into the season where we need it sooner rather than later. So I don't know how long a CPP is going to take.
Just, it's a noticing requirement. Jill or Abe, would you like to comment?
Yeah, it would take, I don't know, probably three weeks to get a CPP together and then we have to get to MTSC, so that'd be another three or four weeks and then back to city council, another three or four weeks.
And so we're looking at the other side of recess.
Yeah.
August, before we even make a decision on this because we're in recess in July. So sure, if you want to wait another year and wait through another season, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Put a recommended sign.
We'll see, we could learn a lot, but I don't have any other speakers. I've got a substitute motion on the table.
Before you vote, I'd like to clarify what the substitute motion is.
Yeah.
So what I have for sure is to direct staff to conduct a CPP on the staff recommendation, which is the plans for the implementation of a bike route along Santa Lejo Avenue from Chesterfield Drive to Dublin Drive, along Dublin Drive from Santa Lejo Avenue to Manchester Avenue, and along Manchester Avenue from Dublin Drive to the Santa Lejo Nature Center/Santa Lejo Water Reclamation Plant, then return to the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission with the results of the CPP. And then you had also. Commission with the results of the CPP. And then you had also-
And that is, and hopefully to get consensus between the Traffic Safety Commission and the traffic engineer. Right now they're at odds on one issue.
Correct. So they'll, they'll be reviewing that. And then were we leaving the sharos on the S curve or left out?
They're, they're left out on the current plan.
So it's just the one thing. Okay.
Yeah. So, and, and we're looking to see if there are any other issues. So that, motion second, call the question if there's no other discussion.
And that motion does carry unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
And in the minutes, will, will it reflect the motion and the substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to 10B. Let's see. For 10B, this is updates to the City of Encinitas Permit Parking Program and Municipal Code Chapter 14 dot 41 and Introduction of Ordinance 2025 dash 06. And the contact person is again, Traffic Engineer Bandigan.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Ben Verdugo, right?
That's it.
Pronouncing correctly, from Dixon Unlimited here tonight.
Hang on one second while I, this is procedures, so we're under procedures for a public hearing. This is a public hearing. So first we'll have a staff report and then we'll ask the council to disclose any other information they have received that is not included in the staff report. We will then have preliminary questions followed by opening the public hearing. And how many speakers do we have at this time?
Right now we have four, but two with two time donations.
Okay. And then we'll close the public hearing and have our discussion. So with that, staff report.
Great. Good evening, everybody, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ben Verdugo. I'm with Dixon Resources Unlimited. We're a parking consultant and we're, I have been working with the city for the past year regarding updates to the permit parking program, including revisions to the municipal code 14 dash 40. Oh, are we going to display it? Right here. Thank you. So currently there are four RPP zones within the city. We've been working on this, like I said, over the past almost year, year and a half, about getting this to a right place to where residents within all these zones will be happy or at least somewhat satisfied with the recommendations that we move forward. Project timeline, we started this back in early 2024. We had a project kickoff, initial site assessments for all the zones, hosted our first community meeting and then published an online community survey. Summer of 2024, we drafted initial round of recommendations, had a second community meeting, met, meeting with the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission. From there, we made additional revisions to our draft recommendations, proposed municipal code updates, and then we met with Planning Commission, that was in November. And here we are today. Two weeks ago, Abe met and had a presentation to council. There were some additional municipal updates and recommendations through that meeting. And here we are today with another presentation to council. In terms of the proposed strategies and updates to the code, it's really been a culmination of community feedback, results from the survey, best practice of what we're doing in other cities or what a lot of California cities are currently doing, and also not only council input, but commission input as well. Regarding the, the meeting a couple weeks ago, we did capture council recommendations, one of which was, was based in the number of permits by the number of bedrooms per household. That applies also to guest permits, establishing a $20, $25 fee for annual resident permits, coming back to us to evaluate quality of life as a metric for zone establishment, transitioning permits from a physical to automated system, establishing a two week expiration for guest permits, and then a clause where hosting events that allow for more than the approved visitor caps. So notable updates to the municipal code that we incorporated were requirements for designation of zones. So we recommended a minimum zone size requirement of 1,500 feet. Other cities in the past, they'll do just a street segment. Problem with that is if you have a zone that's a street segment, it pushes problems elsewhere. So better idea is create a larger footprint to establish the zone. Also requiring a petition of a majority of 51% or greater of households to initiate the process. And that would trigger a parking occupancy study to determine parking utilization. We recommend, recommended the target of 70% occupancy that would, and that would trigger that to be reviewed by council. Regarding issuance and duration of permits, we've termed not to exceed one year. And like I said, issued according to number of bedrooms. So one bedroom would be one permit, two to three would be two permits, and then four plus bedrooms would have three permits. We also included that certain vehicles are exempt, including service and delivery vehicles from restrictions. Regarding permit issuance, they would be required proof of residence, including driver's license, current vehicle registration, introducing the fee like I mentioned before, also requirement to sign a good neighbor policy. In terms of guest parking permits, issued according to a number of bedrooms similar to, to the resident permits, one to two bedrooms would equal two permits, three plus bedrooms would equal three permits. And then, like I said, residents hosting large gatherings, more than the allotment would require written approval from the city. And then regarding council authority, when adopting a resolution establishing a zone, council can specify and approve the, the appropriate info, including permit cost, RPP area size, and modified duration for resident or guest passes. We also, within the report, mentioned additional strategies. And so one of which, which, then these two sort of go hand in hand, is outsourcing enforcement for RPP program management. We know that Ace Parking currently does sites, does, does managements for enforcement within the core area off the 101. And, and so I think we could leverage that existing contract. It'd be smart. And it wouldn't have to be where you have to have coverage every single night. You know, you could, you could space it out to where you'd save the city money. But the last thing sheriff wants to do is write parking tickets. You know, they're, they're concerned with trying to manage everything they do in Encinitas and Solana Beach and Ranch of Santa Fe, Encinitas. And so I think that's the last thing they want to do. And there's a lot of cities right now are, are, are outsourcing their enforcement to appropriate providers. And then the big one here too is implement an automated permit management system where the license plate is actually the permit instead of a hang tag. And so the good thing about that is if you were able to outsource enforcement, they would have LPR readers, license plate recognition, and they'd be, they'd be able to verify whether a person has, has paid for a permit or not. So it really is more of an efficient process. I imagine for staff here to try to fulfill permits on an annual basis, it might be a, a bit of a headache trying to fulfill that. And they're already doing so many other things and so many other responsibilities with the city. And so we just feel this is, this is a good synergy that the, the city could move forward with. So like I said, that's a brief presentation. I know that we probably have plenty of questions from Zone D. And so we're ready to take those on.
Okay, with that, I'll ask council to disclose, starting with Councilmember San Antonio.
I spoke with Bonnie and, I spoke with them. That's pretty much what I've got.
Yeah, on March 20th, I met with two of the residents off of Viamolina and explained in depth their issues.
I met with two residents of Viamolina here at City Hall. We discussed the process, permitting their concerns and, yeah.
Okay. And I talked to Sandra Anderson a couple times on the phone and she asked about sending information. I asked that she send it to all of us. So we all are working off the same information. We really didn't exchange any other information other than what she emailed to all of us. So with that, are there any preliminary questions for the staff or for Dixon? Councilmember O'Hara?
Just a question of clarification. I haven't read through the report. It says 70% occupancy rate to trigger a permit. It, I wasn't, it wasn't clear if that was a requirement or if residents could petition. I believe we were looking at residents' council petition to get this.
Correct. So the, the two different parts of this, right? So it would require 51% petition rate for residents on, in a particular zone. Once that threshold is met, that would trigger an occupancy study. If that occupancy study reaches 70%, meaning 70% of the vehicles are parked in that particular zone, then that could move forward with a recommendation, recommendation to actually establish a zone. And that would be heard by council.
Where, so where does the 70% come from?
So industry standard within California is anywhere between 70 and 80%. And so the reason you want to have a higher number is because we really look at parking impacts. And we've heard about quality of life impacts and we know that's really important. But what's really, we really depend on data and that really should drive any RPP program. And so the higher the occupancy is for vehicles actually parked on the street, that means it's harder for someone that lives, lives at their house and maybe not, might not have enough, you know, off-street vehicle parking. And that's an issue. So we recommend up to 80%. We actually came down to 70% for this instance.
Okay. And my other question was, you, there was a lengthy discussion about outsourcing enforcement of it. In this process, do we speak with a city like Del Mar?
You can. I-
I'm just asking if we did, you or staff.
Oh, I, I have not.
No, Councilmember, we, we haven't started any conversation with City of Del Mar. However, we did, our IT department has contacted a few software vendors and application vendors who have provided us some quotes with regards to using LPRs or, or other softwares and apps.
Super. Thank you. Two mind you questions. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Couple of questions. And I've got, you talked about this in the report, the City of Cerritos requires residents use all the parking available on their property prior, prior to applying for on-street permit. Is that legal? Does it work? How, how do they, how do they craft that law?
Yeah, well, I think that's up to city attorney interpretation. Maybe they have somewhat progressive city attorney or liberal city attorney when it comes to that. I wouldn't recommend that because you're telling people how they should be parking their cars on their, in their own private property. So that would be a tough one for us.
So, so you mentioned it, but you, you don't, you don't endorse it. So okay, that, yeah, I was, I was wondering if it was working at all. And other cities, and I love the experience you bring, the, the report, your report in particular, read beautifully with just all, you can see the depth of experience with guest permits. Typically, do they all expire? We, right now ours don't, but they probably should. I think you recommended 14 days. What's typical? What's the range you see out there of Southern California?
So that's, you know, so you could do a two to three permits that have an expiration of, you know, of a 14 days to a month. There's some cities that have 100 single-use permits and they can dole that out the, any way they want. So if I'm a homeowner and I have my mom visiting for three weeks, okay, so that's 21 days out of the 100-day allotment is already taken up. So I think that's another good way to do it. And a lot of cities do it that way. But what you're proposing here in the city, I think that works, works as well, just as well too.
14 days for up to the maximum number per bedrooms?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any preclusion against getting sequential? In other words, if I got the first 14 days, but mom's in town for a month, can I go in and get a second 14 days that it does not overlap? So I don't exceed my maximum.
Yeah, that, and that could be set up if they do choose to go on a virtual permit system. That can be set up by the provider and that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Let's see if I had, and this might be a question more for our staff. Today we, we will, the sheriff will do the sighting. Do we ever tow anything? Do we tow people that violate the, the parking permit?
Not, not as far as I know. We don't tow anybody, even our 72-hour parking. I think it's just citation. I don't think there is any towing.
Great. I don't see anybody else for, so public comments, I think you said we had four?
Yes.
Okay.
Two have two time donations each.
Okay. So I'll open the public hearing and we'll hear from the public.
Okay. Our speakers are Peter Tobias, Molly Hintlian, and then we have Sandra Anderson with time donation from Dennis Caden and Karen Caden, who are present, and then Bonnie Bobzian with time donation from Scott Campbell and Ellen Burr, who are also present.
Good evening. My name is Peter Tobias. I live on Arden Drive, just a few blocks up, up, up D Street. So I've read the draft parking action plan, the proposed ordinance, and the Associated Attorney General's opinion, which is that you have to treat everybody equally, every resident equally. And while the proposed ordinance broadly meets my concerns, especially that all residents be treated equally, I do have two suggestions. And interestingly, it's the issue of the City of Cerritos that just came up. I do believe that Encinitas should follow the City of Cerritos lead in requiring that residents use all the parking on their property prior to applying for an on-street permit. It's really an issue of equity. It may be simpler to ignore how much parking I have because I live in a single-family house. But somebody, so it gives me one or two additional parking opportunities that somebody in a multi-story residential building doesn't have. So either I'm equal to them because we're both residents, or they are really at a disadvantage and therefore, and therefore, we are not being treated equally if we don't ask people like me, and probably all of us, to use the parking that we already have before applying for a permit. So I don't know anything about the, about the, I've read the Attorney General's comments about treating people equally, independently of their, what their housing is. But apparently Cerritos has been able to pull this off. And I think it would be advantageous because in essence, it frees up more parking. That's the, that's the benefit to it, to the city. My second point concerns paragraph F in Section 7 of the proposed ordinance about the one-day guest parking permits. I presume this is to cover things like birthdays, weddings, parties, Halloween, whatever. And hopefully, the resident hosting the party will not have to enumerate the vehicle licenses and driver's licenses when applying for these permits. It seems to me we would simply issue the host, the number of permits he wants, and then the name and driver's license could be put on that permit, could be hung in the car, and that would be it. The date would signify that it was valid for that date, and after that, it goes away.
Well, that's pretty much the end of my conference.
Thank you.
So there we go. Thank you.
We'll, we'll ask that question.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Molly Hintlian, District 2. I believe we need a citywide parking permit program. So I commend all the work that the people on Vicentebria have been doing. Next slide. Data. National Association of Apartments in 2016, that's the latest I could find, it's 1.6 cars per unit. 2025 average cars per household, according to Money Geek, is 1.83. I live in a two-bedroom apart, two-bedroom home community. And on average, many of us have three cars. In fact, I would say 20% of the people on my street own three vehicles. Next slide. The Triton. I want to highlight the new developments that we're going to be having. So again, I've witnessed what Vicentebria has gone through. Parking's not included with the Triton. Next slide. It's considered a personalized add-on. And for an uncovered spot, it's $100 a month, not a year. For an electric vehicle, it's 450. And for garage parking, it ranges from 250 to 350. That's ransom. And I'm very concerned with our new developments. And I know some people who have homes near the Triton and they are seeing the overflow. And that complex is only 60% occupied. Next slide. So we know that Moonlight is 202, Sunshine is 140 units, and their provided parking spots are slightly at about 1.4 per unit. Next slide. So cumulatively, when Quail Meadows gets approved, and they only have 749 parking spots, we're going to have a deficit of some 260 autos in a 500-foot radius. That's concerning. Next slide. I just want to highlight our growth management policies. And this is an opportunity for us to get ahead of a problem we're going to have once these developments finish. us to get ahead of a problem we're going to have once these developments finish. Next slide. And again, policy 2.3, how we can manage it to maintain a level of service and quality of life. Next slide. So in light of the work that's being done for Via Cantabria, the city needs a citywide parking program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me get my white paper here. So I just want to start, before I even start, just so you guys know, all the stuff that Bonnie and I are going to be talking about is, we looked at Exhibit A, which is the code, the 14.41. Yes, there's the Dixon report, and we've read it, and it has good stuff in it, but all the comments we're making are pretty much directly related to this document, because this is what we dove into, okay? So, hello, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Sandra Anderson, and I live in Permit Parking Zone D. We recently read the Municipal Code 14.41 and were deeply disappointed. The reasons are as follows. We see multiple admissions of key components that are present in other cities' codes. Recommendations made by Dixon, the consultant that was hired, have not been included. Provisions included are not in the best interest of Encinitas citizens, and approved actions at the April 9 City Council meeting have been omitted or incorrectly stated. We have knowledge of the weaknesses from having gone through a two-year process to get approved for permit parking. We have lived with permit parking since April 2023 and learned what works and what does not. We have reviewed in detail the parking permit programs of over 20 California cities, as well as evaluating the Dixon report. The permit programs of other cities, as well as the depth of experience of Dixon, provide a wealth of information that would greatly improve our permit parking code. However, these sources were not taken full advantage of in the revision coming before the City Council tonight. From this basis of knowledge and experience, we are, once again, this is my eighth time I've been at meetings talking about these same issues, eight times, we're going to identify the weaknesses and omissions and propose solutions. The following presentation contains our objectives to the code revision and proposed solutions. Okay. The first thing is, in the definition section, three key terms were omitted. The first one, residential permit parking zone. The revision uses and defines the vague term residential parking. The code is really about residential permit parking, the term used by the consultant in their report. The code needs to be clear on what a residential permit parking zone means. This was an issue that we debated for hours with city staff, and it was used to deny us permit parking. A definition used by LA means a residential area with streets and boundaries designated by a city council resolution wherein vehicles displaying a valid permit shall be exempt from parking restrictions established pursuant to this code. The next key term that was left out is resident. The definition of the term resident is missing from the revision, and it is key. The consultant's report includes a definition of resident, which is, a resident is a person owning, leasing, or residing in a dwelling unit in a residential permit parking zone. This definition is consistent with many other cities' definitions. During our two-year battle for permit parking, the definition of resident was controversial. The consultant definition is precise and necessary for the proper administration of permit parking zones. Quality of life was another point of controversy in our two-year pursuit of a permit parking zone. The staff defined quality of life merely as parking capacity despite the precedents set by three earlier city resolutions, number 98-74, Resolution 2016-19, and Resolution Number 2019-11, which established permit parking zones for A, B, and C. In these resolutions, quality of life reads as follows. A permit parking program would enhance or protect the quality of life in the area threatened by noise, traffic hazards, environmental pollution, or devaluation of real property resulting from long-term non-residence parking, or whereas no alternative solution is feasible or practical. The current code revision does use the term quality of life in the Purpose Section and Section B of 14.41.040. The Purpose Section refers to threats of health, safety, and welfare of all residents of Encinitas. This definition is too vague and leaves open to individual interpretation what quality of life means. The Dixon Report on pages 9 and 13 provide more detailed descriptions of what quality of life means. Other cities' permit programs define quality of life in a more robust manner. For example, Huntington Beach says, "The intent is to restrict the ability of outside vehicles from parking on the streets and impacting the parking availability to residents, or/or causing other social impacts, for example, crime, litter, disturbances, et cetera, while allowing residents and their guests to use the parking." Another example is Santa Ana. "The purpose of permit parking is to enhance the quality of life in the residential neighborhoods by reducing noise, parking congestion, traffic hazards, and illegal activities. The neighborhoods in Zone B, C, and D suffered from all these social issues and more." Okay. Parking occupancy threshold needs to be lower than 70%. The new code suggests 70% parking occupancy threshold. Even before our neighborhood had 70% of parking threshold, we were experiencing significant social issues. The Sacramento Permit Parking Policy uses a threshold of parking occupancy of greater than 50%, which is what we would recommend the City of Encinitas adopt. Let's see, next, since I think I can get through. Whoops, went too far. Parking permit exemptions. The types of vehicles entitled to exemption from permit zone regulations are listed in the revised code and are consistent with other cities. However, other cities add the provision exempt vehicles must park within the same block they are servicing. So otherwise, it would allow vehicles to abuse this exemption. So we are recommending that the words "same block" be added to the parking permit exemption. And one more thing, since I have a minute, and I skipped it, back to the threshold that needs to be lower than 70%. The other thing I wanted to say is, the Engineering Department has stated that evaluating quality of life or social issues is not in the scope of their training. With this consideration in mind, the Traffic Engineering can do its investigative work on parking occupancy. Then, following the studies, the City Council can deliberate the number and impact of social issues in the affected areas. Thanks.
My name is Bonnie Bobzine, and I also reside in Permit Parking Zone D, and I'll continue on with what we found missing or in disagreement with this initial revision of the code. Point number four, next slide. Apartment complexes are being included in a permit zone. The question is, how do we do this? This relates to Attorney General Opinion 14-304 and our current Municipal Code 14.41.040. Two weeks ago, Scott Campbell discussed his opinion in how permit parking zone boundaries cannot discriminate against multi-dwelling unit complexes that are adjacent to single-family homes. He focused on the meaning of the word adjacent. As Scott pointed out, our neighborhood, now part of Zone D, was not adjacent to the resort. The public street, Via Molina, fully separates the resort from our neighborhood streets, Via Palacio, Via Valena, Via Saracen, and Via Tavira. We never sought to include Via Molina into the permit zone. That street contains 90 additional parking spaces for resort tenants in addition to their private lots and streets. Our neighbors don't use Via Molina. Some cities' permit programs offer precise definitions and regulations that clarify which dwellings should be included in a permit zone or not. LA and Huntington Beach are examples. These define qualifying residents as the following. A resident is eligible for a preferential parking permit whose resident has frontage or side frontage on a block posted with preferential parking restrictions. Other cities, such as Whittier, only include residences with frontage on a block to be included in a permit parking zone. These definitions are clear and critical. If a dwelling needs frontage on the street within the permit zone, the resort would not have qualified. The resort frontage is on Via Terrassa and Via Morella. If a dwelling unit qualifies by having either frontage or side frontage on the block within the permit zone, then the resort would qualify because it has side frontage on Via Molina. These two terms also help clarify what to do with dwelling units at the corner of a proposed zone. 14.41.040 details the necessary requirements for an apartment complex to be included in a zone. The recommended steps are consistent with other cities' programs, but there are omissions of some features. The petitioning process for multi-unit dwellings is still unclear. As with other cities, the owners, managers, and residents participate in the petition process. Residents get one vote per unit. In the case of property owned by co-owners, the signature of any one co-owner on the petition is sufficient. In the case of property owned by a partnership, the signature of any general partner on the petition is sufficient. Ownership is determined by reference to the latest available tax assessment rule or acquisition of title, as may be provided by the owner. The signature of one property manager is also sufficient. We did the required petition of dwelling units on our neighborhood. The three apartment complexes included Zone D did none. No letter from the resort management requested permit parking. The three apartment complexes were granted inclusion in Permit Zone D after a few emails and city council appearances by tenants. The requirement should be the same for all, and not favoring any entity out of fear of lawsuit by wealthy equity corporations. It should be clearly stated that the apartment complex will not be included in the zone if not compliant with these requirements. The next slide, please. The fee structure can cause migration of apartment tenant vehicles to park on public streets, as just recently mentioned by a previous speaker. When apartment fees for onsite parking are higher than fees for the permit zone, this incentivizes apartment tenants to park their vehicles on public streets. A residential property should not be eligible for participation in the permit parking program if the onsite parking costs more than the cost of permit parking on public streets. An escalating fee structure is also needed to encourage use of onsite parking, and Dixon discusses this matter and their recommendations. Next slide. Permit issuance, 14.41.060. Beam 1 omits some of the means to establish proof of residence to qualify for a permit. Specific samples, examples should be given, such as utility bills, insurance documentation, voter registration, or rental agreement. Next slide, please. Guest pass expiration dates are wrong. The revision lists a one-month expiration date. The City Council member on the April 9 meeting mentioned that a one-month expiration date is inappropriate. Our current problem is that people are using serial one-month guest passes if they don't qualify for a resident pass. Shorter expiration dates for guest passes is essential to prevent abuse of the permit parking system. The City Council recommendation was for a two-week guest pass. This should be corrected in the future provision. Next slide, please. Residential Parking Permit Policy, 14.41.100. What is the power of city staff versus city council versus commissions? The revision omits what powers reside exclusively with the city council and what the city staff can do without city council approval. The establishment of a permit parking zone and the criteria for issuance, denial, revocation, duration, number of permits per household, residential parking permit fees should all belong exclusively to the authority of the city council. The administration actions would belong to the city staff. The pathway to establish a permit parking zone is not clearly stated. After the Traffic Engineering Department has completed its studies and the necessary neighbor petitions completed, the matter passes first to the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, then Planning Commission, and then on to the City Council for approval. Next slide, please. What is the status of the four existing permit zones? On page 13 of the Dixon draft, it mentions that the four existing zones are grandfathered in. This was approved by the previous city council. This statement is omitted from the city staff's report in code revision. Next slide, please. Our hope and expectations are that the city council would take our comments seriously and require a further revision of the Code 14.41. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes speakers.
That concludes, okay. So I will close the public hearing, and we'll go into council discussion. Anybody want to start? Councilmember O'Hara.
I think some of our speakers covered a lot of really good questions in here. Fantastic presentation by our community. Thank you. And I'll say Dixon has done a really good job in this study, and staff has been very diligent in this, and I think what we're really trying to do is not look to blame any fault, put any fault on anybody here. We're actually looking to just bring in, tie loose ends and bring a project together. So I love it. I do, I do want to follow up with the residents. I did also find issue with the term of residential parking and the loose definition of resident. I think we can define that better. And I would definitely would like to dive into a more succinct, a more clear definition. We did talk about quality of life document, and I think we discussed, we discussed putting that forward as a tool, agreed upon circumstances, and we were looking into talking about making the quality of life document into sort of a social contract that the permit holder signs as a, I will follow this code, or I will forfeit my permit. And I think we even looked at, and Abra-Jo, if you can confirm on this, we looked at several possibilities in drafts to put that together, and I don't think we are, we're not, we haven't actually come to the point of writing up a draft on that yet, have we?
Not yet. We're still pulling together information for a good neighbor policy.
Yeah, I think a good neighbor policy is big, and it's something we recognize, holds that accountability to the neighbors, and also helps, it helps our enforcement of the policy. You know, it puts us in a position where the behavior is clear when whatever enforcement shows up, they can, they can actually dive into what the behavior is that needs to be addressed and why the, why they're actually out there beyond just you don't have a permit in the window, which I think is ultimately, if we're talking about quality of life, which I hear often in this conversation, a really important part of this, right? That's what we're trying to come back to, is how do we support a high quality of life? I also support bringing this closer to 50%, and I thought, I thought Molly's, Molly's presentation actually brought out what I, why I got to that. I think we're dealing with a state mandate. I think we're dealing with a state mandate that requires not enough housing, not enough parking, and so we don't need to know where absent parking before we get that seventy percent, fifty percent would, is going to happen very easily. It's almost, it's almost built into the state mandate. I did have a hard time with the guest pass concept, and I do revert back to, I think a guest pass should be two weeks. I'd like to see us tie in some language that limits guest passes to, so that we can't string them together. I don't see that in, in what I read here. I would say, I would add to this, and staff has alluded to it, we are looking at digital, digital permitting processes at City Hall, and this will allow us to, just like you would anywhere else, parking on any street in a large city, pay for your guest pass by day, in which case I would look into some sort of a, how many guest passes can be strung along, and then how many do they get a year, I think is a great idea. I think we can combine those two digitally, and it's very simple every day. And if you're, if mom stays twenty-one days, that uses up twenty-one, and at twenty-one, mom's got to park in the driveway, and somebody else has got to figure it out. It helps us avoid the couch surfing concept and the overuse of the street. It provides them the opportunity to host that party and use ten of those guest passes that day. It also becomes much easier for our sheriffs or our, or our enforcement, parking enforcement, to, to come by and just check the license plate, if it's digital, and come into a point where we can just know on the spot whether this is the right, right car or not, and obviously if it is enforcement and is not, the, again, it backs up to the code of conduct that we, now we can have the sheriff brought in at that point, too, if we need to. So I definitely want to move towards moving that, and I don't know what that means, and I guess what I'm, what I'm, what you're hearing from me and the kind of my, the reluctance in my voice here is, you know, we want to look at this digital aspect in the app or whatever it is to create these parking passes, and how is that going to, how, how much are we creating policy today that's going to have to be reinvented when we move to a digital solution? And I guess that would be, maybe that's a question of how fast does all of this move?
So realistically, the city can transition to a virtual permit system in a matter of months, three to four months tops. And so there's probably four to five providers throughout the state of California, many of which are in Southern California, and so this is what they do. And so a lot of times they combine not only the permit management, but citation management under one module, and that makes it really seamless for cities to use. But yeah, you can transition fully within, you know, three to four months.
And that would likely involve us changing, being able to change some policy, right? Because I think a day, a day-by-day policy is going to be almost impossible to, to enforce. It's going to put a huge strain on our staff and the amount of time it puts into it. However, once we go to digital, day-by-day is very simple.
Very simple, correct.
Okay. I'm going to yield the floor for a moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. I concur with a hundred percent with the citizens had to say and with what Councilmember O'Hara had to say. The fact of the matter is, right now, one in the four zones currently are having the biggest issue, and the fact of the matter is, the good neighbor policy, the quality of life, you have more than enough parking in this current apartment complex that's just not being used properly and not being enforced properly by the apartment complex. But more to the point where Molly was saying, where I am a little bit more concerned about where the road ahead with, currently, we have, we have one complex currently that's not even completely finished, and it's overflowing into neighborhoods such as Ince's Ranch and Sedonia, and we're going to need to be able to have a more comprehensive ordinance. I know we were talking about maybe not adjusting the ordinance, but we have to make sure that we, we're not, we're not quick to make a decision tonight that doesn't incorporate what the next three, four, or five years looks like with all of the developments coming. So I'll leave it there, but that's just where I'm first sitting with all of the great stuff said.
Okay, I'll hop in here. Boy, yeah, I agree with, with all, many of, if not all of those observations. I have a whole list of red lines I went through line by line, but I'll hit the high stuff first. I agree with the fifty percent, you know, maybe sixty, but fifty percent, I think we're going to hit that threshold. I agree that this is where we're headed to. I would have a question about the, can we delay the effectiveness of this code so that it is commensurate with getting an automated capability in place? Or do I delay adopting it until I go down the path, and I, chicken and egg problem I'm having here. What, what do you recommend?
Well, I think this is your policy, and how you operationalize it, that's a different story. So I think you could adopt this policy whether you're manually or, you know, with minor tweaks, we could change it, but we would need to purchase software, so that would be a budget item. So it's about a hundred thousand dollars for the software that you need, and then we'd have to pay for enforcement as well.
Now, as policy, this is really ordinance, right? So if we adopt it, this is the law of the land.
This is the law.
That's a little stronger than a policy. I can't go, I'm not going to do that ordinance.
Agreed, but, but the, the structure is here. How you determine whether to set up a zone or not, who's a resident, who's a guest, how long the guest passes last, how long resident passes last, all of that is in here. And then when you adopt an ordinance or a resolution, or the ordinance is specific to a new permit parking zone, then you can add in your extra details as far as how much is a guest pass and.
Okay, so then one of the things I would look for is, I think we should have an explicit section in the ordinance about grandfathered, and we could stay, say that we'll stay with the current manual system with the grandfathered zones, and then we should tailor this code, the rest of the code, to the one-day type guest pass. I support the one-day guest pass, automated, you know, put in language that would also preclude some maximum number per year and some maximum number consecutively, you know, it could be thirty-one, I don't know, just so that we don't end up with guest pass, you know, every day going on. But it's as though I only want to write this code once, and I want to write it for the automated version, and I think, I think I'm hearing that elsewhere. But by the same token, I want to maintain our current grandfathered-in clause in the meantime. So that may be a way by putting another section that talks about the zones A, B, C, D, and, and tells that those, those approaches will stay in place until the time at which we transition to an effective date of the automation, in which case they will come under, and we can describe how they would come under the new automated for guest passes and whatnot.
Mayor, excuse me if I make, clarify a point. We did hear council's direction last week, obviously. We did anticipate this situation where different zones might have different needs based on the agenda we just heard from resident. Nineteen sixty-seven has a hundred dollar per month fee for, for non-roofed open space, parking spaces. So we did intentionally omit a few pieces of the recommendation and left it for individual resolutions for each zone. For example, the twenty-five dollar that we spoke about last week, our assumption was it for specifically Zone D, or the two weeks for the guest pass as it was brought by resident. Right now, the ordinance says less than a month. But if we go for a zone, later on, we want to make one zone a maximum seven days, another zone maximum two weeks, another zone one day, those individual permit parking zones would allow council to adopt a zone by setting a specific fees for that zone, durations of guest passes for that zone. So the only thing that's in the municipal code that we are, I guess, agree for every zone is the one-year duration of resident passes, that sort of thing, or the area of the zone. So we, we do have that flexibility even by adopting this code right now.
Okay, one of the things that.
Chris Tarkin, if that's, so there's a legal question in there. That's why I'm, I'm pointing.
I tell you what, come, let me get through my litany. So, so in regards to what you just went through, I, one of the things, where I'm going to go is, I'm going to ask you to come back with a lot of these changes incorporated, and, and I think there's enough, I got to enough red lines that, that I want to lay them out there so you have them on record. And in particular, the, what we were just talking about, coming back with the resolution also, I'd like to see the resolution for each of A, B, C, D, and future going forward, that we can then change that resolution in the future if we want to change any schedule. I like that construct, but I want a sample resolution, not even a sample, I want a resolution we adopt the night we adopt the ordinance, so that we know exactly by resolution what A, B, C, D are today and whether we changed them, and so that we know what the future E might be or what we are visioning. And I want to make it, look at the grandfathered, have a specific code in there for grandfathered, so that we, we operate in our current mode manually today until we get to an automation, and I think the council would agree to move forward on, on the hundred thousand dollars to get this thing automated, because it's going to kill your, you know, we're going to spend more in your labor and your department's labor than we will on the hundred thousand. So with that, let me continue with some of the other stuff that I would like to see in, in this. We need to investigate Cerritos and see if that is plausible. But I would actually, the, the public comment was actually the opposite side from where I was going. I want to make sure that places like the resort, we have evidence, they're not fully using their parking. And so can we, and the answer may come back through the city attorney, no, we can't do that based on the attorney general, but I think we, we need that determination in front of us to make this decision. I already talked about the fifty percent. Let's talk definitions. I'd like, there's a whole list of definitions. I thought, that was one of the things I really liked in the Dixon report. I thought you, you nailed the definitions. I would add quality of life. I would add guest parking permit, defining it. I would add guest, or sorry, residential parking permit. And sometimes in the report, it's residential permit parking, and sometimes it's residential parking permit. I would consistently use residential parking permit. I would define residential parking permit area. I think it's used more predominantly than zone. Quality of life. Traffic engineer. Parking program manager, because I think in the Dixon, you were very clear about who had authority to do what, and then resident. And in each one of these cases, much like a legal contract, I would capitalize them and use them as proper, proper terms. And then each time you use it throughout the document, capitalize them. And that will make it very clear in the ordinance, and I'm, having been a planning commissioner, there's so many times where I'm trying to interpret the code, that capitalization draws you right back to the definition, it's very clear. In, in section oh-three-oh, you call it an exemption. I would call it a limitation, because you use the word exempted later, and I think that confuses exemptions. I'm trying to hit as many of these as I can, so that I see, I have a lot of red on my red lines, and I'm happy to share that with you after the meeting, but I want to make sure it's out on the public. I think we need to, in section fourteen dot forty-one dot oh-four-oh, section, subsection A two, I think we need to be more succinct in defining, we define property managers and owners. We need to talk about if it's owned by a single owners, does a renter get a one vote per unit? So I think we need to have, define who gets a vote per unit, and we also have to define if one renter votes yes and one renter votes no, do we just take the yes? That needs to be accounted for in here, because those are real-world situations that probably have come up before, and I'm going to guess Dixon's seen them. So the notification method in section B immediately following that should include registered owners and accuments via U.S. mail. In other words, say exactly how we're going to do it, because this is our ordinance, it's legally binding. And then I think the whole comment, I'll step up to a level. We need to be very clear, what is the MTSC, MTSC responsibility? What is city council's responsibility and authority? And what is traffic engineer and/or, and when you say designee, I'd prefer you have, like, park program, parking program manager or permit parking program manager as the, a designee that you can officially designate, rather than any old designee. And then the maximum number, I think we've, I'm going to give you some additional language there, like for instance, in, where it says one bedroom qualifies for one permit, I would put language much more explicit. One bedroom shall qualify for a maximum of one permit. Make it very clear that they can't get more, same with the rest. There should be an additional section in there for how we go about revoking or terminating permits and for what reasons. And I think that's completely, it's talked, referred to in here, but there needs to be explicit procedures going through with MTSC and up to the council if necessary. And also, I didn't see it, but this was in the Dixon report, the permit should be tied one permit per valid driver's license. I think it's implied in the automated, but I want it explicitly in the ordinance. Then we talk about the information required. I think it was Bonnie or Sandra covered this, give the examples. But also, you say such other information as required by the traffic engineer or designee, and that's just entirely too vague for an ordinance. I, you know, I, I can't leave that in there carte blanche. You need to say what you need, and then we'll review it and see, see, agree or not agree. But be, please be explicit, and, let's see, where else was I? I'm getting there. I'm really getting there. Language, I concur with the language to preclude serial guest passes, and that would also include a maximum for guest passes, a maximum per day, a maximum per year, and a maximum continuous. Getting there, getting there. There are some other minor things I'll, I can talk offline. And, and we talk about, like, we weren't clear when we would allow up to three times per calendar year, a dwelling unit to get up to ten one-day guest permits. Does it require a driver's license and a license plate number? It probably would have to include a license plate number at a minimum. I, I would be okay in that case not requiring a driver's license, but I think that needs to be in here. We talk about in section fourteen forty-one oh-eight-oh, a list of guest parking permits or, and I would change the wording to resident parking permit, and I would strike the or any other parking permit. Again, get explicit. I talked about the designating, the clarifying who's responsible, and then I would define how these get approved, what process they go through from application to mobility to city council, right? And that, that's my litany, and it's a lot to change, and, you know, obviously, we don't have time to go through it tonight, so that's why I would make a motion to bring it back after listening to the tape, because you'll probably have to listen to the tape and gathering any minor edits we might have. Now you can go, Jim. Sorry about that. I want to get that out in one roll.
[inaudible]
Oh, sorry, okay. San Antonio, I'm sorry. I missed you, Marco.
I'll keep mine quick. Well, we've got three really knowledgeable groups here. We have, you know, Dixon, who lives this stuff, our engineers who are, can parse this information, they've clearly got years of experience doing this, and then we have, you know, Sandra and, and Bonnie who, who live this, you know, they, they're immersed in this because they live it every day. Just like the thirty-thousand-foot view, for me, I, to what Molly has, has said and what she presented, it is a huge deal. I think this is, these extra, like even the, with those three on Quail Meadows, those three, three new buildings over there, apartment complexes or condos are going to be, two-hundred-and-sixty-three parking spots are going to be without parking spot, or without parking. This, I, I mean, clearly Bruce is really great at the minutia of getting into it and, and getting right in it, and he knows every little thing, but I just, I would echo that we would definitely want to be airtight, and for lack of a better term, tough with this parking code, so that it is, to what Abe said, we can change it if we need to, or like the, adjust it, right, for the different zones, but it should be really tough. I, that's what I feel. I feel it needs to be tough so that it can be enforced. There should be no way that we can, or people can go, oh, it reads differently. It should, we don't, I, we don't want to write this again, but we do it now, we do it right, and we, so that when, as these buildings start to come out, get do it right, and we, so that when, as these buildings start to come out, get rolled out. I know we've got a few down the pipeline as well. It's, this is going to be a problem, uh, for Encinitas, and I, I feel like we're on the right track. And like I said, we've got three, three great, very knowledgeable groups in here. And I know that our council's going to do the right thing. I know everybody here, it's just those like little terms that everybody's kind of looking for, so I know we can do it. I yield.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay. So, um, just for the record, the, the hundred thousand dollars is going to pay for itself over time and then some, so I'm zero, very little concerned about that. Under revocation of a, uh, of a pass, I think we need to dive into the language and reasons for revocation, um, a little bit more thoroughly than we have. I'd like, I'd like to see, uh, revocation for multiple lapses for, um, for the behavioral misconduct. Um, and I'd like to have revocation and forfeiture put in there in some, in some regards so that we can couple the two together. Um, you know, if you show up and your pass is gone and you've, uh, and you're breaking the code of conduct law, whatever, whatever contract, uh, you know, whatever that stack up is, at some point it's, sorry, you don't have a permit the rest of the year, or whatever, you're suspended for X amount of time. Um, I'd like to see that a little more clearly defined in here. I, I don't quite see that enough. I don't believe in attaching it to a license, um, because I think, um, four people get in a car, four people have licenses, and maybe four guest passes.
You mean driver's license?
Driver's licenses, or you can actually have a car without a license, right? So I think, I think, um, some form of registration or license plate, um, by itself, there's one car, that's what we're looking to park. If we go by licenses, um, it may, um, it may keep some people from being able to participate who, who should be able to participate. So, um, I do want to dive back to something that, that staff has worked really hard to do, I think is, is, is great. And I, I think this is a really, um, really great acknowledgement of what our residents are asking, is this idea of, um, being flexible to establish the right permit for the different parts of town. We always talk about, there's, you know, five different parts of town and they've got all these different flavors to them. A lot of the situations require passes for different reasons. Um, and one of the things we looked at, um, is the, the fees. And I know we talked about keeping the definition open on that so that we could put ourselves in a position to make the, to make the fees part of the process to keep what's happening on Via Molina at the resort from happening elsewhere. Um, but now we see Triton at a hundred dollars. I guess my, my question, we'll come back to you, but my question is really to the attorney. Can we do something like that? Because that doesn't, that doesn't seem like we're going to get the nod as that being fair. Like, hey, this neighborhood gets charged $25, this neighborhood gets charged 100, this neighborhood gets charged $5. Like, I, I, I'm not initially opposed to the idea because I understand what we're trying to do. I just see us getting a lot of trouble doing that, and I want to know if you think that's the case.
Thank you, councilmember O'Hara. The issue with permit fees is, is our permit fees have to be based on cost recovery, based on some form of cost study, cost analysis that shows the city is recouping its expenses, but it doesn't become so onerous, it becomes a tax. That's sort of the fundamental rule of installing permit fees. So I'm unclear, I'm not saying it can't be done, but I'm unclear what the justification would be for varying different fees between, uh, permit parking zones.
And so is that something we can look into working with staff to figure out if that is a metric we can use, or if that's something we should solely establish based on what you just said as the lone, uh, the lone deciding variable, um, or not, on the, on the fees?
Staff can certainly look into it, um, but the principle is that, you know, permit fees have to be cost recovery.
Can we, uh, thank you, I appreciate that. Back to staff. It seems like it's the flexibility in this, and, and this is a question, lies in the geography of it. Does that seem fair to say? And, and how we create, um, the definition of, of what creates a neighborhood, what creates the word adjacent, which has been put around out here, um, and, and how we define, um, main arteries, things like that, that would decisively split, um, where you would choose to naturally park? Is there, is there a way to do geography as our deciding parameter?
One thing we can think about adding to the ordinance is some sort of a description of adjacency. I mean, I'll work with Tarquin obviously on this, maybe using a certain classification of road, any arterial, major road or above classification per the mobility element would separate the neighborhood, some sort of a roadway classification as a definition of separating dwelling units for this purpose.
I'd like to do that. I'm suggesting we do that in an attempt to make the permit process flexible to accommodate the various different neighborhoods. Again, getting back to these five areas of Encinitas and, uh, the different flavors of them, obviously, um, I could point out in this room, people who live in different streets that are looking for parking permits for different reasons. Um, and I would want to, I would want to, if this is an avenue for us to explore, the geography component of it, um, to establish those different needs of the permit, I think that's something we should look into, finding flexibility there, if, if that makes sense. That's it.
That it? Oh, you yield?
That was my point.
I didn't know if you were done. I didn't want to cut you off.
No, I'm good.
So, uh, so I, I think, uh, the Dixon report talked about this. You talked about, that's where the 1,500-foot concept terminating at a typically a block end, rounding, I think is how you said it, to a block end. I assume that's 1,500 feet roughly, and you said roughly in two dimensions, but you also think in your definition, based on your experience, said something about taking into account terrain. Obviously, if one neighborhood's here and then, and it's a, you know, goat trail up to the next neighborhood, it's a very logical place. So, so I think it's a, it's, it's, the flexibility should be in the ordinance and it just trying to define. And I, I really appreciated your comment earlier and in the report about, uh, too small does not work because you just push people right to the edge of the immediate space. So it's got to be large enough. I, I, and the only thing I, I didn't mention earlier was about the frontage and side frontage. That might be a concept, but I would be looking for flexibility and ultimately it's going to take the council making a decision about what the boundary of future, uh, neighborhoods will be and, and I, you know, I've talked about this. My daughter lives in Santa Monica. They've got this in spades all across Santa Monica. If the state continues down the path, we will be in the same place very soon. So we need to get this ordinance, this system in place because we will see many other applications. I think we all agree with that. So I, I did make a motion. I don't think I had a second on that.
What was the motion again?
The, uh, oh, okay, ready?
I was going to say, I can repeat.
It's basically to, but...
I had to refer back to staff, um, to refer the draft ordinance back to staff to incorporate the comments and feedback received from tonight's meeting, and then to bring back to city council for, uh, consideration.
I, I think I said take it back to the, uh, mobility, traffic safety first, and then back to council.
So then to bring back to, uh, bring to mobility and traffic safety and then to city council.
Yeah. And, and that included not only our comments, but a lot of the comments coming from, uh, that we agreed with.
And I did advise at all comments.
Yeah, very good.
And do we need to put any language on, on future, you know, um, future locations or anything of that nature that?
I, I talked about the grandfathering, you know, so that we made sure we covered that. And then any future location, as staff said, we have to decide anyways.
Got it.
And so I think the goal, the goal out of sending it back is go after all the comments we made, clean up the definitions, clean up some of the language, uh, and then, um, I lost my thought there. Go, go with, uh, the, nah, I just, I lost it there, sorry.
So just, we just want to make sure that this is, obviously there's only four zones right now, so we want to make sure this is included, like you said, Santa Monica, we're heading in that direction as it is, and, um, just making sure that we have, if there needs to be any kind of, um, I just want to make sure that we're, we're covering down on those future locations. And I know we'll have to make a decision then, but...
Exactly. And ultimately, we'll be back with a public meeting just like this. And hopefully review the new, the new language with hopefully all the additions that we've asked for. Anybody else going once, going twice? Any, any questions from staff before I call a question? Any, you got direction? You got probably more than you ever wanted. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. And then this, this was not an easy thing, so we understand it's a complicated animal. So with that, we will call the question.
And that motion does carry unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Oh, yeah. So we'll take a break now, uh, till 9:15, 9:15 sharp. We only have 45 minutes before that 10 o'clock, uh, we're going to try. Oh, that's right, I forgot about that. Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
I think we're definitely going beyond ten o'clock tonight, so I would like to entertain a motion to go beyond ten o'clock. And, and then before I go there, the question is, do we want to do, we've got ten C, ten D, and twelve A. And.
Limit at eleven?
Well, that, that's why I'm asking, because if we try and do all three, I think this is pretty sizable with public input. I don't know how much public input we have on D. I would guess nothing, almost nothing?
None.
Okay, great.
There's not a lot of discussion on twelve D, right?
Twelve A, how many do we have on twelve?
We have two, and on ten C, four.
On ten C, four, okay, so maybe it's not as bad as. So the real question is, how late do you think we need to go to get through public input? And it sounds like public input's a little lighter than I thought, so.
Eleven? I mean, that's, that's an hour, it's an hour forty.
So entertain a motion to go past ten to eleven?
Motion to go past ten to eleven.
Okay. I got a motion and a second? Let's call the question. No reason to wait to nine fifty-nine to do that, so. Okay, so we'll, we'll plow on through. And with that.
I was gonna reuse one.
We're all set, we'll go.
Yeah.
Okay, we are now on item ten C, presentation of the Encinitas Fire Department's wildfire gap analysis report, and the Public Health and Safety Commission's prioritized recommendations for enhancing wildlife preparedness, prevention, and response. Contact person is Fire Chief Gordon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and public. Thank you for having us. I'm Josh Gordon, I'm the Fire Chief. I have with me Marie, our emergency manager, and then James Morton, who's the Chair for the Public Health and Safety Commission. I'll start the presentation. So tonight, we'll go over a little bit of the project background. I know we've gone over that before, so we'll make it pretty quick. We'll go over some high-level concerns and comments that came out of the Palisades and the Eaton fire. We'll go over our gap analysis report, and then we'll break it down into the emergency management, the fire prevention, as well as fire suppression. And then we'll talk about the resource recommendations that we're going to be providing to the council tonight. So a quick project background. On February twenty-sixth of twenty-five, the City Council tasked the Public Health and Safety Commission with conducting an in-depth assessment of wildfire risks and threats to property and life due to potential major wildfires in Encinitas, considering recent and historical fires. The assignment itself was, had six bullet points. One was to hold public meetings to identify key community concerns or potential major risks. Two, prioritize risks by severity and likelihood, focusing on those most critical. Three, complete the process promptly to inform the May-June budget cycle. Collaborate with Encinitas Fire Department to develop mitigation strategies for higher-party risks to support the budget. And then engage the Fire Department, as well as Leinhard Fire Safe Council, for their expertise and their input, and then coordinate with relevant agencies, including the Water Agency, to come back with information and concerns that we could use towards identifying any issues or gaps we have in our wildfire preparedness. Now, with that, we did have a workshop. We had a survey that went out to the public. We also collected public comment, and then we, while it wasn't necessarily part of the Public Health and Safety Commission information that we gathered, after the Palisades and the Eaton fire, we did get a lot of emails and a lot of questions and concerns that we still added to this study, if you will, to make sure that we were trying to get as much information as possible. The one thing I will say is, while we go over this analysis, it is very focused on wildfire preparedness only. So with the Fire Department as a whole, the focus is on that wildfire preparedness and those gaps, not necessarily any other gaps that we have within the Fire Department. And so if I move over to the Palisades fire, the, the actual cause has not been determined at this point, but some of the concerns that have come up through the Palisades fire itself was arson as an origin, and then the transient encampments that were around that area. Now, the Palisades fire is thought to have fired, started from a fire earlier on, a few days before that, from some fireworks, but the concern itself came out around these encampments. So while it might not have been the direct nexus, there was still a concern that was brought in that realm because of the Palisades fire. Other issues revolved around rapid evacuation and the poor visibility. They had narrow, winding roads, poor signage, there was some evacuation zone confusion. There was a lot of people who refused to evacuate. Limited access routes, there was only one or two viable ingress and egress areas. And then there was risk of crews getting trapped during sudden fire runs. So post-fire, actually during the fire and post-fire, there's also air quality issues. So they had an AQI, air quality index, of greater than three hundred, which is pretty hazardous to bystanders without any respiratory protection. Schools, elderly centers, and outdoor activities were all shut down. And then the water supply and infrastructure was a big concern. They talked about limited hydrants and brush-heavy terrain, and then power outages that led to pressure drops in critical zones, and pressure of, of the water getting to the firefighters. So we move on to the Eaton fire. Again, still under investigation, but the major concern or what they think caused the fire was from utility lines starting the fire. There was extreme fire behavior. The fire was crown-driven, which means it's up high in the trees, hard to stop, very hot, moves very quickly. There was a legal and financial liability that was shifted from the city to the power company, the utility company, pretty quickly. And so that triggered some public outrage and loss of trust to those utility companies, or that utility company. There was overwhelmed evacuation system, they moved greater than twenty thousand people. WIA alerts were delayed, or some people didn't get the WIA alert, and that's a wireless emergency alerting system that they have. Mutual aid was overloaded, so fire crews and apparatus were responding, and then told to go to different areas. And then there was communication failures that involved cellular and internet outages. There was no backup or satellite communications available, and then multi-agency coordination lagged due to incompatible systems. And then they also had the air quality issues that the Palisades fire went through as well. And so as I go through that, like, we can tell there are some, there are some core concerns there that we also have, egress, ingress, different rural areas, water supply, all those things that, the Palisades and Eaton fire, we looked at, and we took into consideration, we were looking at how our Fire Department responds to a wildfire emergency. So as we go, we look through all of the, the concerns in those fires, and we looked towards us, and we looked at the workshop, as well as the survey and all the comments we got. We met with the Public Health and Safety Commission, and we came up with the survey questions that revolved around these eight themes. So community and emergency alerts, app and website awareness, evacuation and emergency planning, home and property preparedness, emergency response and fire services, law enforcement and resource concerns, community neighborhood preparedness, and additional feedback or any immediate action that the, the community thinks we need to take today. And so as we look through those core themes, and we took in all this information from the workshop, the survey, the public comment that we got, and all the other emails that we got ahead of time, we needed to place those in a way that we could operationalize those, right? And so we have three main divisions that are forward-facing and operational when it comes to wildfire preparedness or suppression. So our emergency management, fire prevention, and the fire suppression. And those are three divisions within the Fire Department. So we coalesced all that information, we looked at what the themes were, and then we went through each one of those divisions to make sure that we could handle those concerns, whether we're saying that we, we don't have a gap, that we do a good job, or there is a gap, and this is how we're gonna fix the gap, right? And so I'm gonna turn the rest of, or the time over right now to go over emergency management, and she's gonna do the gap analysis, and then we'll move on from there.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. A comprehensive emergency management strategy integrated into the Fire Department is essential for safeguarding the community during disasters and ensuring that residents are informed, prepared, and able to respond efficiently. I'll share with you the current, the city's current approach to key emergency management areas, which are identified on the slide, highlight key shortcomings, and present targeted strategies to improve city and public preparedness and response to wildfires. To address these areas, the city can strengthen its emergency management framework, foster a culture of preparedness, and ensure that all residents, regardless of age, ability, and/or language, have equitable access to lifesaving information and services. So I want to start with one of kind of a key area in emergency management, or manager might be new to, you know, to some of the people that are here this evening. But if you think of that role as a position that plans exercises and ensures the preparedness of city staff, as well as the community, a key area that we focus in on is that ability to be able to provide timely alert and warning notifications to the community. So the County of San Diego uses a tool called Alert San Diego, which is, it's emergency notification system to deliver critical emergency and timely notifications. In May of 2024, the county rolled out another key tool, in this, as I like to say, our toolkit, which is Genesis Protect. It's used in partnership with, along with the Alert San Diego. These tools allow emergency personnel to issue real-time alerts. That's including information on evacuation orders, shelter in place, road closures, things specific to specific hazards, like a gas leak. And these are, it's a really important tool that we use as emergency personnel, but also that we encourage our, our, the community, residents, and businesses to utilize. What we found through this gap analysis is that a relatively small number of community members are actually utilizing that tool. The Genesis Protect, we're not able to capture or find out, you know, how many people are using that tool, because you have to opt-in location-based. Some people that might have downloaded the application or using the website, maybe outside of our area. So we're not able to provide that information. But it's really, when you look at that limited registration and, and people that are actually using the application, it is of a concern, because that is a key way that we're going to be providing emergency notifications and updates on, on critical information related to emergency and disasters. So really important to closing that gap is to increase resident business participation by preparing a comprehensive alert and notification plan. And one of the things that we really learned, and I know Chief and I have talked about this, is that, you know, we rely on certain, I'd say, standard information. You're gonna hear this as I, you know, am presenting and talking about public education, but we've relied on our social media, maybe city, you know, weekly updates. We realize that there's a gap in that, in, especially when it comes to the seniors in our community. They may not be tapping into social media or some of the other electronic tools. So we want to make sure that we have targeted, accessible communication formats and culturally relevant outreach strategies. So the next item, and again, really important when you think around emergency preparedness and response, is that community engagement and public education. So right now, that, that is a coordinated effort within the Fire Department between fire prevention, emergency management, as well as fire suppression. And then we'll talk about the resource recommendations that we're going to be providing to the council tonight. So a quick project background. On February twenty-sixth of twenty-five, the City Council tasked the Public Health and Safety Commission with conducting an in-depth assessment of wildfire risks and threats to property and life due to potential major wildfires in Encinitas, considering recent and historical fires. The assignment itself was, had six bullet points. One was to hold public meetings to identify key community concerns or potential major risks. Two, prioritize risks by severity and likelihood, focusing on those most critical. Three, complete the process promptly to inform the May-June budget cycle. Collaborate with Encinitas Fire Department to develop mitigation strategies for higher-party risks to support the budget. And then engage the Fire Department, as well as Leinhard Fire Safe Council, for their expertise and their input, and then coordinate with relevant agencies, including the Water Agency, to come back with information and concerns that we could use towards identifying any issues or gaps we have in our wildfire preparedness. Now, with that, we did have a workshop. We had a survey that went out to the public. We also collected public comment, and then we, while it wasn't necessarily part of the Public Health and Safety Commission information that we gathered, after the Palisades and the Eaton fire, we did get a lot of emails and a lot of questions and concerns that we still added to this study, if you will, to make sure that we were trying to get as much information as possible. The one thing I will say is, while we go over this analysis, it is very focused on wildfire preparedness only. So with the Fire Department as a whole, the focus is on that wildfire preparedness and those gaps, not necessarily any other gaps that we have within the Fire Department. And so if I move over to the Palisades fire, the, the actual cause has not been determined at this point, but some of the concerns that have come up through the Palisades fire itself was arson as an origin, and then the transient encampments that were around that area. Now, the Palisades fire is thought to have fired, started from a fire earlier on, a few days before that, from some fireworks, but the concern itself came out around these encampments. So while it might not have been the direct nexus, there was still a concern that was brought in that realm because of the Palisades fire. Other issues revolved around rapid evacuation and the poor visibility. They had narrow, winding roads, poor signage, there was some evacuation zone confusion. There was a lot of people who refused to evacuate. Limited access routes, there was only one or two viable ingress and egress areas. And then there was risk of crews getting trapped during sudden fire runs. So post-fire, actually during the fire and post-fire, there's also air quality issues. So they had an AQI, air quality index, of greater than three hundred, which is pretty hazardous to bystanders without any respiratory protection. Schools, elderly centers, and outdoor activities were all shut down. And then the water supply and infrastructure was a big concern. They talked about limited hydrants and brush-heavy terrain, and then power outages that led to pressure drops in critical zones, and pressure of, of the water getting to the firefighters. So we move on to the Eaton fire. Again, still under investigation, but the major concern or what they think caused the fire was from utility lines starting the fire. There was extreme fire behavior. The fire was crown-driven, which means it's up high in the trees, hard to stop, very hot, moves very quickly. There was a legal and financial liability that was shifted from the city to the power company, the utility company, pretty quickly. And so that triggered some public outrage and loss of trust to those utility companies, or that utility company. There was overwhelmed evacuation system, they moved greater than twenty thousand people. WIA alerts were delayed, or some people didn't get the WIA alert, and that's a wireless emergency alerting system that they have. Mutual aid was overloaded, so fire crews and apparatus were responding, and then told to go to different areas. And then there was communication failures that involved cellular and internet outages. There was no backup or satellite communications available, and then multi-agency coordination lagged due to incompatible systems. And then they also had the air quality issues that the Palisades fire went through as well. And so as I go through that, like, we can tell there are some, there are some core concerns there that we also have, egress, ingress, different rural areas, water supply, all those things that, the Palisades and Eaton fire, we looked at, and we took into consideration, we were looking at how our Fire Department responds to a wildfire emergency. So as we go, we look through all of the, the concerns in those fires, and we looked towards us, and we looked at the workshop, as well as the survey and all the comments we got. We met with the Public Health and Safety Commission, and we came up with the survey questions that revolved around these eight themes. So community and emergency alerts, app and website awareness, evacuation and emergency planning, home and property preparedness, emergency response and fire services, law enforcement and resource concerns, community and neighborhood preparedness, and additional feedback or any immediate action that the, the community thinks we need to take today. And so as we look through those core themes, and we took in all this information from the workshop, the survey, the public comment that we got, and all the other emails that we got ahead of time, we needed to place those in a way that we could operationalize those, right? And so we have three main divisions that are forward-facing and operational when it comes to wildfire preparedness or suppression. So our emergency management, fire prevention, and the fire suppression. And those are three divisions within the Fire Department. So we coalesced all that information, we looked at what the themes were, and then we went through each one of those divisions to make sure that we could handle those concerns, whether we're saying that we, we don't have a gap, that we do a good job, or there is a gap, and this is how we're gonna fix the gap, right? And so I'm gonna turn the rest of, or the time over right now to go over emergency management, and she's gonna do the gap analysis, and then we'll move on from there.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. A comprehensive emergency management strategy integrated into the Fire Department is essential for safeguarding the community during disasters and ensuring that residents are informed, prepared, and able to respond efficiently. I'll share with you the current, the city's current approach to key emergency management areas, which are identified on the slide, highlight key shortcomings, and present targeted strategies to improve city and public preparedness and response to wildfires. To address these areas, the city can strengthen its emergency management framework, foster a culture of preparedness, and ensure that all residents, regardless of age, ability, and/or language, have equitable access to lifesaving information and services. So I want to start with one of kind of a key area in emergency management, or manager might be new to, you know, to some of the people that are here this evening. But if you think of that role as a position that plans exercises and ensures the preparedness of city staff, as well as the community, a key area that we focus in on is that ability to be able to provide timely alert and warning notifications to the community. So the County of San Diego uses a tool called Alert San Diego, which is, it's emergency notification system to deliver critical emergency and timely notifications. In May of 2024, the county rolled out another key tool, in this, as I like to say, our toolkit, which is Genesis Protect. It's used in partnership with, along with the Alert San Diego. These tools allow emergency personnel to issue real-time alerts. That's including information on evacuation orders, shelter in place, road closures, things specific to specific hazards, like a gas leak. And these are, it's a really important tool that we use as emergency personnel, but also that we encourage our, our, the community, residents, and businesses to utilize. What we found through this gap analysis is that a relatively small number of community members are actually utilizing that tool. The Genesis Protect, we're not able to capture or find out, you know, how many people are using that tool, because you have to opt-in location-based. Some people that might have downloaded the application or using the website, maybe outside of our area. So we're not able to provide that information. But it's really, when you look at that limited registration and, and people that are actually using the application, it is of a concern, because that is a key way that we're going to be providing emergency notifications and updates on, on critical information related to emergency and disasters. So really important to closing that gap is to increase resident business participation by preparing a comprehensive alert and notification plan. And one of the things that we really learned, and I know Chief and I have talked about this, is that, you know, we rely on certain, I'd say, standard information. You're gonna hear this as I, you know, am presenting and talking about public education, but we've relied on our social media, maybe city, you know, weekly updates. We realize that there's a gap in that, in, especially when it comes to the seniors in our community. They may not be tapping into social media or some of the other electronic tools. So we want to make sure that we have targeted, accessible communication formats and culturally relevant outreach strategies. So the next item, and again, really important when you think around emergency preparedness and response, is that community engagement and public education. So right now, that, that is a coordinated effort within the Fire Department between fire prevention, emergency management, as well as our fire operations or suppression teams. We do not have a comprehensive community education and public, or community engagement, public education plan. And that is something that we would like to see, that we develop that, that plan, because right now, it's almost on an as-needed basis. If we get a request for certain outreach or engagement, we're developing those tools, you know, kind of, and not the, probably the most, it's gonna be time-consuming and not the most efficient manner. So we want to be able to develop a plan. And really important for that plan is that we have specific goals. We're thinking about the targeted audiences for that messaging. We're thinking about the actual outreach methods, as well as that we have in a way to evaluate those outreach, you know, efforts. And then part of that is hiring an actually dedicated emergency engagement specialist who can develop, execute, and also maintain that plan. Because we want to make sure it's something that we're reviewing and updating on a regular basis. Another key area around, you know, and I will say, I've been with the city for almost a year and a half, but I know that this has been a key conversation in our community and within the Fire Department around evacuations. You'll see, we have two items on here related to evacuation. But that evacuation is so critical, because right now, the city does not currently have a, a citywide evacuation plan or any really public education around the use of major arterial routes, you know, that are designated for evacuations if there is that need in a significant emergency or disaster. And additionally, there's a lack of signage on these primary evacuation routes. So key, as you can tell, but there's probably a theme here, is making sure that we have a comprehensive evacuation plan, but also that identifies those arterial routes from east to west, north to south, but also that we have complimentary signage for those, on those routes as well. So another area, and this is, you know, and this came out in, as Chief shared, we did the workshop, and as well as the survey, and larger animal evacuation. or disaster. And additionally, there's a lack of signage, uh, on these, uh, primary evacuation routes. So key, as you can tell, but there's probably a theme here, is making sure that we have a com- comprehensive evacuation plan, but also that identifies those arterial routes from east to west, north to south, but also that we have complimentary signage for those, on those routes as well. So another area, and this is, you know, and this came out in, um, as Chief shared, we did the workshop and as well as the survey and large animal evacuation is another key area of concern for the community. Prior to, you know, and for several months now, fire department staff has been meeting with the, uh, fairgrounds, San Diego Fairgrounds was, which is actually a state asset and the County of San Diego Office of Emergency Services and working on the development of a large animal evacuation plan. There is currently not a, you know, formalized, uh, plan, uh, that identifies that large animal evacuation. That might come as a surprise because I think by default, I think, you know, a lot of people thought that the fairgrounds would be available if there was a fire that, you know, impacted. And I'll use, you know, Leavenhein as the example, that that's where large animal evacuation would happen. So, um, closing that gap, and we've been working on this, as I said, for several months, is to continue that partnership with the fairgrounds as well as with the County of San Diego to develop a regional solution. Uh, because part of that is that if the fairgrounds, if they're having a fair or other act, events, we need to know what alternative sites might be available. And then, uh, rolling into actually to probably one of my favorite programs that I've been, uh, involved with for quite some time, which is our CERT program. And I know when Chief presented to council, uh, last month, he talked about the fact that this program will be relaunched, but it was, really, we wanted that opportunity to be able to evaluate and assess the program. And, um, back when, in October of 2023, when I took the program over, it really truly was not integrated into our city volunteer program, which left the city open to some risk and liability concerns. And as it came to how we educate our CERT members, how they're engaged in, uh, emergency and non-emergency, uh, type activities. So I'm excited to share that in October of this year, we'll be relaunching the program, but we also will be hosting our first CERT Academy in January of 2026. And then I'll say, we, we received a fair amount of feedback related to the fire department website. It currently, the website, it maintains public sa- it's a public safety webpage. So in addition to the fire department, um, we also have some sheriff's department information up there, but it's a centralized, you know, that resource. And a major gap that we heard consistently from community members that navigating the website, uh, is challenging and then actually locating fire prevention and preparedness information can be incredibly challenging. And I, I will say this, I know for me as a staff member, starting with the city, that was probably one of my biggest frustrations. So to close that gap, we're looking and wanting to integrate the update and the ongoing maintenance of the website, uh, wanting to make sure that that information is updated, the information is current, it is accurate, but we want to in- integrate that into our community engagement and public education plan. Fire department and, uh, IT staff have been meeting to discuss. We've had some initial conversation around this, on the redesign of the, um, uh, the fire department's online presence, you know, and if you've spent any time on our, uh, city website, you'll notice, uh, some departments like the Park and Recreations Department, they've made theirs a little bit more, I would say, user-friendly, a little bit more forward-facing and easy to maneuver. So we're looking at using some of those best practices. But to expedite, uh, the update of the website, we're, uh, proposing hiring a content consultant to work in partnership with the fire department and IT, uh, NIT staff to be able to get the website, um, updated as soon as possible. So in summary, emergency management staff are currently working on many of these key initiatives in addition to other vital projects. The addition of a dedicated community engagement specialist is critical to enhancing the city's emergency preparedness, public education and community resilience. This role would serve as a key resource in enhancing several strategic priorities within the fire department and the city's broader emergency management framework to include developing coordination of public education and materials, assistance with the large animal evacuation education and the relaunch of the CERT program. The staff position will play a vital role in bridging gaps in public education, enhancing outreach effectiveness, supporting emergency volunteerism and ultimately strengthening community preparedness and resilience. Chief?
Thank you, Marie. And so now we get into the fire prevention, uh, division here. Uh, we looked at the pre- prevention division in a couple of different ways, but we ended up falling under education, enforcement and planning as being, um, what they're responsible for when it comes to wildfire preparedness. And so under the defensible space and home hardening education, we found that a lot of our information is still going out via the social media, the website, and we're missing a, a huge population within the community. And that's the older adults and the elderly. So what we found was the gap is we don't have any written material, um, that we can pass out and send out via mail or, um, put in our community center or the library so that people can actually take it home and look at it that way instead of relying on their phone or the, the computer. And so we're, to close that gap, we're gonna create, um, some written material that has all the home hardening, defensible space, uh, information on it and how they can protect themselves, uh, with a, a good information guide that they can hold and not have to go to the internet for. Vegetation management and enforcement. So, right now, our prevention staff is responsible for conducting all of the AB38 defensible space inspections on an annual basis within all the very high fire hazard severity zones. They also, uh, have, uh, the ability to go out and do HOA inspections with the HOAs, but it's very much a, um, I'll say it, I'm forgetting my words here, sorry. It's reactionary, right? So it's a complaint-based way of going and looking at everything. So, um, for us to close the gap, instead of being a complaint-driven, uh, program, we need to be a proactive-driven program. And that means we, uh, need to have the, the personnel to go out and actually manage that program and do the inspections and have a focus on that. Right now, we have, uh, three deputy fire marshals that we try to, uh, it's kind of divvy up all that work and then still have plan reviews and building inspections and all the other stuff that they're responsible for. So to bring in somebody that has a sole responsibility, another deputy fire marshal of vegetation management, community education, uh, to go out and, and really assist in that way, uh, we'll be able to enforce it, uh, a little bit more than just being reactionary all the time. So with the citywide vegetation management and planning, um, this is really throwing us under the bus a little bit. We have some amazing, uh, our planning department, our commissions that, um, talk about, uh, the mature tree ordinance or the native plant ordinance. And we need to be involved more. We need to go in and say, hey, we have some expertise in the safety side of this and we need to be part of that planning. So we, what we're gonna, uh, do is commit to being more involved with the planning process there and be able to help, um, guide, uh, some of the ordinances that we're, we have so that it's also public safety, um, minded so that we're not coming back and trying to redo things later on. As far as vegetation management itself, actually going and removing vegetation, um, right now, the fire department is engaged in a joint vegetation initiative, uh, in collaboration with the Nature Collective, and it's focused on reducing the wildfire risk within Leavenhein. Uh, we know we need to branch out more. If you saw the new very high fire hazard severity maps, uh, Cardiff and Lakadia are much more, uh, involved now when it comes to the, the danger zone, right? So we need to pay attention more into those, uh, neighborhoods and bring some more vegetation management to those areas. And so one of the things that, again, we're still reactionary, right? It's still a complaint-based, um, way of running this program. And so the deputy fire marshal, as well as some additional contract money for, uh, through Public Works to help with more vegetation management, would help us close that gap with a lot of the, uh, vegetation that we're, we're trying to clear. Uh, some of that has some hurdles, right? The county is, is in there. Um, there's riparian zones and, uh, so one of the things that we would ask also is to close that gap is to bring on a biologist to assist with us, um, being able to know that the time of, uh, seasons we can do things, what plants we're allowed to cut down and be more environmentally-minded and friendly while we're still providing a safe, uh, area for our residents to be living. Uh, one thing is, uh, working with our city right now, we do have a contract biologist that we can, uh, continue to leverage and maybe increase that contract so that, um, we have that information when we go out and begin our vegetation management. All right. So much information, I'm sorry. So fire suppression, uh, this is the one I can talk a little bit more freely with because I don't know the prevention as well as I do suppression. Uh, but fire station six, I think, uh, that was a, a big, um, area within the community that was loud and clear that we need a fire station six. So currently, our fire station six is in a rented building with a type six, which is basically a truck F250 or F350 with, um, some equipment on the back and a 250-gallon, uh, water tank, and it holds two personnel. And so the gap here on the wildfire preparedness side is they can't do anything. Within Leavenhein, we do have hydrants that are greater than 800 feet away from each other. Our type one engines have 800 feet of hose, uh, and our type sixes don't have any, uh, enough supply hose to be able to reach a hydrant and go all the way to a structure fire, let alone also provide, uh, safety to, or suppression to wildfire events. So, um, to close that gap, uh, we need a, a real fire station that can house a type one fire engine with 500 gallons of water and 800 feet of supply hose, as well as be able to go up and down longer driveways to reach structure fires, uh, and three personnel within that, uh, that fire station and that apparatus. Uh, that will close the gap and provide a, an initial response, um, apparatus that can actually get some work done. And it also provides more safety for the fire personnel that are there. Fire station one, I think we all know that, uh, we closed that fire station last October. Had a report of seismology problems. And so we had to move that crew to station three. Right now, with the city, uh, in the fire department, the engineering department's been very helpful in this, is, um, providing the, the new structure or temporary structure for tape, station one, but eventually we're gonna need a long-term fire station that can house additional apparatus, be able to increase, um, the amount of crews that, uh, are housed there. When I say that, I mean, high wildland events or large events, um, that could be, um, at Moonlight Beach or 101 events that cause an increase in call volume, we can move more people down to that fire station. So planning for the future and making sure that we have a fire station that hits all of our hazards within the zone, within our city. Fire department staffing, this was a big concern with the Palisades and Eaton Fire. We also heard a lot about it with, uh, the workshop and the survey. And NFPA 1710 is the guidelines or the recommendations that, uh, the fire department tries to hit, right? And this, uh, NFPA 1710 says that we should have four personnel on each fire engine and a four person on the truck. Right now, we have three firefighters on an, an engine and three firefighters on the truck. So we are short of the NFPA 1710, um, standard. Now, if we did try to, uh, accomplish that task, we would have to hire 21 full-time firefighters. So the alternative to that is obviously station six needs, uh, three personnel and then the truck needs a fourth person on that to, uh, maintain the type of calls we're getting, the development that we're having, as well as provide that extra staff member, uh, to be able to respond to these large wildland fires and have these additional staffing, abilities to, um, help with the myriad of different things that a wildfire would bring to us, right? So those would be the alternatives. The good thing about adding the station six with three people and a fourth person on the truck is would increase ISO, uh, rating from a two to a one, which, um, is theoretically supposed to assist our residents with their insurance premiums. So, um, yes, there's a cost to that, but there is a direct benefit to obviously suppression and wildfire preparedness, as well as our residents for insurance, uh, premiums to go down. The next one is our water availability. Um, I've been in touch with, uh, San Gito Water District as well as Leavenhein Municipal Water District. We have very good water system here. The NFPA standard is 20 PSI that comes out of a hydrant, so 20 pounds per square inch, that's it. We are nowhere near that low. Um, in fact, we have some that are over 100 pounds per square inch, which we have to dial down when it comes into our fire engine. So we're good on the pressure. All of our hydrants have a, uh, gallons per minute rating of at least 1,500 GPM, which is what the NFPA standard is. But there is a gap. We found the gap being in Leavenhein, right? So, uh, there are fire hydrants within Leavenhein that are greater than 800 feet apart. So, um, I'm not gonna bring the map up now, but in the report, it has a map that has a purple and circle, a purple circle and a pink circle around each hydrant, and one is a 300 and 400-foot diameter circle. And so it lets you know, or lets us know where our gaps are. This highlights the importance of station six and having a type one fire engine, uh, with the longer hose reach and being able to, um, kind of bridge the gap, if you will, between the two hydrants. I can tell you that Leavenhein Municipal Water District and the city are looking at adding additional hydrants already with the WUI program or the Wildland Urban Interface, Interface Program. So, um, we're gonna continue to collaborate with Leavenhein Water District and assist where we can in adding some of those additional hydrants. But otherwise, besides the, the, the distance away, which we're gonna hopefully shore up over time, the pressure and the gallons per minute are, are very high and above our NFPA standard. Next is the traffic calming measures. So we get a lot of requests for speed bumps and, um, different types of traffic calming measures. And while I'm not against traffic calming measures, um, there are places within our city that they, uh, can slow down evacuations or slow our, uh, response to those areas. So we are working on a map right now. We've actually are pretty much done with it except for adding these new very high fire hazard severity map, um, uh, geographic areas back into the map. But what it does is it looks at our city and it takes into consideration the very high fire hazard severity zone, the, um, call volume that's greater than 200 calls per year on each one of the VAR roads. It looks at if it's an arterial road or not, and then it looks at it, that if it's an evacuation route or not. And that's where we're going to present to council at some point, a map that is public-facing, that shows, uh, what, um, what streets would qualify for any kind of traffic calming measures. And I know our engineering, uh, department would love that too. So, um, so we're gonna work with them, make sure that is, um, meets their standard as well, and then we'll have a good idea of what our traffic calming measures should look like in our, our high wildland areas. And that does it for our fire suppression. And so we got all that information. We, um, did this gap analysis. We brought back our analysis and our recommendations to the Public Health and Safety Commission on the 14th of April. And, um, this is what, how we determined our recommendations would come to you as. So we looked at the, the far right-hand side, um, are the themes that we looked through in the very beginning of, um, those eight themes that I kind of mentioned earlier and kind of broke those down into an easier way for us to provide recommendations to, uh, what the resource need was that we're gonna ask. And then we put the fire department's priority to those resource needs, and then it's broken down by each of the division, emergency management, prevention and suppression. And so as we, um, brought this to the Public Health and Safety Commission, we had a, a great discussion and then they provided some additions and, uh, helped, um, prioritize on their end. So at this time, I'm gonna send it over to the Public Case and Sa- Public Health and Safety Commission Chair, uh, James Morton, and he's gonna take it from here.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. This reprimands the key takeaway you asked for us, which is a prioritization of the risks that, that we found the city faced. This was a amazing opportunity to be a pilot project for what we can do if we get some direction and we are securely in the forming, storming and norming stage of the group presentation. And this exercise, you know, I wouldn't say we're normed yet, but we're certainly storming, certainly fantastic. Um, what I'll say just about the prioritization, along with what the fire department provided, you know, this represents the missing gaps that's there. And when you're looking at ways to improve things, you can look at gaps, you could also look at what's good and what can be better. So I would look at the commission additions, you know, as three things that the commissioners felt are good in some sense currently with the city, but with a little tweaking could be made a little bit better. So we really enjoyed this process. It was great working with the fire chief, Marie, and- We really enjoyed this process, it was great working with the fire chief, Marie, and I think we're in a good space.
Good.
Yes, if you'd like, I can go through each one of the resources in the prioritization, or I can take questions at this point.
Why don't we, I think we've all been briefed, so I'm not sure, and the report was great, it was thorough. Why don't we see if there are any preliminary questions, and we'll go straight to public? I think we have four public, five? Five public? Four and a half, five?
Yeah, I just have one quick question, and it's more of a, just a, since we're here. Are there any kind of systems where, you know, a fire hydrant that provides like a sprinkler system for evacuation routes? Like, you know, I'm thinking Paradise, where 1,200, you know, vehicles got stuck, and had they had some kind of suppression that they could drive through a fire with, you know, water, where the hydrant's kind of doing itself, and it's just, it's a way for people, you know, I'm thinking Leavenhein right now, obviously deep Leavenhein, often forced.
Yeah, no, there's no sprinkler systems that we're going to attach to hydrants, because one of the problems is when we start opening hydrants, we start losing pressure, right? So the system would have trouble if we just opened up a whole bunch of hydrants at once. So really, the key component of the vegetation management within our evacuation routes is to clear those hazards so that you can drive through and not have fire spilling over you, right? One of the initial Leavenhein evacuation plans that said you had to go down Manchester was one of my biggest concerns coming in, because there could be a time where that fire would approach Manchester and cause panic. So we're working right now with our vegetation management program, and if you notice, the evacuation routes in Leavenhein, they're starting to get wider and wider, and with budget and with planning with our fire management services that goes out and does the trimming. We can't go in 20 feet and just cut, we have to kind of have a planned phased effect. But if you notice, it's starting to get wider to provide that kind of space for our evacuees.
Copy, thanks.
Any other questions? If not, let's go to public comment.
First speaker is Sarah Lifton, with time donation from Jennifer Bishop, followed by Suzanne Clausenstock, Camille Perkins, and then Molly Hintlin, Hintlin, sorry, and then Brad Lefkowitz.
Hi, my name is Sarah Lifton, and I'm president of the Leavenhein Fire Safe Council, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our entire nine-member board. We'd like to express our unqualified support for the wildfire gap analysis report that Chief Josh Gordon, emergency manager Marie Jones Kirk, and their team produced, based on the community input gathered in collaboration with the Public Health and Safety Commission. Under previous councils, many of us in Leavenhein have frequently felt like the city's stepchildren. For far too long, decisions affecting Leavenhein have been driven by politics, not evidence, to the detriment of our community, and many of those decisions have placed the residents of Leavenhein at grave risk in the event of a wildfire. Our very real, very valid worries about wildfire prevention, preparedness, and safety have been ignored, minimized, derided, or completely dismissed in favor of imprudent densification at Leavenhein's major intersection for evacuation, while resources that could have addressed our needs have been diverted to ill-conceived vanity projects in other parts of the city. The gap analysis report, which touches on virtually every issue that has been raised publicly and privately in Leavenhein with respect to wildfire, starts to reverse those years of neglect. It is comprehensive and detailed, and provides a common-sense roadmap to begin tackling nearly everything that keeps Leavenhein residents awake at night. The report identifies all our concerns about wildfire in Leavenhein from multiple angles. These include evacuation plans, response times, vegetation management enforcing and enforcement, including the Escondido Creek Watershed and Valsereno Preserve, which are the proverbial elephants in the room, defensible space and home hardening education, large animal evacuation, infrastructure deficiencies, and especially the need for a real fire station with staffing and equipment commensurate with the elevated risk we face. It addresses the negative impact that many well-intentioned but blinkered city staff and commission recommendations will have on wildfire safety in Leavenhein. Road diets, lane narrowing, traffic calming, immature tree, and native plant ordinances may work in other parts of Encinitas, but in Leavenhein, they will create even more hazards than we already face if they're implemented. They have no business in our community, where such initiatives could literally mean the difference between life and death in a major incident. Our wildfire risk far exceeds that of other parts of Encinitas, and our evacuation options are extremely limited. All involve a single narrow two-lane road, Rancho Santa Fe Road, which has already log-jammed every rush hour, and the Goodson Monstrosity isn't even completed. It's reassuring that people in positions of influence are finally paying attention to public safety in our community, listening to residents and positioning the city to take action. We're heartened to see this kind of reasoned assessment of the predicament Leavenhein residents find ourselves in, with specific measures spelled out to start addressing what needs to be done so we don't end up decimated like Pacific Palisades and Altadena. We realize that it will take time and creativity to find the resources to implement all the recommendations in the report, but we urge you in the strongest possible terms to take them to heart and do everything possible to make the vision in the report a reality. Someday, perhaps sooner than we think, our lives may depend on it. We are most grateful to Bruce Aylers for initiating the process that led to the report, and to Chief Gordon and Marie Jones Kirk and their team for doing a stellar job with the task at hand. The report is nothing short of visionary, and it's probably the best document that I've seen produced by the city in the 11 years that I've lived here. All of us on the OFSC board will be watching with great interest to see how you respond. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Bruce Aylers. First, I wanted to thank Chief Gordon and his team for putting together that gap analysis. Again, a stellar job. I think most of us in Leavenhein are very appreciative to have someone finally address some of the inadequacies of the existing ability to quickly fight structure fires, and even more concerning to us, to fight wildfires in our area. Can you flip that so it's the other way? Oh, maybe the other way. And again. And, no, there you go.
25% chance, yeah. Just keep going.
So, not the latest image, sorry, I had one from October. Didn't realize there was another new image for the high-fire severity zone. But basically, it's just showing, demonstrating some of the reasons for our concern. A good chunk of Rancho Santa Fe, our evacuation route is flanked by very high-fire severity, high-fire severity, and medium-fire severity zone within a block of the entire evacuation route, from, basically from 11th Street all the way down. And then again, as Chief Gordon said, through Manchester, you're completely flanked within high-fire, very high-fire severity zone. So we've been pushing for a fully operational station for some time. We're very happy that Station Number 6 has a footprint in Leavenhein, but with the existing Type 6 truck and staffing, most experts, including Chief Gordon, say it's not enough. Let's see, besides the large portion of Leavenhein being designated as high-fire severity zone, I just actually mentioned that to you already, just looking at, again, how quickly this area can get overtaken and actually affect the entire evacuation route. So having one Type 1 truck helps, but having a fully operational station is an even better chance at being lifesaving for this community in fighting fires and allowing time for evacuations. I hope the council will consider all of the chief's recommendations. After seeing the devastation of the Los Angeles fires, I look at our community, and I look at the huge Goodson project complex being built. That high-density project will generate 1,800 trips a day, which substantially will increase the traffic of the area. How can that not have an impact on evacuations? I wonder if that project would have been pushed through now without more critical evaluation. With the increased population, a full fire station in Leavenhein is even more vital than ever before. I believe you will seriously consider safety for the community as your number-one priority, and these plans are a good start. You, as the city council, also have great impact on safety by being more critical on the placement of these high-density projects.
Thank you.
Hi, Camille Perkins, Leavenhein. Thank you, Fire Department and council, for this excellent report. I fully support the city's efforts to increase safety, and especially Fire Station 6. I do want to add a few points of constructive feedback that I think might enhance this report and build out this report more. One of them is that I would appreciate if the council could direct staff to examine city-imposed regulatory impediments to safety, especially within the fire hazard severity zones, specifically like code impediments and other things to home hardening, vegetation abatement, clearing, you know, the defensible space around the house, you know, things like that. Our city needs to prepare, because the fire department has strongly implied lives are at risk in Encinitas. Older homes in Leavenhein and the rest of the city do not necessarily meet current building code standards, including fire standards. Private roadways, which are very common in Leavenhein, impede, delay, and can prevent fire department service at all. Many private roadways are considered non-survivable, and this is in public documents, that they're not going to be survivable in a fire. So and scenarios are being discussed where residents are forced to shelter in place in these inadequate homes, on these inadequate driveways, waiting for the fire to come through. So, you know, going back to this report, mentions made of the home hardening and the vegetation abatement, but it doesn't address all of the impediments that the city is putting in place concerning those things. So what I'm asking the city to do is have some planning effort to try to unpack what those impediments might be, and how we might remediate it, because these fire issues are affecting a large portion of Encinitas. And these aren't luxurious remodels that we're talking about, and I think that the city considers them to be so, and it's like, the way that the code is addressed, because there's a lot of additional requirements, expensive permits, that may be out of reach for many people. These are important safety issues. The city should help residents have safe homes and safe driveway and, you know, safe fire access. And so, you know, again, I'm asking the council to direct staff to help streamline safety projects, home hardening, that sort of thing, figure out some ways to make it easier. We already do this for ADUs and some other stuff, let's do it for home hardening and fire issues. And then one other thing that just occurred to me, as I've been listening to this presentation, that I think that it's really, really important to integrate the fire department's expertise and perspective into a lot of planning efforts happening. We're doing general plan amendments, we're doing a lot of things from a planning perspective. I think that we should be including fire safety issues into that mix, because we're in a new environment that we weren't in recently. Thank you very, very much.
Good evening, council. Molly Hintlin, District 2. So the Public Health and Safety Commission worked with Chief Gordon and emergency manager Marie Kirk, is commendable. The commission in particular really stepped up on the request, and I support the agenda in Item 10C, and encourage the council to implement the recommendations highlighted in the comprehensive report. The city council has acknowledged the needs to prioritize Fire Station 1 and implement a more complete Fire Station 6, without a doubt. The gap analysis really narrows down the focus and highlights other actionable, immediate needs, and it's citywide. I hear a lot about Leavenhein, but it's citywide. I would like to acknowledge that the Public Health and Safety Commission did a commendable job as they met weekly. They went from 0 to 100. I participated in many of their meetings, and then attended the workshop at the community center, and completed the survey. I participated, oh, I just said that, sorry. The survey they conducted was in a very condensed timeframe to evaluate citywide needs, and they met the deadlines for budget workshop. So while a small dataset of the information, it's a universal response. I found the commission to collaborate and work through their challenging priorities, and, sorry, have to scroll. The gap analysis is really not a wish list, it's a very actionable plan. I would like to also say that the council should direct the Public Health and Safety Commission to further their work in this area, to help further create citywide Fire Safe Council information like Leavenhein has, and as a way to further community awareness by district, and engage awareness at the neighborhood level, and using multiple communication methods has been highlighted. So I recommend the council to include as many of these action items in the 2025 budget. Thank you.
Gentlemen, Brad Lefkowitz, D4, speaking today as a landscape designer and the new chair of the UFAC committee, eager to collaborate with fire and any members of the public that want to talk about the mature tree ordinance has been sufficiently sent back to the drawing board. Talking about tomorrow night at UFAC and probably most of the next couple meetings, so we're eager for input from people, because we want to get it right. Been a lot of landscape talks over the years about this, and there's been kind of a surprising lack of consensus of safe vegetation and safe landscaping. It's slowly moving towards consensus. The one thing everyone agrees on, that Zone Zero, that five feet from the house, super important, proven over and over, that makes a big difference if you clear that area. But a lot of the talk is usually about removing vegetation. And if you look at some of the pictures from Pacific Palisades recently, you'll see entire blocks where houses are gone, but some of the trees are still there. And that's kind of one of the big challenges here, is that a healthy, well-maintained, well-irrigated tree can do a lot to slow down a fire. You talk about amber catcher, you know, imagine somewhere where there's no trees at all, houses are what burn, you know, particularly older houses. So here to speak for the trees a little bit, just to put it out there, that the knee-jerk reaction of just clearing all the vegetation can actually make things worse in some situations. But it's really tough. Species lists, I'm not a big fan of, it's really about maintenance. There's a famous picture from a big fire in Berkeley from the 90s, a hotel that was surrounded by eucalyptus. Everyone thinks eucalyptus burn, right? All the eucalyptus are still there, the hotel's gone, because it was a hotel that spent a lot of money on maintenance, well-irrigated, well-cared-for trees. And that's where it's tough, case-by-case basis, when you're looking at different properties. The good news, we have lots of qualified arborists, biologists in town. I'd love hearing about biologists, because it takes a real knowledgeable person to look at some of these things, case by case. And yeah, so talking about home hardening, I think it's a very long-term view, but updating codes to do whatever we can with the latest info to build safe homes that don't burn. It's not just about vegetation. So I just wanted to put that out there, and again, definitely looking for public input on mature tree ordinance, that'll touch on this, so would love to see anyone at the UFAC meetings, they're super fun. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I'll kick it off, since I kind of started, I kicked it off originally. First of all, I want to, I threw down a challenge to the Public Health and Safety Commission, and also to the Fire Department, because I wanted this feedback in time for the budget, and you missed it by about an hour. I mean, if it were two hours, if we'd done this right before, it would have been perfect. But that's fine, we'll have another bite at the budget apple. So, but no, you did what I wanted, you got it done. I appreciate the weekly meetings, and I appreciate Chief Gordon and Marie, you taking the bulk of the lifting from the staff side to help them along on this. So I loved the report, I thought it hit at the right tone, it showed us, there are actually some revelations in there that I don't think I had realized, in particular, the priority of getting some solution into Fire Station 6, and/or identifying that we really do need a Type 1 engine out there, even if it means moving things around temporarily to get that coverage, you know? For the audience, I keep telling the city manager and the fire chief, I don't want to be Karen Bass, the mayor of LA, standing up there shoulder to shoulder with the two of them, explaining what I should have done two years ago. of them explaining what I should have done two years ago, and that's why we're doing this. Yeah, I really want to get this done before then. And I appreciate the sensitivity to the budget that you showed in this report all the way through. I think you gave us a prioritized list. I'm looking at page 28, the very last page of the report, and I appreciate how the Public Health and Safety Commission mirrored very closely your priorities with those issues. So, this is obviously near and dear to my heart. I've been involved in at least two major events where my house was threatened, along with the rest of the people in Allevonheim. I remember laying in bed, watching, I can see to the east, and I could watch the fire marching around Paint Mountain out there up Escondido Creek and just hoping it never went further than that point, which it did not because the fire suppression managed to stop it there, and I think the weather changed too. So, this is near and dear to my heart. And the thing that we all have to remember, if you look at any of these big events, conflagrations, as I like to call them, they're unstoppable. Once they get going in like Escondido Creek or in certain, they make their own weather, and they're just coming. So, we need to figure out how to evacuate, and you hit it all for me. So, I'm very happy with that. Only question I have is with our newer code, we're requiring sprinklers. Does that prevent the house from burning down, or can you still have a, in these kind of firestorms, again, do sprinklers help you on houses that have sprinklers?
The interior sprinklers you're talking about.
Interior sprinklers?
Yeah, so.
Our fire code.
Our fire code. We, when we require interior sprinklers, those are mainly for a fire that happens within the structure.
Okay.
A lot of these sprinklers are also being put in attics. So, if there is an ember that gets into an attic, you have a better chance of saving your home with a sprinkler because of the ember cast. Obviously, we want to have the steel mesh and all of the entryways into your, the openings into your attic, but if you have sprinklers in there, that also helps.
Okay, so it's a belt and suspenders, so to speak?
Correct. If you have a fire that starts on the outside of the home, it's going to get large enough to where the sprinklers aren't going to be able to handle it.
And then, I think either you or Sarah can answer this. You didn't, neither one of you shamelessly plugged the fire wildfire event coming up where you'll have vendors, and the date is?
May 17th, but honestly, it is really geared to Allevonheim, and we don't want.
Okay, well, anybody from, oh, yeah, May 17th, but at the Allevonheim Town Hall noon, I think it was? No?
It's 11 to 2.
11 to 2, sorry.
And we've got about 10 vendors.
Yeah, that's good. I just want to get it onto account. If you want to learn directly from the firefighters, from the vendors, some of the things that can be done to harden your home, and Allevonheim Fire Safe will be there, May 17th, 11:00 a.m. Did I get that right?
Yeah, so we have lots of agencies.
And Sarah, they can't hear you over, so.
We have lots of agencies.
They still can't hear you. Yeah, it's just because you have to be on mic. Okay, so, yeah, and I think those are my comments. I'm, I see what we need to do in the budget, and we need to talk about how we get those into the budget now. So, with that, Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much to everybody. I'm glad that we're starting to see the turn, and this has been a big, big point for me for a while. I think, I've talked with Chief Gordon about this, but as the CERT program comes back, as, you know, we've talked about, you know, I think generationally, you think about, you know, a generation ago, kids weren't really wearing helmets all that much, and you look around now, even though kids may not be wearing their helmets properly, you see a lot more kids and a lot more as a generational adjustment and change. So, I think getting into the schools, getting into the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, getting that education out and getting some kind of a pull program where they want to be involved, they want to do stuff, so that the more knowledge that we have in an emergency that's out there and how to be, do your part in that emergency, I just couldn't speak highly enough for that. I know that that's what we do as a nation when we go into other countries. We do the same thing. We set up that same system where that when we get there the next time around, they know how to operate. So, I think we're doing, with all of these things that we're doing in Allevonheim specifically, I also have talked about the drone program, getting out there. The agricultural side of drone technology is significant, and knowing where our drought, as Brad just mentioned, there are drought prevention, there are ways to see this for farms and for all kinds of agricultural, but we have the drones in our system to set up either a weekly, monthly, I think weekly would probably be best, but to fly over our major fire areas and seeing where we have dry areas as we head into a fire season, even though fire season is year-round now, as we get into those drought-type moments that we know that there's places that we may be able to flood or at a very low cost to be in a preventative, we call it a hard target versus a soft target, and become more capable. And at that point, also, I know Chief Gordon is really big on early warning system, and so all of these things that are mentioned, it's really us as a community coming together and doing kind of what we just heard from our citizens, but taking this to heart and becoming a major part of the community doing its part to help out where they don't want to become a victim of these issues. So, I've heard a number of spots where our elderly might be an issue, where they're not getting the attention, but we educate the kids properly by the time they're in junior high. There's an easy path to our younger generation, helping our older generation, and helping in that communication speak. So, it becomes a part of our process, being a lot more effective upfront in prevention. What was an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of reaction or something. So, I really appreciate everything you guys have done, and I'm looking forward to it. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember San Antonio?
Very comprehensive. A lot, great report. I really do, there's so much stuff in here that really can be taken to heart and really implemented. I just had a couple of questions, so like the, for NFPA 1710, is there a lot of San Diego County, like, agencies that, you know, stick to that?
No, so not with the engine. So, most, and we do have a table I can bring up if you want, but we do have a table that shows all of the engines in North County, our North Zone right now, has all three-person engines, and then there are about five departments that have four-person trucks. So, when you're looking at the cost of staffing to do a whole Fire Department with four people on an engine, it's pretty expensive.
Yeah.
There are some ways to do it, you know, with ambulances and different staffing models, but at the moment, right now, the third person on a type 1 at Station 6, and then the fourth person on the truck would get us the closest we've been to that.
Yeah, and since you're talking vernacular, when you say truck, you mean the big ladder truck?
Correct, yes. The one with the big ladder on it.
Yeah, and everything else, all the other standard fire, what the layman would call a fire truck is a fire engine.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, is there a way we can apply for an OES type 1, like, and kind of get it for free, or?
Yeah, so, an OES type 1 in the zone comes with some, some requirements, right? So, if a fire happens outside of our jurisdiction, outside of our county, that we would be first up to go and provide our personnel with an OES fire engine and go fight that fire. We do get reimbursed for personnel, but we do get the benefit of having an engine for free. Right now, the zone, the whole county, is kind of overflowing with OES engines. And so, when we look at our response models, and all of a sudden, we have all of our staff in the county leaving on these green OES fire engines, we're not being staffed back here at home. So, the zone and the county has an agreement on how many of these OES engines we have. And so, we can apply for one, but we would need to kind of work with the other fire chiefs in the county to make sure that we're not depleting our resources.
All right. I'll leave it here for right now.
Okay, Councilmember O'Hara?
Sure, I'm going to actually tag on to that question before I circle back to my other questions, because I think it's kind of where you might have been going a little bit. Do we, do we have a reserve engine, like, type 1 or anything similar in the city currently?
Yeah, we have two type 1 reserve engines. We use those for if a fire engine goes out of service, breaks, or we have maintenance. Then we have a reserve type 6 engine that we got from the county, and we have, which is that truck with a little tiny water tank on the back, just like Station 6 has. And then, we have one reserve brush engine, which is called a type 3 fire engine. That's the off-road vehicle that you see that's a little higher off the ground.
So, is there a string with that mix where we could do something like put a reserve 1 engine and like the type 6 or the off-road truck that you just mentioned to supplement that until we have the ability to get the engine you'd prefer out there?
Yeah, we did do that with, if you recall, when our fire engine was hit, I would say a couple of years ago now, on the freeway, we had to replace a type 1 engine, and so we had to use that reserve. I would say that that question would be easier answer if fleet was here. I know that our two reserves are pretty long in the tooth, and they're starting to fall apart a little bit, and the more wear and tear we put on them, the less of a chance we're going to keep that reserve long-term. So, that question, I would have to ask our fleet maintenance director to answer for me, but it is possible.
Just trying to think of solutions to augment and supplement the Allevonheim Fire Station 6, ways we could go. And I know we are, we're looking, we're currently looking for a permanent site as part of the deal with that.
Correct.
So, I feel very confident in that, and I know Josh, I know Chief Gordon, sorry, is working very hard on that. So, certainly back here, on the defensible space zones, like home hardening and those pieces, is there like a, I think we talked about this in my briefing, and Bruce has mentioned before, you know, using our volunteer sheriff's service to do, supplement our sheriff's service here in town. Is there any thought and possibility to using or creating a firefighting force of retired firefighters or volunteer firefighters who we could put together to do that so that we don't have to look at any FTEs involved in that at all?
If we're talking about the education piece, Marie and I have actually talked about having our CERT program, once we get it going, be able to go and educate people on defensible space and home hardening and provide information that way, and using them as volunteers for the city. And then, when it comes to the vegetation management itself, we would still need to use a contractor to actually do the cutting of the vegetation and all that. But, yeah, so, we do have other options of educating and using other additional resources to be able to offset some of those FTE abilities. I would say the one thing about that is there would be a, an inconsistency from only using those kind of personnel, right? Whether it's a CERT or some kind of volunteer sheriff or firefighter kind of thing, but it's doable. We could supplement and offset here and there. We just have to look at what that program might look like.
Okay, and you actually touched on two great points that I wanted to ask questions about anyhow. So, one was, and I think you just answered it actually, but just to make sure I ask it, you know, previously, there was a CERT program, and what changes would you make to the revised CERT? Because I know there are updates to make it more effective and more cohesive part of the Fire Department's response. What are those changes?
The biggest change that Marie hit earlier was that they weren't part of the city's volunteer program. And so, there were only certain instances where we could actually activate certain, that is during an emergency or during training. And so, I know that our CERT members also actually got frustrated with that too, because it takes a long time to get an emergency to happen, right? And then, there's only so much training and the same training that they do over and over again. So, with Marie bringing in her expertise in the CERT program and the volunteer side of that, we're going to be able to use them in different ways than we've ever been able to before, and also taking some of the liability off the city how it was in the past. So, that answer your question?
No, that's exactly what I wanted you to, thank you. And my other question, which you touched on, is it possible for the city to expand its weed abatement program? Because we outsource it to manage some of the vegetation management that we've talked about tonight in this process. Is that something we could do to offset?
I think it's doing it now.
Yeah, the fire management services that we use is already doing the vegetation management. We just have to increase that contract if we want to get more out of them.
Okay, and we can use our.
You're coordinating with our current West Coast arborists and probably Excel landscaping on roadside mitigation.
Yeah, so there's no, okay.
It already is, I think is the point.
Correct. And then, within this plan, is there, obviously, we have seen how effective and organized Fire Safe Council is. Is there any portions where we could see maybe an expansion of Fire Safe Councils out of other portions of the city? Like, I think Lucadia has an area that nobody talks about that is very high fire risk. And I'd love to have a group like these people here who are like, it is their passion, and they do it with their heart fully in it, and I'd love to see that around the city, and I wonder if that's part of this.
Yeah, the Public Health and Safety Commission brought that same point up. So, I think the Allevonheim Fire Safe Council is that model that you want to look at, right? These Fire Safe Councils that we would have in Lucadia or Cardiff or wherever a community wants to build one, we would support that and 100% collaborate with them to get that off the ground. But we need those passionate people to be the ones that run it. The Fire Department can't run the Fire Safe Council. We have a great collaboration with Sarah Lifton and the Fire Safe Council in Allevonheim. Because of the passion that her group brings, we couldn't do the heavy lifting for those groups. Now, I did recommend, and Chair Morton might be able to speak to this, that the Public Health and Safety Commission might be that avenue to go out and see if there's some passionate people out there that want to start their own Fire Safe Councils in those different communities.
Thanks for everybody who came out to speak on it, and tremendous job by the Fire Department, Public Health and Safety Commission. Obviously, there is a lot of hard work that went into this, so thank you for the presentation, and I really appreciate answering the questions.
And then, I had a couple of final points to make. First one was about order lead times. We talk about a engine, type 1 engine for Allevonheim. What's the current lead time for a fire engine type 1?
So, it depends, okay? I'm sure everyone's seen the news lately about fire engines with New York Times and then what the state is trying to do. If we are going to go out and spec our own fire engine and put all the bells and whistles that we want for our community, it's going to be between four and five years before we get one.
Okay, I just, I wanted people to understand that.
Pierce, though, does provide stock engines that are being developed every three months. And so, if we can get in there, just like the stock engine we bought for the emergency purchase for the one that was wrecked, we got that in eight months, I believe it was. So, it just depends. You have to get in line, and they're not exactly the fire engine you, so some are, I don't want to get into much vernacular, but a puck or a mid-mount pump, and so there's these different ones that we would have to wait for, like our turn on what meets our needs here in the community, but there are options.
Yeah, and we typically do a lease revenue bond so that it's less the capital, it's more the borrowing power, but I wanted to make sure everybody understood, we're talking a year cycle here or more. So, and then, could you talk about the opportunity for Safer Grants to fulfill some of these needs as an approach?
Yeah, so Safer Grant is a federal grant right now, so I think we all know where the federal grants are at the moment, but I do believe with some of our contacts in Sacramento that those grants will be coming back soon. But a Safer Grant pays for personnel, and it pays for personnel for up to three years, and then the city would have to take on the salary and benefits and all that for the employee. So, we can definitely soften the blow to our budget by using the Safer Grant.
And are there other grants for the equipment potentially?
Yes, those grants are a little bit harder to get. Usually, the equipment grants come with multi-jurisdictional collaborations, right? So, if you remember, we tried to get the SCBA's as a grant with four other fire departments, and we did not get that grant. And so, they're a little bit more competitive. We tend We tend to not get those grants here in Encinitas, but we do apply for them. We do have other grants like the UWASI grant, Shish Gap grant, the PSPS grant, other things that we use for smaller equipment. But the larger stuff like a fire engine is a little harder to get.
And then the, and by the way, I've noticed that the Vegetation Long Ranch of Santa Fe is getting much more under control, which is great. I applaud that. And I think the gradual approach has been good too. But it's trimmed back considerably from a year or two years ago. The last item I've got is next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, don't be alarmed, there will be a wildfire, a Leavenheim wildfire drill, which this is the third one. And in three years or two years, which we never had them before. So literally, our fire department coordination with other departments will be out there pulling hoses and practicing somewhere in Leavenheim. So don't worry about it. It's not a fire, hopefully.
Yeah, we have fire departments all the way from Rincon actually coming in this time. So, you know, this is my opportunity to give a plug for the North County Fire Chiefs. We have such a good relationship and the collaboration that we have with all our fire departments provides these kind of training opportunities that when we do have a large fire where we're going to be calling in our friends, our neighbors to come in, we're all playing on the same sheet of music. We all have the same radio channels, operations are the same. We know what we're doing and we've been in each other's areas. We also have the County Wildland Drill coming up in May, which is an even larger San Diego County event that has SDGNE, all the emergency managers show up, CAL FIRE, all the different jurisdictions for the fire departments are there. So it's just a testament to how far we've come since those 2005, 2007 and making mistakes and now being more proactive in front of these wildfires.
Good. Okay, I'll yield to Councilmember San Antonio.
Just a couple more questions. So I just want to say that Leavenheim Fire Safe Council, I mean, I attended the event at the meeting hall and it was such a.
Such a wealth of information. The table of, the table that had all the information on it, that was so helpful. I just grabbed a bunch of stuff. I brought it to my parents because, you know, not that old people can't figure out a cell phone, but to what you guys wrote in your, in your staff report or the gap report or gap analysis is that, you know, it's hard to get that information, but when you have it in front of you, you just put it in a folder, put it away, something happens, you pick it up. And I can see why and how important to have that information at hand and easily available. So, and I, you really are passionate. I have talked to Sarah Lifton a few times and I can feel the passion when she talks about how important it is. You know, we live in Valserano, so it's like you can see that the equus trees are right up at people's, the ones that face the preserve or the creek, they face those trees. So I can only imagine what the fear they must have. And in our backyard, equus trees as well, we're surrounded. So throughout the report, I saw just, Leavenheim was mentioned quite a bit. You know, I can tell that, I know when we went on our, kind of our drive-through through Dove Hollow and everywhere else, I could tell that it was such a pretty unique spot. I mean, you know, you've got county land butted up to us on the back end and just the surrounding vegetation, the trees, the big trees, the old growth trees. To what Brad said, I don't know a lot about the trees. So maybe I would attend one of those meetings. But it is such a high fire danger out there. And I know that if it starts out there and starts working its way, depending on which wind, the wind direction is, it's headed up to Village, up the hill and up to Village Park or possibly down into Manchester. It's such a huge deal. Is there, I guess, is there any way that I could make a motion to make, to see if we could get a cost analysis of three firefighters and make it an action item?
Three firefighters?
Yeah, three, well, you know, three firefighters and a type one out there, an action item for, before the budget?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that was the intent of having this item and.
Yeah, I just, I didn't want it to go without saying that we really need it. And I'd love it if we could at least get it in before the budget.
Add it to the calculator, so to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I would say along with what it would take to get a, well, as one-line item. Yeah. And, and in fact, would it be possible maybe to get each one of these of the recommendation laid out so we can consider them at our next budget hearing?
Yeah, that would be great.
So we get them more dollarized, right?
That's definitely something I feel that Encinitas is lacking, particularly just the response times alone. Just with that patrol that, I mean, you can see the need. And if we have to wait for, you know, a type one to come in, I mean, there's not a whole lot two firefighters can do. But I know that if we can get a three-man engine out there, that would be.
And I would, the other comment I would make, if you don't mind, would be that this doesn't have to be a budget item per se, although I appreciate putting it on the menu for the next budget hearing. Many of these could be financed through, you know, the fire station through additional borrowing, which is one reason the borrowing capacity showed up in the report today during the budget hearing. And then the grants is the other option. So there's more than one way to figure out how to pay for these things and we will look at multiple. But I think having this report in front of us is a huge step forward.
Yeah, very helpful. And it was great to get in front of everybody, online watching and people that are here, so.
Yep, and then one more question, just, I mentioned it earlier. What do you guys, there's three drones in the city. What are we doing with those drones and how are we using them?
I think the last good example of what we did is we had a small fire off of, over by Swamis, right off the cliff there. And we were able to fly the drone up, look at for all the hot spots and have direct attack to the hot areas so that we know that, it's got thermal imaging camera on it, so we can see where all the heat is coming from. I'm able to put it out. To your point earlier about the vegetation and dry areas, IT does have a contract with a plane that flies over and gives us tons of information on vegetation. And I'd be happy to share that with you later so you can see what that looks like. And you can add some additional comments to that if you wanted to add something to it.
I just, I just think that for how severe we are right now with Leavenheim being right up next to Alvin Forest and then so forth and so on, for us to be able to have our own program that when we feel necessary, that we don't have to call up and get the plane to come, the whole thing to be really like we're going into the summer months that we're ahead of it. Again, a weekly route that just, it flies the same 45 minutes every single time. It gets you waypoints that are specific and we get a, there might be stuff that we're not seeing over the course of time and that time lapse from, you know, 12, 15 weeks of summer type thing that we see through the danger part of October, starting now to October. You know, daylight savings, daylight savings, it might be beneficial one year to the next to see what the similarities are or whatever that looks like.
We could look at that. The one of the things we would have to purchase is a LiDAR for it. And then I'd have to work with the city attorney to make sure that all of our privacy laws and all that kind of stuff are being followed.
Yeah, I think that's the part of the route is that you're not, you're not flying for specific houses or anything that you're flying, you could basically fly streets with the idea that you're just getting a broad cover of what, and with the LiDAR, like you said, you're looking for a very specific vegetation. Yeah, so, yeah.
So Mayor, can, is that consensus for the direction or did you want to do?
I think all we need is consensus there, right? To get it back for the budget and make sure that gets to finance so they know.
So the consensus I have is direction to staff to prepare or to prepare and provide funding needs for the recommendations as presented to be included in budget consideration.
As options on the budget, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, with that, are there any other comments? I don't see any, so great report, we accept it. And we'll move on to item 10D. Oh, did we have, oh, I'm sorry, wait, before I move, did you?
No, we did, we did a motion to go till 11:00.
Yeah, we did. So I agree, good point. Okay, I've got a first and a second. And do you want to say midnight or 11:30?
Midnight, midnight.
Midnight, okay, just to save the time. Until we get it done, no, I won't make you stay till midnight. So, okay, so motion second, call a question? Luke. Thanks. Midnight. But hopefully sooner. Okay, so now we'll move on to item 10D, which is the emergency declaration for D Street. Staircase Beach Access Closure and Repairs and contact person, Senior Engineer Stryker.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'll, Ben Stryker, Senior Engineer and CIP. I'll give a quick sort of elevator pitch, staff report for sake of time here.
Thank you.
Early April, a regular inspection with engineering, building, Parks and Rec staff as well as an engineering consultant took a look at the D Street staircase structure for an upcoming capital project for various repair elements. There were some very concerning observations that showed significant deterioration of the steel elements, keeping all of the timber components together. So severe to the, to the effect of the reduction of sort of redundant design features that keep the staircase upright. Collaborating with city manager's office and the various departments, the determination was made for public safety to close it. And for sake of time to begin repairs as soon as practicable, the city manager declared a local emergency. And this report is what we have to do per the municipal code.
Thank you. And my comment, the pictures were worth 1,000 words each. I thought they really showed the degradation, so. And that's all in the report. Appreciate the report, appreciate the declaration. What do we need to do? Anybody want to, no, in the interest of time, do we need to do anything? Let's see, action? Receive it, okay. Consider it received and we will get, I guess, the only update I would look for is a timeline to get quotes, get the work done and get it open by summer or sooner?
So we do have the quote as presented in our budget workshop today. It was a million dollars. So we will, I will ask staff to work with the consultant, the engineer and the contractor to get us a timeline of when we can start those repairs, how long they will be, and then when we can get that access open.
Can we throw in there what options we have to expedite to if, if in order to get it opened in time for summer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Receive the report.
Yeah. With that, I think we are done with item 10D. Sorry to keep you here so late, but thank you. And we will move on to 12A. I guess what, 11, we didn't have any, so we're on to 12A, which is council-initiated, initiated item by Councilmember O'Hara aimed at creating a safer and affordable solution to public concerns at the intersection of Higia Avenue and Lucadia Boulevard. And with that, I will turn it over to Councilmember O'Hara.
I think that's all I was going to start with. This is aimed at creating a safer and affordable solution to public concerns intersection of Higia Avenue and Lucadia Boulevard. I would like staff to explore the redesign of the intersection at Higia Avenue and Lucadia Boulevard. It is a four-way stop that includes four new crosswalks with the east and west crosswalks across Lucadia Boulevard that is designed to include RRFB lighted crosswalks and pedestrian refuge islands. I've got a lot to dive into it on, but I know that there's a lot of public comments. I'm going to leave it there and let, leave it open for public comment.
Okay, how many public speakers do we have?
We have three and the odd type donations.
Okay, let's do public speakers.
The first speaker is Farhad Mahmudi with time donation from Brad Lefkowitz, followed by Chris Ryan with time donation from Diana Nunez, and then Tony Krantz with time donation from June Hansberger and Scott Chatfield. And all the time donators are present.
Okay.
All right. Hi, Mayor Ellers, City Council, nice to see you all. I'm up here actually because normally we see a lot of interesting things going on during public comment, a lot of people throwing data around, sometimes very, I'd say expressively or creatively. And, you know, everyone has the right to say what they want during public comment. And sometimes kind of in the back of my mind, I think, okay, well, that's an interesting way to interpret the data or present it or whatever else. Yesterday, I was looking through the agenda items that we had for this, and actually 12A here that we're going to be talking about, and seemed like a pretty standard agenda item. Checked the public comment and saw that one of our mobility commissioners had mentioned that roundabouts are six times less safe than four-way street crossings, which raised my eyebrows. That seemed fairly extreme, right? So I decided to kind of take a look at where we might have gone to get to that point. So looking through the comments that were made a couple of weeks ago, I noticed that we had somebody come and present some data, put in front of us this particular slide, which while I appreciate that we have coding for roundabouts being circles and Higia being a four-way stop with an octagon on it, there's no further contextualization of any of where that data comes from. In the actual comment, he mentioned that comes from SWITTERS, which is the standard kind of reporting that we see on a year-over-year basis from law enforcement in terms of collision data. But there's no citation there, there's no context around it. And in the time period that's been given to us, 13 years, this averages out to, you know, maybe one or two collisions per year. So I don't know how that got to six times less safe for a roundabout versus a four-way stop. So I figured, why not take some time to actually look into that a little bit? So luckily, just a quick search online showed me that we have a couple of websites readily available to the public that will actually model out SWITTERS data for you. On the left, you have a screenshot of what Sandag offers us. It has a more limited timeframe. It only goes up to actually, I think, 2022, 2023. On the right, you have an interesting kind of GIS overlay project from UC Berkeley that maps collisions that specifically have injuries, which is kind of an additional context that I want to put around that, right? That it's only going to show you injury collisions, not the full scope of all of the collisions that are out there. So digging into that a little bit, and you can kind of see in the small numbers here, we can see clusters of collision data tied to those three intersections. And the numbers are close to what was actually presented, but slightly different. The Sandag data, which is more comprehensive, shows us, you know, 11 collisions and 10 collisions of the two roundabouts and seven at the four-way stop, which fairly close to the information that we saw before. We'll get back to the Tims data, which shows the injury collisions only, but it also highlights something that's fairly important, which is the actual number of injuries that we're getting from the collisions at these different intersections. Jumping forward, zooming in on what was, and this took me like 15, 20 minutes to go through, right? So it's something that is readily available to everybody. You can go online and investigate this data. And I recommend everybody do that when they see things that maybe raise their eyebrows. So just clicking on those clusters, it's a little hard to see, but you'll notice that there's zero injury data reported on either of the roundabout intersections, but we have injury data reported at the Higia four-way stop. Now, that's also limited, again, data is limited. And you can see that it's only reporting back pedestrian and bicyclist injuries. So in my mind, I was like, well, what about injuries to the people that are actually driving or passengers in the cars, right? We're not getting that information. So we kind of dug into this as much as we could. We can see that there's more injury collisions that are taking place at the Higia four-way stop than at the roundabouts, but we're not getting a complete picture. So we need to investigate a little bit further. That's where the Tims data comes in. So when you switch over to that database, which only is reporting on injury collisions, and I highlighted in the little blue in each of these little pop-ups, you can see that there's two collision, or two injury collisions at the Hermes Roundabout, two injury collisions at the High Medis Roundabout, four at the Higia four-way stop, and this is going back to 2013. So while you have less collisions at the four-way stop, you have a higher incidence of injuries. And this is all a really small sample size, right? So when you get to this small an amount of data, the easier thing to do than try to aggregate the numbers is to simply look at the actual case files for each of these. And so the summary of these is fairly illustrative, right? At the Hermes Roundabout, you have a cyclist who was riding under the influence and ran into a parked car is one of the injury collisions. And you have a rear-end vehicle collision. At the four-way stop, you have a DUI of a vehicle hitting a pedestrian. You have a broadside vehicle collision. You have a sideswipe vehicle collision. And then you have DUI head. broadside vehicle collision, you have a sideswipe vehicle collision, and then you have DUI head-on collision at the intersection. So slightly more dangerous outcomes, I would say. And then at the High Medis roundabout, you have DUI broadside vehicle collision, and you have a vehicle running into a fixed object. So digging into the data a little bit, all publicly information source, publicly available information sources that you can get to kind of illustrates some pretty important lessons in terms of how we want to interpret our data. And that's taking proper interpretation practices and when you see things that kind of, I'm, I'm shortening this a little bit because we only got thirty seconds here, but making sure that you properly look for salient themes and issues in your data when things kind of stand out in a way that is not necessarily intuitive is an important thing to do in terms of how we're going to actually present this type of safety information back to our population, right? And I did want to look up a fun little quote to close on here. Funny enough, even though this is attributed to Mark Twain, when you actually investigate it further, it's misattributed because of poor data analysis and people actually looking at the frequency of using those words. So thank you very much. Hopefully that's helpful.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, council members. Great to see you all so late in the evening. I'm here to talk again about the Lucadia-Higia roundabout, and thank you for that presentation. I really appreciated it. And I just want to hit in a couple of points. As we all know, I've been heard before talk about it, it's twenty-three years and counting. Through my slides, I have illustrated who were mayor and city council members throughout this project, because I think it's important to understand this is not a one group of people project. This is a twenty-three years of city council and planning commissioners all agreeing that a roundabout is the best solution for this intersection. If you could change slides, please. So just want to highlight, these are just a few pictures that I've taken recently and one a little bit older of what our neighborhood looks like. I've lived in the neighborhood for over twenty-three years, about twenty-five years. There have been no improvements basically on Lucadia Boulevard besides the two roundabouts in twenty-three years, and particularly near this intersection and at Fulvia, there's no sidewalks, no complete sidewalks on either side of the street. This project, this, that is shovel-ready, includes complete sidewalks, so people can walk down one side of the road all the way from the freeway to the 101, and they don't have to cross to safely walk down Lucadia Boulevard in either way. There's no protected bike lanes, and there's very little landscaping. Frankly, it's a very neglected road through our city, and Lucadia Boulevard is the pathway taking people from the beach to the freeway and beyond, and it looks neglected, and it is not something when I drive down, I can feel proud about our city about. And I think a lot of other people that live in our neighborhood feel the same way. I basically, please change slides, thank you. So basically this, I hit on this a couple of weeks ago about the different phasing of the projects. Twenty-seven, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, the first two phases of the first two roundabouts of the three were funded and completed, twenty nineteen, ready to go by planning commission, and in twenty twenty-four, when the money was re-appropriated from the roundabout, when it was ready to be built in twenty twenty-four. Going to talk a little bit about some facts. So the reason that the, this roundabout has had sustained support from multiple city councils is because roundabouts are the right thing for this particular intersection. And going to talk a little bit about some of the places I went, just to learn a little bit more about roundabouts. One is the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety, who talks about how, and that's a nonprofit scientific and educational organization dedicated to reducing deaths, injuries and property damage from motor vehicle crashes through research and evaluation and through education of consumers, policymakers and safety professionals. And they tell us that roundabouts are safer than traffic signals and stop signs, the tight circles of roundabouts forces drivers to slow down, and the most severe types of intersection crashes, right angle, left turn and head-on collisions are unlikely. They improve traffic flow and better for the environment, generally safer for pedestrians. Pedestrians walk on sidewalks around the perimeter and cross only one direction of traffic at a time. Crossing distances are relatively short and traffic speeds are slower than traditional intersections. In addition, the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration also agrees roundabouts are proven safety countermeasures because they can substantially reduce crashes that result in serious injury or death. Roundabouts improve safety, promote lower speeds and traffic calming, reduce conflict points and lead to improved operational performance. On average, roundabouts reduce severe crashes, those resulting in injury or loss of life by seventy-eight to eighty-two percent. Even the AARP, which some of you may be members of, roundabouts eliminate the need to make left-hand turns, which are challenging for many drivers. They reduce the risk of head-on and right-angle crashes. They handle thirty to fifty percent more traffic and thus reduce traffic delays. They feature lower, safer speeds, require drivers to slow down and reduce the risks to pedestrians, drivers and bikers. Islands allow pedestrians and bikers, they, to stop and also only need to watch one direction of travel at a time. Roundabouts are consistent with our climate action plan, which I've talked about before. So now I'm going to pivot to what is a representative democracy. I have some concerns about what I've seen at city council, and so I want to talk about this. It's a system of government where citizens elect representatives to make decisions and govern on their behalf rather than voting directly on the issues. The advantages: efficiency, expertise, stability and representation of diverse interests. Risks: lack of direct citizen participation, potential for corruption, influence of special interests, accountability challenges and slow decision-making. And I bring this up because this is a representative democracy that we have in Encinitas. All of you represent all of the people of Encinitas, not special interest groups, not those who you believe voted for you or advocated for you when you were running for your position, but all the people of the city of Encinitas, including those in Northwest Lucadia, including those who have been advocating for a roundabout for over twenty-three years. One more question, who are the usual suspects? Are they people or things you would expect to present somewhere doing a particular thing? Are they people, often scapegoats routinely arrested in response to a crime? Are they a nineteen ninety-five Academy Award-winning movie? Or are they citizens like me and like others that are here with me and have been in front of you before, who continue to work and advocate for our community? Do we want to be here at ten-thirty at night advocating? Do we want to have to come back for twenty-three years? No, but here we are again, and what we ask is that you do not redirect this project to a four-way stop, but continue to try to find the funds for the roundabout, as has been promised to Lucadia. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the presentations that we've seen so far tonight. They definitely are more focused on the roundabout project than this proposal that has come out of nowhere. And I think that it's, it's important that we understand the history before we decide on what to do next. So as she pointed out, this project, this roundabout project started in roughly the turn of the century. And the community got very engaged. The city hired experts Stan Burden and Michael Wallwork, who is an Aussie, which has roundabouts everywhere, and he came and sat at this, at the staff table and made presentations more than once about the benefits of roundabouts. And the community was sold, most people. It's not unanimous, you're representative democracy, but I think the results of those conversations proved that an elected body agreed that roundabouts were the right way to treat Lucadia Boulevard, High Medis, Higia, Hermes. And so we celebrated because we loved it. We knew it was going to be good for our community. I, myself, as a resident of Higia, knew that finally the people that lived on Hermes and High Medis would stop coming to Higia and driving so that they could take advantage of the four-way stop, because they didn't have any stop sign. They had a two-way stop. So they got their two roundabouts, but oddly enough, especially the people on Hermes, still come to Higia. And they will probably do that until we get the roundabout. So with that history being so long ago, we now have representative democracy with people that really have no clue about the history and how much went into making these decisions, and how many consecutive councils agreed that roundabouts were the right thing for Lucadia Boulevard. And in fact, it carried over to the streetscape on Highway 101. There are roundabouts there because the community agreed, a majority of the community agreed that it was the right thing to do. So lots of things went on in the twelve years that I served on the council. I tried not to be too aggressive trying to get that roundabout built, because it would look like a homer. I would look like a homer. I was trying to make things better in my neighborhood. But there was always an effort to get it funded and built, never happened. There were priorities. So in the meantime, we now have a situation where we get to last month, there's a grant opportunity, there's staff recommendation for applying for a grant for that project. And as we've seen tonight, this council doesn't mind ignoring what staff recommends. And it was a shock to me and my neighbors, the, the friends who I made in support of this project, that it wasn't on the list. Terrible mistake. It's the project that has the greatest chance of winning. Yes, I'm living free in Rachel's brain, and she's kicking me around, she's kicking me around in, in oral communication today. I did say that the two projects you applied for have a snowball's chance of winning. I also said, if they do, which I hope they do, I will come and eat my hat. And I'll have my wife make a very special hat that's edible so that, but I'll take three minutes and I'll eat it. So we get to that meeting in March, and I've got some video here. I've got a video clip.
The Higia roundabout, I couldn't agree more with the, I think when the, the Higia roundabout first came out, I'm not sure if the other two are already in works, because I wasn't around for that, but it just seems like now that we already have two on either side of that intersection, that intersection is now uniquely different. Before, when it was, you know, before the other two had been done, and, because how long ago was the Higia?
Yeah, and they were originally proposing together, but the, the budget limit took one out.
Yeah, so, but now that you have, you do have, still have two, one at High Medis and one at Hermes, so it does make a difference in calming that area already. And then, like we mentioned, the, the gentleman there waving does get your attention. Whether he's standing out or not, he gets your attention, that that's the time of day the kids are coming out. He's usually out there early and he stays there late, so I mean, you know, good on him, right? He's, he's heaven sent to kind of really protect those, those kids going off the beaten path.
Okay, that's enough. Thank you. Two-thirds of the project don't make it. That's not the way it was intended to work. There's SEQA, there's coastal development permission, permit issues if this, you know, suddenly becomes, oh, it's an hallway stop in the middle of these two roundabouts. You represent me. I live in District One, and I would ask that you please be better prepared the next time there's going to be an item that is so important to the community. That would be really great, because that was not impressive. And I know that when this planning was going on, you were probably in Iraq or college or something, and so you missed all the history, but there's a bunch of people here happy to tell you the story about how it all came about. Okay, I've got some more pictures. If we can do the crash photos, please. Yep, so this is the center-left turn lane right by 7-Eleven. There are two lanes of traffic, vehicles coming out of 7-Eleven. They can't always see who's coming down the center-left turn lane. Next slide, that's my car. Traffic on Lucadia Boulevard sucks. Fifteen thousand cars a day, people coming from Temecula to come to our beaches on Lucadia Boulevard, traffic sucks. Next slide. Hey, there's a permanent object that became unpermanent because somebody couldn't drive through a roundabout. Okay. Next would be that picture, the next photo? There it is. That's why there's rear-end collisions in that intersection. Traffic backs up all the way into it. It's crash data. So Hermes, one injury in all of those crashes. The white cells are all of the ones that happened in the intersection. The other four didn't even happen in the intersection, just like mine didn't happen in the intersection. Next slide. Higia. All but one were injuries. Next slide. High Medis, a lot of accidents, a lot of DUIs. It's a terrible intersection because people trying to make all the green lights come fifty miles an hour past Orpheus. Next, we will go to the staff report. You make a bunch of assertions in the staff, in your report that just aren't true. You went with Carl's Bed dude's data, and it sucked. We dug into it, he's totally wrong. That last, go to this slide here. It's pretty funny how you hatched in a couple more, a couple more crosswalks there. I know, I got a public records request, and I know that Abe gave you one with two crosswalks and the, the north, the east-west are, are hatched in by you. Kind of silly. A terrible design, should not be two, even Abe, two is bad. Next set of pictures, screen grabs, screen. There it is. This is just chaos. More, 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 more crosswalks is bad. Although I will give you one good crosswalk would be the northeast corner to the northwest corner. That's a good crosswalk, because we don't want people crossing on the east side of the road. Go to the next picture. They don't have anywhere to land. This is not going to be improved. Next slide. That side of the street sucks. There's no sidewalk there. So we want people to cross at, on the north side of the Lucadia Boulevard at Higia and use the one crosswalk. Don't try and straighten it out, because you'll save two seconds from the pedestrians, but you know, that's Carbrain. Carbrain at its worst. This is a terrible idea. It's lipstick on a pig. How about we build the roundabout when, when the money is available?
That concludes.
Okay, thank you. And council member Schaefer.
Yeah, I just want to say I, I appreciate the public comment, I really do. Fact of the matter is, is I just came from Australia for two weeks, and I've been there for twelve weeks at one point. I, I think we're missing a point on roundabouts. Roundabouts is a systematic approach to traffic. Right now, in America, we've chosen the stoplight, stop, stop sign model. And other parts of the world, they use a, a systematic approach to the way that they drive in a roundabout model. So in certain parts of, let's say like Noosa Heads, they don't have but more than five stoplights. The entire city is predicated and developed around the roundabout. Here, in this city, we are a stop sign, stoplight community. So if we're going to go to a roundabout way of living, then we need to change the entire source of the way we do things to make it, make, make sense. You saw the traffic that you just put up. It just proved our point. You proved the point that the, the, the light at Lucadia Boulevard and 101 and the light at the freeway are causing those issues, has nothing to do with the stop sign. They're already slowed down by the time they get to Higia. Do you not get that? By the time that they get there, that they're already slowed down and the four-way stop does actually get them to stop. So to have an extra, in this case, extra crosswalks where people can safely, yes, move to the other side of the street to move east and west is just fine, for the time being. For fourteen million dollars that we do not have, and I'm sorry, but your twelve years up here was wasted not getting it done. So you want to sit here and talk about it, we're looking for ways to make it happen. And I'm going to tell you right now, you talked about a sales tax, and I did oppose it because I didn't trust the people that were up here at the time. Fact. So at this point, I would appreciate having that extra money, because I think that we would do right with, by it and by the people. I just don't think the people trusted the people that were up here to do that, so.
Council member O'Hara.
Sure. I'm going to go through the whole thing. I'm just going to start off. So twenty-three years, it was, it's been said twenty-three years that the Higia-Lucadia intersection has been a discussion, a topic piece, with the original design being a roundabout. I can, I, I've, I've been watching it for years and years and years, these discussions. In fact, I was here on June twelfth, when residents got up and asked council to fund it and keep it in the plan, and I was there when they voted, the council voted almost unanimously no. no. And so I watched that, I looked at it. They wanted to keep the funding of the roundabout in Higia-Lucadia and denied multiple times. To me, I was involved in this, and maybe people don't realize this, from day one, one of the first things I did was I identified a very important school route because I'd heard about it here at city council so many times. And that was Higia to Sirius to High Meadows to Paul Eche. Since getting in office, I did a traffic study. It was one of the first things I met with, I have met with several people, several residents of Higia and High Meadows to talk about this very challenging section of road that gets kids to school. And as you've mentioned, you all take your kids to school there. As a parent, I think that's a really important, important thing that we do. So how do we make this safer? I looked at this. I did a speed study with a trailer, and it came back that we didn't think anybody was speeding on there. And I decided that I don't think that was conclusive. I think people saw the trailer and they slowed down. So what did I do? I put the sheriffs out there to check on people. We did a second study that hasn't come back yet to look at that. I had them paint 20 miles per hour on the road. I went the extra mile. This isn't a stunt. This isn't me trying to get back re-elected or get my friends into office. This is me getting up here protecting kids going to school. So I went farther than that. I said, I looked at everything that happened. The intersection is, is even part of three intersections, traveling east to west in Lucadia. It's located between two roundabouts. I looked at the stats. I saw different stats going around here that didn't match each other tonight, and so we can, we can say that. But I know at this point, the stats don't show a conclusively big difference. And that currently, what I have, what I have in front of me is I have someone who took their kids to school there for at least eight years, which is about, what, 1,500 trips to school safely. I have a video that was presented here of kids riding their bike with their family to the intersection, everybody stopping, you know, like going through like a happy parade to the other side. It was a joyful moment to watch after, it was amazing. I'm very glad you brought it in, it was fantastic. How do we keep the kids feeling safe like that? How do we keep the next kids who are going to be out there for eight years safe? This roundabout keeps coming back. It keeps getting shot down for a lot of reasons, and I'll go back to that. The arguments for institution, institution of highway safety, I looked at that. I took a long look at that, actually, and it does, it does talk about how roundabouts are safer. But just like anything else, when you say broad stroking things that cover everything, they don't. Broad stroking things cover most things, but not everything. And in here, we don't have the statistics to prove that broad stroke, but broad strokes are going to cover this. So I took the data that I saw that said it was at least one-to-one, and I believe it's probably closer to two-to-one as we saw. And I also looked at this idea of that this is often compared to Wind and Sea, the three roundabouts at Wind and Sea. Well, those roundabouts were put in to create flow. They were put in to necessarily add safety to kids getting to school, they were put in to create flow. I actually, as people had reached out and said, hey, would you look at all the roundabouts in the city and include all the data? I said, no, I'm not going to because I know the data on the roundabout El Portal is people getting in accidents after they go to bars. That's, I'm not going to include them. So I tried to be fair, I included the two intersections that are right next to it that are part of the same series. The traffic on that street is, that creates, is created by Vulcan and the five. And it lines up in between whether we put a roundabout there or whether we put a stop sign, and that's not going to change. So circling back in all this, safety is a strong concern of the community. It's your concern. You mentioned it. You mentioned, listen, I did. That's why I came up with this. I listened to all of my, all of my members up here on council, I listened to the neighbors, I listened to staff. Safety is the number one thing we say, we hear is the most important thing. So if safety is the number one component, what is the challenge of the intersection and what has kept it from getting built? It's one thing, cost. Simply comes down to what it costs. I think you even said it just now, when we have the money. So this is, this is about how do we make the cost effective to provide safety for our kids, safety for our families, safety for our adults, safety for our pedestrians, our cyclists, and our vehicles. And the obstacle is always cost. With that grant that people were going after, we were still going to have to pay 1.2 to $2 million roughly by, it was all taken care of somewhere in that ballpark. I didn't see that in the, in the money we had tonight to budget. So we got that grant, what are we going to do? We can't build it. So I decided instead of doing this, I was looking at a solution. That's how we got to here. We got to the solution of how do we design, or can we ask staff? And could you put the solution up, please? The diagram attachment one, please? Thank you. How do we create a solution that is an option? We're not voting to do this tonight. We're saying the option that's available to us keeps getting shot down because it seems to like the impossible dream that keeps getting farther and farther away. So let's make something, let's, let's create a solution. That's what we're supposed to do up here, create solutions that allow us to have the opportunity to address safety. And yeah, I did pen, I did pen in the extra crosswalk. I penned in the extra crosswalk because June Hansberger sent me an email saying four crosswalks that were very important. I have a copy of the email. You have a copy of the email, Tony. So I, so I did, I penciled them in because I was listening to the residents who were writing to me telling me what they wanted, what they needed in this intersection. The four intersections and the four crosswalks, the east-west, and why I put it on both sides was because of the video I saw of people using their bicycles. And I figured, I didn't want people to cross over returning home from school to go against traffic on the other side. So I'd put this, this crosswalk here, hopefully they get off their bike, they walk their bike through it, they may or may not, but that's up to them. But now they can walk across this intersection, they can stop in the middle because we've put a pedestrian island in there. I'd actually like to see this designed with a six-foot island, I think that, that studies show that that's a little bit better. But that's a matter of torquing. And this is why what we want to do is design it, something that's safer, a less expensive option, send it to staff so they can take it six-foot, see if we can fit a six-foot island in there. But basically, we've got this opportunity to address all the options of safety that I heard that were really important. The island in the middle so that you're not crossing two, two lanes at one time. It gives the cyclist the opportunity to go up and down the street. As for the sidewalk on the south side of the street, I believe mitigation fees are coming that are going to help with that. So I feel confident that that will, that will fall into line with all of this at some point. So I think this is a great idea to have in our back pocket, and that's all it is. I'm not saying a roundabout wouldn't be great or a roundabout wouldn't, wouldn't be, I don't think a roundabout's going to happen. So since I don't think it's going to happen, let's design something that we think at some point we might be able to afford. And this comes in, I think it will come in, and we're going to find out when it's finally designed, for under a million dollars. And I know we can find that somewhere at some point. So safety is my priority. And this provides safety for your kids, for any families, cyclists, pedestrians. It creates a much safer situation than we have right now, and we can get it sooner as opposed to never. So I'm going to, I'm going to take comments on this or questions from my council members, and I'm going to motion to run this, to ask staff to look at this, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to hop in here now. First of all, I'm glad we're actually discussing this in public, not in emails and not in back rooms. This is, this is a great way to do it. I mean, this is why we have public meetings. It's interesting, I think, and this is getting 23 years ago, I think, Chris, you missed one of my meetings. I think I was on the original planning commission that approved the three roundabouts. I remember the details of it from back then, it was a long time ago. You caught the second round on the planning commission where we, we did the two, I believe. So, and Farhad, I really appreciate your, your attention to the detail of the over, over extrapolating, very, very limited data. I would, I would say the same thing about the data that everybody showed tonight. Numbers are so small, one or two here throws it off. I think, I think there's a bigger question about conclusive data that I'd like to bring back some point so that we all get on the same page of how, what the utility of, is of roundabouts and where, where they belong. I think you hear me say all the time up here about if your only tool is a hammer, everything begins to look like a nail. And I want to make sure we're applying roundabouts where the roundabout data says they, they work in Southern California. Let's see, so I want to talk a little bit about, if you can put up the graphic with the red, the, yeah, that. So I actually, for now, would not want to move forward with the southern crosswalk or the eastern crosswalk because there's literally no sidewalk over there on, on that either side of the southeast corner. I do have a problem with taking that angled white crosswalk and moving it over, and that comes down to you're moving the stop sign, the stop line back to the west, probably a full car length, and that is going to hide the traffic coming from the side streets. And I think you really need to be up there. So I would look for the traffic engineer, if we analyze it, to come back and analyze whether that is feasible like that. I do like the addition, it sounds like, I think everybody likes the addition, even on a temporary basis of putting in that northern east-west crosswalk. I think that might make that overall intersection safer. It would also encourage people to use the three corners that have sidewalk attachments to them, just even if, even if it's temporary. And, you know, I, I'm still committed to see if we can find funding, not general fund funding for the most part, but find funding or grants for a roundabout, although if we could, if staff were to come back and tell me based on data, based on statistically valid roundabout performance data, that one way, that roundabout is safer or not safer than, than the modified crosswalk, then I'll, I'll listen to whatever data you bring. But bring data. What was it, in God, in God we trust, all of those, bring data, right? That's classic engineering saying. So let's see. I do have to agree that for 23 years, councils have not put this in the priority test, which we all, you know, that's what we're up here doing, priority this, priority that. We all want to make everything safer, but it has fallen below the threshold for a long time. And, and I don't expect a miracle that suddenly it's going to be the top priority. There are a lot of critical, we have people walking in the street quite a few places. And, and like I say, it was the planning commission that actually sent a memo back to the city council in 2017 or 18 saying, hey, we really need to add the sidewalk on the south side. And the council immediately responded with, yeah. And they added that million dollars to this project. So I don't want to spend money on analyzing too much, but I would be interested in seeing real data. That, that's where I am right now. Thank you. I'll yield to Councilmember San Antonio.
I'm not going to claim that I am an expert at this. I don't know anything about this. What I know is what Jim said, is that if you just want to look at safety and numbers, not the crash data or, but the numbers meaning money, I mean, if this comes in under a million dollars, I'm, what would I say? I mean, it's, that's a significant amount, less than 6.2 million dollars or whatever the high amount was for the roundabout. But, I mean, you know, like I said, if this is just, we're talking about, talking about the design and talking about if this is a viable option, I mean, I would be, that wouldn't be smart of me just to be like, oh, I'm just going to blow it off because that's, one, a significant amount less, and two, it's, clearly Jim is, or Councilmember, Councilmember O'Hara's done his, some work on this, and he's done some due diligence. He's very passionate about it. Sam is, you know, Tony and you guys back there, clearly you guys are very passionate about it as well, the residents are. Like I said, I'm, I don't know the history of this roundabout. I'm not going to claim that I do. But it does, to me, it sounds like a viable option to at least look at it. Maybe to Bruce, what Bruce is saying is, yeah, maybe we don't need to spend a whole ton of money analyzing it, but just looking at it from what Jim has said, it looks like a good idea to me. And I'm happy to look at it, analyze a little bit, a little bit deeper and see where we can take it. But, and if this is a temporary option until we get, I mean, I don't, like I said, I, it doesn't seem like it's a bad idea for right now. It doesn't look like there's a significant amount of build-out or construction, you know, building a center island for kids to stand on, or kids to stop on versus a whole streetscape, sidewalk, everything, I mean, that's just, it's significant, so.
Can I throw in one, one option? This might help. The applique approach as opposed to the concrete approach, so if you're familiar with that, is a potential island in the middle? I'm just trying to throw out a lower-cost version, another way, just as an option to
The thing that's getting lost in this conversation and maybe what people didn't pick up on is no one's throwing the roundabout out of the picture.
No.
No one's throwing the roundabout out of the, nobody said we don't want a roundabout. We're saying what's the, what's the roadblock in getting it? That's been happening for 23 years.
And to what you said, what can we do now?
So what, well, what can we, yeah, what can we have as a tool to, to, to more likely happen? I mean, are we going to be, have, if we have an idea like this that we can do for less that absolutely will increase the safety? And, and this is just a rendering, this is not a design, to your point, we would adjust things, and that would be up to staff to do that. And I think, I have confidence that they could do that, no problem. But this is, well, if we don't want to do something like this, do we want to risk sitting here 23 years from now and have it be 46 years ago? We talked about a roundabout, now it's $25 million that we don't have. All this is, is an option to say, hey, if this opportunity comes along to make this intersection safer, which is what I keep hearing this is about, this may be a way for us to do, to afford it. I mean, yeah, this is just a, it absolutely increases the safety. Everything about this is safety oriented. And then it comes at a price that we can enhance safety, which we're always looking to do, and we can fit it in our budget. I'd love to enhance safety and do all the things we can afford, and we fix all our problems at once up here at city council, and it'd be great. Not enough, not enough money in the county to fix everything we need to fix. So how do we figure out ways to, to get done what we can get done? So we figure out, tweak some projects that will actually bring it into our budget eventually or make it an option. If we get a grant, we get funding for all of it, beyond that, maybe that becomes an option. Right now, it's not an option. Right now, the option is it's a $5 million project minimum, which to me means $6 million. And this may be a lot less. So I'm sending, I'm making a motion to send it to staff to design a project based on our discussion tonight, based around this diagram that, and maybe playing with six-foot islands versus four-foot islands, and where we can get that, that square footage or where that, that, those two feet from on this. And if, if you think it's a good idea to get rid of the north and south sidewalks and the rest of council agrees, I'm not going to argue with about it. I think the main safety is the, is the east-west passage. So I'll leave that at that.
Yeah, and if I could get staff, just, I want to give you a chance to ask any questions. Abe, yeah. So before we, I have a couple more speakers and, but, so you hear what's being asked, is that something you feel you could analyze and come back and, and give us an agenda item report on options, approximate costs, and, and what else, Jim? Anything?
I think we're just looking for the design adjustments. You wanted to adjust that crosswalk, if we can include that in this design? And then just what it costs, so we can file it as, okay, if we have an opportunity to do this, to make it safer, this is one of our two options.
Yeah, and it could be an interim option, too.
Possibly, yeah.
I just wanted to give staff a chance to comment about what you're hearing and.
Appreciate it, Mayor. I mean, it's 11:30 and I tend to talk too much, so I'm still going to say whatever I wanted to say, but I'll do it faster. First, I did hear a lot of conversation about roundabouts versus always stop signs. The documents from FHWA, from the history of roundabouts in the country is very, very clear that roundabouts are safer. There's no questions about it. We're not talking about three individual intersections in NCDS, we're talking about all the data that's available, and the number is, number is huge. It's between 75% and 80%. Multiple studies show roundabouts compared to signals and always stops, it's about 70 to 10. It's about 70 to 80% safer. Now, obviously, when it comes to severe injuries and fatalities, the number is higher. When it comes to different lower injury collisions, the number goes a little lower. So maybe you have a 90, 95% severe injury fatality reduction and 20% property damage reduction. So the reduction in severe injury and fatalities higher. But the general, pretty much all around, all the studies having conducted Stanford, IHS, there are multiple studies and they all find. So, so we can bring more data, but, but to your question about staff bringing us something that shows which locations roundabout would be safer. Again, each individual spot would have its own, you know, concerns. Here we have two roundabouts on the two sides, one in the middle. So the safety element that will get out of roundabout will certainly be less than an individual roundabout built somewhere. But that's one.
So just so clear, I think, I think what I was asking is whether or not what's being asked here to analyze this stop sign today.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the comment about the roundabouts. That's great. But whether or not that's something that you could analyze internally and reasonably, without running up too much cost, give us an idea of, of what it would take to do this, whether it's an interim or a semi-long-term approach.
Yeah, we're, we're already started looking into this and, and we're, you know, do a, starting a preliminary design. And we can, we can certainly do that. The only thing that I'm not 100% sure if I understood, are we designing a four-legged crossing or we're just doing two legs?
I think options. I think, I mean, you could put a, the blinking light there as well. I, just what are the options of levels of safety or what we, we would look at, right? So is it two, is, is the four going to give us only a little bit more and there's no sidewalk on that northeast?
But obviously there, there will be more aesthetic impact to the drivers. There will be two parallel lines of crosswalk, two Continentals would have more impact to the drivers, more visibility. RFPs are not allowed to be used with the stop signs. So we cannot have flashing beacons. That's a mandatory no in MUTCD. But we can certainly look into the, the angled crossing that was discussed to see if it can be moved to the corner or if the way is designed on the, in the exhibit right now. Side distance, we can certainly check and we can come up with a good cost estimate. I also heard council members comment about the possibility of looking at a six footer island. On the east leg, I kind of see all the lanes are already down to 10. But we can certainly look into it to see if we can make it a six footer.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I mean, yeah, I think there's definitely, the six foot would be something like at six and four feet. I, I actually, I don't, I really, I still find function in that north crosswalk because there is a curb on both sides. There's a sidewalk coming down. Tony had a video of a guy going on a scooter around her or something like that. And you've got people crossing going north and south to the beach. So I do think a north, east, west crosswalk at some point should be included in this intersection. And why it's not there now, I don't really know. Whether there's a sidewalk there or not, I know people do come, walk down that street to go to the beach. So, so I think we should have at least one, on one side of the, on one side of this intersection, we should have a crosswalk. Whether we need all four, I would leave that to, to your expertise.
We can come up with alternatives. We can bring both.
Yeah, options, like Luke said.
Yep.
And one more thing, you know, as Tony mentioned, at some point, people are coming from Hermes up to Higia specifically to get, I believe they come up there to sequence into traffic because they're not sequencing in very well at Hermes and Jaime. So the reason they're coming there is because the roundabouts, though they work so great, they don't work so great for people trying to sequence in sometimes, especially in heavy flow of traffic. Case in point, you just, you just made my point. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's easier to get into traffic and cross into traffic when.
Yeah.
It's my point. Thank you. Appreciate it. Keep going.
So.
And, and I can hop in on that because that's one of the reasons we didn't opt for pursuing roundabouts in Leavenhein. When you have an extremely high flow in one direction, you can't, you can lose guaranteed access from the cross street in, in low volume flow. And that's the one thing a stop sign, if you talk to the traffic engineers, they'll tell you, stop signs guarantee access. So I think that could be part of the explanation there. Quite frankly, this is part of the analysis I'd like to hear is why are people on Hermes coming over and using Higia? I think, I think it could be one of any, one of the number of reasons, but I'd look for the expert opinion on what's happening with the traffic flow.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Ultimately, this, again, this is back to just getting an option so that my kid's not up here someday or sitting in the audience, whatever, wherever, asking him where, when the roundabout is going to happen. So this is just an opportunity to get a.
So before we get a second, can I just clarify the motion?
Okay.
Councilmember O'Hara, so what I have is to direct staff to return to the city council with design options for the intersection at Higia Avenue and Locadia Boulevard as a four-way stop that includes two to four crosswalks and pedestrian refuge islands?
Correct, yes. And I think we wanted to look at a four and a six foot on the pedestrian island, depending on.
And could we add concrete or the prefabbed applications as two options there to, for the island?
Cost-effective.
Yeah. One being easy to install and cheaper.
Yeah, and cost-effective timing, yeah.
What is it? Quick build, I think is what we always call them.
Yeah, as long as that provides a level of safety. And this is all about safety. So as long as we feel that is safe, to safe enough, that'll be for engineers, engineering to decide, I guess, right? And give us that, that thought. But, yeah.
So how about if I put, and includes pedestrian refuge island options?
Perfect.
So that's, can be variety of things.
Perfect.
And I'll second.
Anybody else at 11:42? We'll call the question.
Motion carries unanimously with Deputy Mayor Lyons absent.
Okay. So item number 13, why don't we just put off till next time? If that's okay? Unless you really want to go down and do AB 1234? Oh, okay.
Nothing new.
Jim, did you have anything? We'll get it done.
We had an NCTD retreat. I attended that. It was great.
Okay. And I had a fire government, governance subcommittee. I guess Luke and I actually attended that. I don't know if that counted for this, for AB 1234. We're going to be meeting more often because we met so infrequently. So that's good. And then I had, and seen a wastewater authority that I, that we approved the budget. And now it's coming to the city, the city and the member area people here, the, the city. So we'll get to see it here. And that's it. Moving on to city manager report.
I've got two items. So the first is we have a free universal waste collection event that is coming up this Saturday, which is April 26. It's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, right over here at city hall. And this is where.
And does it conflict with the street fair or no? Is there a street fair this weekend? Did I get that wrong on my calendar?
There, there is, but this is up on Vulcan. So it'll be here in the parking lot. So, yes.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah. So, and, and it's, it's basically a drop off. So you're, you're not staying too long. NCDS residents are able to safely dispose of batteries, bulbs, electronics and sharps. Now, it is just for NCDS residents. So we ask you, you bring some type of form of residency. So whether it's a utility bill, your driver's license, but we will be here. The next item is I wanted to congratulate our engineering department. Our sidewalk that we constructed from the South Cardiff State Beach over to the Solana Beach border, that basically it was a ADA compliant sidewalk so that we could keep bikes and pedestrians basically separate. We won the American Public, or yeah, the American Public Works Association Award for Transportation Award of the Year. They do several, but we won that. And I just wanted to note on that project, it was just, it was almost 1.2 million. 941,000 was from a grant. So our part was only 230. So congratulations to the engineering department for a great sidewalk that did a lot of connectivity and safety. So that would be my report for this evening.
City attorney report.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. City clerk.
Just quickly, we are still advertising for the UFAC vacancy. We have extended that deadline several times. So I have extended it once again. I'll be bringing, on May 14th, we'll be bringing the interviews for the Public Health and Safety Commission for those applicants and the Housing Authority or the two tenant commissioners. And then we'll also be bringing the youth commission appointments on that day.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned at 11:46. Thanks for.